Gonzales, ¿podrías liderar? Gracias. Tenemos al consejero barrera presente en Zoom de la Asociación Nacional de Latinos electos y nombrados, conferencia anual en Las Vegas, Nevada. Está en la cinta oficial del negocio de la ciudad. Así que con eso, el rollo de la policía.
Consejero barrera.
Consejero barrera, si puede desmúear su teléfono.
Así que reconoceremos que el número de la llamada del consejero barrera es 7563. Consejero González.
Ahí presente.
Consejero Osornio.
Aquí.
Consejero Rocha.
Aquí.
Consejero Sandoval.
Aquí.
Consejero Valenzuela.
Presente.
Mayor Craig.
Presente.
Gracias.
Solo para dar clarificación, los últimos cuatro dígitos de 7563, ¿está el consejero barrera en la línea?
Sí.
Gracias. Bien, vamos a las proclamaciones. Primera, tenemos el 12 de junio. Tenemos al consejero Rocha aquí para dar la proclama.
Solo quería comprobar, ¿hay alguien de la Asociación Junta de Celebraciones de Salinas aquí? Creo que iban a tratar de hacerlo, pero no estaba seguro si iban a poder hacerlo después de todo. Bueno, vamos a seguir adelante y leer la proclama. 12 de junio de 2024, mientras que el 12 de junio es la celebración más conocida, conmemorando el final de la esclavitud en Estados Unidos, y mientras que el presidente Abraham Lincoln emitió la Proclama de Emancipación el 1 de enero de 1863, declarando que todos los seres esclavizados serán libres, y mientras que el 12 de junio, o el 19 de junio de 1865, se considera la fecha en que los últimos seres esclavizados en América fueron libres, cuando el general Gordon Granger corrió a Galveston, Texas, casi dos años y medio después, después de que el presidente Lincoln emitió la Proclama de Emancipación, y mientras que el 12 de junio tiene un significado empoderante en la historia estadounidense y ha sido celebrado por la comunidad afroestadounidense durante más de 150 años, y mientras que aunque la educación de junio en las celebraciones en América en la parte temprana del siglo XX, el movimiento de derechos civiles de los años 50 y 60 de 1950 vio una resurgencia de interés en el 12 de junio, junto con las celebraciones de la comunidad de nuevo del día, y mientras que el 12 de junio conmemora la libertad afroestadounidense y enfatiza la educación y el logro, es un día, una semana y en algunos lugares un mes marcado con celebraciones. Es un momento de reflexión y rezo. Y mientras que el 12 de junio simboliza la libertad, celebra el abolir de la esclavitud y recuerda a todos los estadounidenses las significativas contribuciones de los afroestadounidenses a nuestra sociedad, y mientras que las celebraciones del 12 de junio son una tributo a los afroestadounidenses entonces y ahora, quienes pelearon tanto y trabajaron tan duro para hacer el sueño de la igualdad una realidad. Entonces, por lo tanto, yo, Mayor Kimberly Craig, a cargo del Consejo de Salinas, proclamo el 19 de junio de 2024 como el día del 12 de junio en la ciudad de Salinas y exhorto a todos los residentes a que sepan más y continúen educándose sobre la importancia de esta celebración.
Lo aseguraremos de darles esa proclama. Vamos a la Navidad Nacional de Portugal. Tenemos al consejero González.
Mayor Craig, ¿tenemos alguien aquí para recibirlo?
Bien, leeremos la proclama y asegurémonos de que lo reciban.
Bien. Mientras que la Navidad Nacional de Portugal es una celebración de la cultura vibrante, tradiciones y historia de Portugal, y mientras que la población portuguesa de los Estados Unidos suma más de 1,3 millones de individuos, y mientras que los portugueses han jugado un papel crucial en el desarrollo y enriquecimiento de la sociedad estadounidense, desde los primeros exploradores que navegaron en las marinas hasta los empresarios, artistas y servidores públicos que contribuyen a nuestra comunidad hoy en día, y mientras que este mes proporciona una oportunidad para todos los miembros de nuestra comunidad aprender y apreciar las únicas contribuciones culturales de la comunidad portuguesa. Entonces, por lo tanto, Mayor Kimberly Craig, a cargo del Consejo de Salinas, proclama el mes de junio de 2024 como Navidad Nacional de Portugal y exhorta a cada residente a celebrar sus contribuciones hacia nuestra comunidad.
Hola, bienvenidos. ¿Estás parte de...?
Me gustaría dirigir el comentario público, y soy Julie Feliz.
Bien, muy rápidamente, no estamos en el comentario público todavía. Estamos haciendo la proclama. Así que si no te importa esperar, creo que muchas de estas personas en la audiencia quieren hacer el comentario público también.
Oh, veo.
Gracias.
Bueno, estoy a la cabeza del juego.
No, muy aprecio el enfoque proactivo.
Llámalo y me subiré.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Bien. Así que vamos a seguir y asegurémonos de que recibamos la proclama de la Navidad de Portugal para la gente adecuada, y vamos a la Cali Rodeo Salinas. Tenemos al consejero Valenzuela aquí para dar la proclama.
Gracias. ¿Y tenemos alguien de la Rodeo?
Voy a suponer que los cascos tienen algo que ver con eso.
Mientras que en 1872, la Agricultura de la Comunidad de Monterey, construyó el carril de carrera, gran stand, estables, bar y restaurante en un parcelo de propiedad donada a la ciudad de Salinas bajo los términos de que una carrera de caballos y horses se celebraría cada dos años, y mientras que un grupo de caballeros conocidos como los coyotes de Salinas ayudó a revivir el interés, y el 1 de agosto de 1911, el primer rodeo anunciado como el show del sur en el Sherwood Race Track comenzó, y mientras que la Cali Rodeo Salinas ha sido la mayor parte de la comunidad de Salinas durante más de 100 años y tiene una misión de preservar y promover las tradiciones de la Cali Rodeo Salinas y el sur, y mientras que la Cali Rodeo Salinas devuelve a la comunidad, donando más de 500,000 dólares cada año a las organizaciones no lucrativas locales, y mientras que la Cali Rodeo Salinas es uno de los diez mejores rodeos profesionales en Estados Unidos y la mayor en California, con casi 1,000 participantes y 50,000 espectadores anualmente, y mientras que la Cali Rodeo Salinas apoya la educación y la juventud en nuestra comunidad y ha premiado más de 157,000 dólares en becas a estudiantes en el valle de Salinas que están persiguiendo una educación superior. Entonces, por lo tanto, yo, Mayor Kimberly Craig, a cargo del Consejo de Salinas, conmigo concomendo y felicito a la Cali Rodeo Salinas mientras celebran su aniversario 114. Durante la semana de 18 de julio hasta el 21 de julio de 2024, felicitaciones.
Gracias.
Te daremos un breve momento para hablar. Creo que algunos de esos números son actualizados la última vez que revisé. Así que si quieres ir adelante y dejar al público saber qué es la Rodeo este año.
Bueno, ciertamente. Madre Mayor, miembros del consejo y personal, a cargo de la Asociación de Cali Rodeo, quisiera agradecerles hoy su proclama. Mi nombre es Steve Davis, presidente de la Cali Rodeo. Conmigo, a mi izquierda, está Barbara Cosley. Ella es nuestra nueva gerente general, una nativa de Salinas, que estamos orgullosos de tener en Salinas y como nuestra nueva gerente general. Ella está haciendo un trabajo fantástico, así que queremos reconocerla. También Bob Eggers, primer vicepresidente de la Asociación de Cali Rodeo, y Tim Baldwin, nuestro secretario. Realmente apreciamos la cooperación de la ciudad de Salinas en nuestra comunidad. Acomodamos un gran acuerdo en 2023 y hemos compartido nuestro reporte de impacto comunitario con todos ustedes, y también hemos publicado eso en nuestro sitio web, ca-rideo.com. Encantamos a la comunidad de ir a nuestro sitio web y ver eso para obtener más información allí. Al celebrar el aniversario 114 de la Cali Rodeo Salinas, estamos orgullosos de ser el rodeo más grande del estado y lugar en los diez mejores en el país. No somos una organización sin fines de lucro que esforza para preservar y promover las tradiciones de la Cali Rodeo Salinas y el sur. A través de donaciones de nuestra instalación, vendiendo y financiando durante la Rodeo y otros eventos, la Asociación de Cali Rodeo generó oportunidades para 48 grupos comunitarios no lucrativos a ganar 771,000 dólares este año. Esperamos que coincidan o superen en 2024. Estamos esperando a la Big Week 2024, que se despuéstran no solo dos conciertos el viernes y el sábado antes de la Rodeo. También tuvimos nuevo para este año, un rodeo juvenil, nuestro primero, que fue bien atendido con más de 240 niños, grupos de edad entre tres y menos y hasta 18 años. Eventos fantásticos y muy bien representados. Dos nuevos eventos durante la Big Week son el Soure, un almuerzo de caballero en julio 17, y la Fiesta del Rodeo en julio 21, llevado a cabo en el área de Bull Crossing en el norte de la gran stand. Esperamos ver a todos ustedes en la Cali Rodeo Salinas de 2024 en julio. Gracias por esto hoy.
Excelente. Gracias. Si no te importa, vamos a seguir y dejar eso. Voy a hacer la próxima proclama, luego te traeremos fotos y la presentación oficial.
Perfecto, gracias.
Gracias. Bien, ahora tenemos la Navidad de Parks and Recreation, y Ana Embreeze está aquí también, con nuestro departamento de Parks and Rec y consejero Sandoval para dar la proclama.
Bueno, primero, bienvenidos a todos los participantes de nuestros programas de Rec. Hola, chicos. Hola, chicos y chicas. Y veo que tenemos a Johnny representando a los seniores. Bienvenidos, Johnny, y, por supuesto, el increíble cocinero de muchos de los eventos de los seniores. Sí, señor, muchas gracias. Así que es mi honor leer esta proclama y a todos nuestros personal que hace todo esto realidad para muchos de estos gente, realmente tiene un impacto en la calidad de vida de la gente. Dice: mientras que los parques y recreación son una parte integral de las comunidades en todo este país, incluyendo la ciudad de Salinas, mientras que los parques y recreación promueven la salud física, emocional y mental y la sanidad a través de la fitness organizada y autodireccional, juego y actividad, y mientras que los parques y recreación apoyan el desarrollo humano y oportunidades in劫难逃 de aprendizaje que fomentan el desarrollo social, intelectual, físico y emocional en personas de todos los edades y capacidades, mientras que miles de niños de Salinas, adultos y seniores usan nuestros centros de recreación cada año para crear experiencias memorables a través de la preparación de kindergarten, la juventud después de la escuela, programas de adolescentes y seniors y deportes de la juventud y eventos de la comunidad y más allá. Mientras que los parques y recreación fomentan la cohesión social en las comunidades al celebrar la diversidad, proporcionar espacios para reunirse pacíficamente, modelar la compasión, promover la equidad social, conectar redes sociales y asegurando que todos tienen acceso a sus beneficios. Y mientras que los parques y recreación fortalecen la identidad de la comunidad al proporcionar instalaciones y servicios que reflejan y celebran el carácter de la comunidad, la herencia, la cultura, la historia y el paisaje, y mientras que los parques y recreaciones son una infraestructura esencial y adaptable que hace que nuestras comunidades sean resilientes ante los desastres naturales y el cambio climático. Entonces, por lo tanto, yo, Kimberly Craig, a cargo del Consejo de Salinas, proclamo el mes de julio como Parque y Recreación y animo a todos los residentes a que visiten y disfruten nuestros parques y recreaciones.
Bienvenidos, Miss Embreeze.
Hola, Mayor.
Intenta de nuevo.
Vamos a ver. Oh, ahí está. Está funcionando. Hola, Mayor y miembros del Consejo de Salinas. Mi nombre es Ana Embreeze y soy la directora de los parques de recreación de la ciudad. Nuestro departamento de recreación, divisiones de programas, jóvenes, seniores y comunidad estamos emocionados de estar aquí para celebrar la Navidad de Parques y Recreación en nuestra comunidad. Así que el tema de este año es "Donde perteneces", y celebra de muchas maneras los profesionales de los parques y recreación, incluidos los trabajadores de tiempo parcial y tiempo completo, fomentar el sentido de pertenencia en nuestra comunidad al proporcionar programas de bienvenida, servicios esenciales para personas de todos los edades y capacidades y espacios accesibles para construir conexiones significativas. Este julio o cualquier momento, por favor visite su parque o centro de recreación más cercano y aproveche las muchas cosas que tenemos que ofrecer. Los centros de recreación realmente hacen una diferencia en la vida de los residentes de Salinas. Gracias.
Gracias. Bien, Miss Embreeze, si pudiera tener a los niños de Parks and Rec subir. Vamos a tomar una foto con el consejo de la ciudad. Llegará todo el mundo a la escuela y luego tendremos la Cali Rodeo justo detrás de ellos. Bien, muchas gracias, todos. Como establecí el tiempo para el comentario público, y vamos a, solo en general, ¿quién planea hablar públicamente hoy? ¿Puedo obtener un show de manos? Bien, voy a establecer el tiempo hoy para 90 segundos porque tenemos mucha gente y quiero asegurarme de que todos se escuchen. Vamos a ir a el comentario público. Solo si estás aquí para la discusión de Cana Cruz o la discusión de la moneda de la moneda de Monterey, no estamos allí todavía. Esta es la comentario público general sobre temas que no están en la agenda de hoy. Si deseas hacer un comentario público general, estás animado a asistir a la reunión de consejo en persona o asistir al webinar en Zoom y usar el icono de levantar la mano. Los comentarios publicados han sido distribuidos al consejo y serán ingresados al registro permanente. Los comentarios públicos generalmente son limitados a dos minutos por orador. Como he señalado, quiero ser justo con todos en esta reunión, así que lo establecemos en 90 segundos. Estamos ahora abiertos a el comentario público sobre temas que no están en la agenda de hoy. Hola, bienvenidos.
Hola, buenas tardes, Consejo de la Ciudad. Nuevo Mayor, el señor Valenzuela. Oh, 20 barreras falta. Bien. Bueno, chicos, estoy aquí para decirles nuevamente que el parque nuevamente fue destruido. Tengo imágenes de, se me ocurre el ventanero, basura, excesiva basura en cada una de las cajas de basura. Quien esté allí no se lo lleva a sí mismo. Encontramos a un vendedor nuevamente sin licencia, dos vendedores en realidad. Todavía lo están haciendo. No sé por qué la legislación de parque no ha sido consistente con bajar allí y cuidar de eso. No entiendo cuán difícil es ser, hey, usted sabe, hey, por favor mueve su carro, incluso si no le dan un ticket, ay, señor, por favor mueve su carro. No puedes parcar así. Eso es todo lo que necesitamos. Necesitamos a gente que, ya sabes, tenga que pagar grandes fine y cosas. Es muy simple. No entiendo cómo no podemos hacerlo bien. Quiero decir, solo tuvimos un parque, algo del parque, pero todos los parques parecen como dios, perdón mi lenguaje. Son todos bajo agua, bajo nutrición, bajo cuidado y no sé qué más tengo que decirles. Quiero decir, ustedes están ahora pagados como servidores públicos. Están siendo pagados ahora. Por favor, hagan su trabajo. O, quiero decir, el gerente de la ciudad, ven, 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 parques y recs. Ven, el señor Jacobs también de, de, me olvidé de qué departamento está ahora, tantos hablo. Pero necesitamos hacer todo esto. Necesitamos ser cuidados. Quiero decir, si vamos a taxarnos así, cuidaos. Gracias. Y, Mayor, tengo una carta para...
Vaya a darla al policía.
Gracias, aprecio.
Policía, ¿puede asegurarse de que el micrófono esté también, por favor? Hola, bienvenidos.
Gracias. Esta noche voy a hablar sobre la publicación para usted, el señor Valenzuela, con su intención de defundir a la policía. Esto se dí de 5 de diciembre de 2023. Voy a leer algunas citas, pero antes de eso, me gustaría preguntarle, señor, como residente de la ciudad de Salinas, ¿la fecha de 25 de febrero de 2022 significa algo para usted? Y por favor, no consulte con nadie aquí. ¿De acuerdo? Salinas, California es pro policía con la historia de violencia de las bandas. Sus residentes han advocated para que la policía tenga un 43,5% del presupuesto con solo un 10% yendo a los servicios comunitarios. ¿Ha pensado en una respuesta aún, señor?
No, no respondemos al comentario público. Solo vayan adelante y denuncien al consejo.
Lo tengo. Te responderé. El 25 de febrero de 2022, ese día, el oficial JD Alvarado fue ambustado en su auto de patrón. Ahora, tú pones, ¿cómo podemos utilizar estrategias narrativas que, uno, no polarizan y, dos, nos ayuda a ganar muchos apoyos posible? Y este es uno de mis favoritos, señor. Tres, conseguir cuatro de los siete personas en nuestro consejo de la ciudad para votar por ello. Cambiando nuestra narrativa de defender a reinvertir, somos mucho más probable de obtener esos cuatro votos que necesitamos para en realidad defundir a la policía. Nuestra campaña solo comenzó el año pasado y solo al no decir "defundir a la policía" y hablar de reinvertir y reimaginar, 1,39 millones se votó.
Gracias.
Y comentaste sobre eso.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Hola, bienvenidos.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Eric Peterson, y dado que disfuncional parece ser nuestra palabra para el año, habiendo sido usado o describir el consejo de la ciudad por el mayor y por un miembro del consejo que se fue, un artículo interesante de San José, "Consejo Santa Clara disfuncional en el centro de un jurado grandioso". Esto tiene que ver con que su consejo de la ciudad no esté en contacto con un equipo de fútbol bien conocido. Y tal vez lo que deberíamos hacer, dado que unos de nosotros conocemos a alguien en ese jurado grandioso, es averiguar qué es la disfunción real en el consejo de la ciudad, no lo que tenemos, que no es disfuncional. Gracias.
Gracias. Hola, bienvenidos.
Sí, describiria disfuncional como tener dos reuniones bastante anteriores. Una que trata de nuestro basura, donde se tomó el voto el día en que el informe fue enviado y luego se retrasó, y creo que tal vez incluso las penaltis pueden haber sido cargadas. La otra es incluso después de haberme dicho que la forma de lidiar con esto es manejar tus proyectos, es tener reuniones en tiempo, no tener reuniones donde estés votando en nueva información el mismo día. Lo hiciste nuevamente la semana pasada con la propuesta de vivienda, con miembros de su board teniendo preguntas sobre la participación de la comunidad, sobre si las instalaciones cumplen las necesidades de los clientes y los constituyentes. Ni siquiera sabías qué estabas votando y, sin embargo, votaste el mismo día. Sugería que mantengas a la gente responsable, miembros de tu personal, porque eres como, nadie tiene que ser responsable, pero alguien lo hace. Asegúrate de tener reuniones que estén cerca de donde puedas tener tiempo para tomar decisiones, ¿verdad? Y si haces esto, no lo harás consistentemente porque parece que palabras como "huguetes" o "bambuzo" no son el sentimiento adecuado que la comunidad tiene cuando estás votando en algo que ni siquiera sabes las respuestas.
Gracias. Bien. Necesito, aprecio el entusiasmo en la sala y el vibes, pero también estoy tratando de organizar una reunión de el board y quiero asegurarme de que todos se sientan empoderados para hablar, así que voy a pedir que rechazes clavarse o dar cualquier tipo de respuesta al comentario público. Gracias. Bienvenidos.
Mi comentario nuevamente es sobre, creo que has escuchado ese proyecto de vivienda la semana pasada. Si no hubiera sabido de eso, habría gente aquí pro y contraria por eso. No estoy en contra de la creencia, pero ahora mismo la ciudad no tiene la infraestructura para eso. ¿Cómo pueden mantener las calles para esa nueva subdivisión? No pueden hacer las que tienen. Así que no creo que haya estudiado completamente correctamente, y me habían mentido cuando me preguntaron sobre eso, pero el enunciado hizo sonar como si el proyecto ya estaba hecho, pero en su enunciado era, era en curso. Así que el punto es que necesitas explicarnos a nosotros, laymanes, qué significan todas estas terminos. Sabes, no sabemos nada sobre el gobierno, así que tienes que explicarnos qué significan estas cosas y qué, qué, qué estás haciendo, porque no sabemos lo que estás haciendo. Solo estamos suponiendo. Y así que es la primera vez que voy a llamar a David Jacobs. Las carreteras son grotesca. Le he preguntado, le he dicho que esto es malo, nunca me ha contestado. He conocido a él, le he mostrado el trabajo, su trabajo no mejora. Así que para mí, estoy esperando para Rene, me olvidé de su nombre último, para decirle, oh, haz el trabajo, o sal, o salte, porque estoy cansado de correr por las agujeros y todas mis peticiones de servicio no están hechas correctamente. Son, son peores que lo que eran. Así que iba a hablarle de esa parte, de los descartes. Entiendo eso y iba a preguntar eso, pero fue demasiado tarde. Así que, en cualquier caso, gracias.
Gracias. Hola, bienvenidos.
Puede ser demasiado pronto, pero quiero dirigir la recolección de residuos de agua de agua.
Demasiado pronto, lo siento por hacer eso.
Necesito esperar.
No, si estás hablando de la recolección de residuos, vamos a estar hablando de eso. Hay otras personas en la audiencia que querrán hablar de eso. Este, este tema ahora es de los temas que no están en la agenda de hoy.
Justo para el comentario público. Bien, y esperar.
Gracias. Hola, bienvenidos.
Hola, mi nombre es Teri Fidena. Solo quiero tomar tiempo para agradecerle su dedicación y veo que usted está escuchando y que nos escucharíamos y que seríamos todos pacientes con el otro y trabajaremos como un equipo, y eso está llegando. Veo que está llegando. Veo su transparencia y definitivamente sé que cuando hay presiones, que probablemente haya hoy, que todavía se sienta atrás, escucha y hace lo que quieren que la gente de su distrito quiera hacer, y realmente ve que está wholeheartedly queriendo hacer eso, y es realmente bueno ver y mirar que usted trabaja como un equipo, y veo que realmente quiere trabajar juntos como un equipo y que es un sentimiento realmente bueno. Pero solo sé que intentaremos presionarte, pero sienta y sé que tus decisiones que tomas no son tuyas. Ya sabes eso. Estás representando a tu gente y gracias por eso.
Gracias. Hola, bienvenidos.
Madre Mayor, miembros del consejo, solo me senté aquí y escuché los comentarios y solo necesitaba hablar. Quiero decirles gracias por todo lo que hacen y, ya sabes, he conocido a tantos de ustedes en la comunidad, caminando las calles, encontrando con sus constituyentes en los parques y en sus vecindes, en nuestros vecindes, y sé que hay dificultades. Siempre hay dificultades cuando estás en un comité, cuando estás trabajando juntos con nadie, pero veo una fuerza poderosa aquí y realmente, realmente quiero decir que aprecio a cada uno de ustedes y gracias por lo que están haciendo.
Gracias. ¿Alguien más? Bien, voy a, vayan, vayan si están queriendo hablar sobre temas que no están en la agenda de hoy. Bienvenidos. Vayan. En español.
Está hablando, perdón, está hablando del drenaje que van a subir, las aguas trescentiales que van a subir.
Señor, para ese, para ese tema se va a tener que esperar hasta que...
Señor, para ese, para ese tema se va a tener que esperar hasta que.
El comentario que le quiera hacer, porque él no le suben la pensión, ¿cómo compras tu casa y ahora le suben?
Sí, pero para comentarios, para el tema que viene, sigue del, del agua, van a tener que esperar hasta que ese tema, lo reciban el reporte.
Thank you. Okay.
Solamente cada vez que quieren, cuando quieren el voto, se iban para la casa, pero cuando queremos que nos rinden a la calle o el agua, entonces siguen, no están ahí.
If he wants to submit his comments in writing, that's okay, but we're doing public comment right now. I need to stick to the rules, particularly with a packed house.
It's the first time this happens to me. Do you want me to interrupt or what, or just sister?
We're going to have him wait. It's a wastewater issue, so I'll have him wait until that item is up.
Buena tarde, hablar en inglés a veces me entiende. Mi nombre, uh, my name is Monica Guzman, and I live on 1157 Alamo Way. And I see the Ryder Streets and some streets in that area, they are very bad. And it seems that the city doesn't pay attention to those streets. I don't know why, if, because we live on the east side, or it's more important, sorry, but I see that it's more important, uh, North Main or South Main or areas, there are, the houses are more expensive than the ones that we live on the east. So I don't know how to, the, who we need to talk to or to pay attention to those streets. I hope that you keep in mind that we really need to fix those streets. Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Kimberly Bryant, and I'm here to just offer a prayer to the city council and those in the room, and I'd like, for anyone who would like to join me, please join me. We are saying the Lord's Prayer. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Forgive our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, and deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever and ever. Amen. The Lord bless each one of you. Make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. The Lord turn his face toward you and give each one of you peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, Jody Beltran from Montebaya. I'm part of the neighborhood watch. So we have a few issues. We pay extra taxes for the maintenance of the street. I've called several times about lights that are on 24 hours a day, street lamps. We have street poles out. We're paying for that to be on all the time, and I keep turning things in, and I did call. I don't think it's my responsibility to now go through everywhere and tell you what's wrong at this point, because there's so much that has not been addressed. And my other issue is, I am tired of seeing the parks guys drive on our grass and through the park. It is not necessary. I've turned that in a few times, was told that, you know, they won't do it again. It happens every week constantly. We had new grass put in. I'm not driving on your lawn. I don't think they would want to be driven on at home. It looks really bad. So our park looks really tacky, because they can't just simply go out a driveway and drive to the other side, or we can't, the, the bathroom's there, and we have to park our truck right there, not right there, five feet away to get to it. It just needs to stop, and somebody listen to that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will go to Zoom for public comment. I'll go ahead and close public comment in the chambers, and we will go to Zoom. All right, we have Bill Leip for general public comment. Welcome. You have a minute and a half.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, this is Bill Leip, a resident of Monterey County. And last night on KION 11:00 PM news broadcast, the Salinas Police Chief reported handling 200 to 400 homelessness-related calls a month, costing perhaps, I estimated, perhaps $100,000 or more a month. He stated this has been the norm for years and has impacted servicing other calls that have higher priority. The chief also mentioned that the public needed to do more to assist, but really, the city has already received tens of millions of dollars. How much more does the city need? How much more should the city spend? He needs to present these numbers to the public, providing detailed information on call volumes and costs to city taxpayers. The situation seems unsustainable, really is unsustainable, and demands transparency and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other hands, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and we will go on to the first item on the agenda, which is 24-330, the conditional use permit, 2022-048, the appeal of Cana Cruz Inc. and referral from the Salinas Planning Commission. So if you're here to talk about Cana Cruz and Cana Cruz only, not yet, we're not doing public comment yet. We're going to do it just for purposes of, are you here to speak on Cana Cruz?
Against it, yes.
Okay. Not yet, if that's okay. All right, I'm going to go ahead and refer the report to the city attorney, Chris Callahan, and our senior planner, Tom Wiles.
So thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to start off giving some sort of framework or groundwork for this afternoon's conversation about Cana Cruz's appeals, and then I'm going to turn it over to Tom Wiles. So I'm not sure who is advancing the slides. Let's go to the next slide, please, Alexis. So just to sort of provide some framework for the council, you're in a unique role this afternoon, because this is an appeal. You're acting in your quasi-judicial capacity this afternoon as the council, and so what that essentially means is you get to act as seven judges. You get to receive all of the information from city staff, from Cana Cruz, and from the public, as well as all of the written comments that you've received, and make your own independent judgment based on this information about what direction you want to provide to staff. So here's the process for this afternoon. You're going to open the public hearing by receiving a presentation and report from city staff. That's myself and Tom Wiles. Then we will receive your questions. Then we'll open the public hearing, and we're going to start with Cana Cruz. We need to provide them sufficient due process, and so we've afforded them 20 minutes to give their presentation to the council. Following that, we will receive general public comments, and then Cana Cruz has an opportunity to rebut or provide any additional information they would like to provide at the end of those public comments, and we'll, we'll afford them five minutes to do so. Then I will ask that the city council close the public hearing. We will receive your additional questions and comments to city staff, and then I will ask that you make a determination. There will be action this afternoon, whatever action you all decide to make based on that information, we will then receive. I will ask that you continue this discussion, not the public hearing, but continue this matter to June 25th to afford staff sufficient time to draft the resolutions for you to consider on June 25th. You will notice that we do not have resolutions in the staff report, and that's because we do not know what direction this council is going to take. We will hopefully at the end of this public hearing. So that's the process, and moving on to the next slide, I just wanted to give a brief word about public outreach and engagement, because, Council, we heard you very loud and clear at your last meeting that we need to do a better job about public engagement and outreach. So we provided public notice at the proposed location and mailed the notice to the nearby property owners on June 4th. This was also published in the Monterey Herald and the Monterey County Weekly. That's our standard required noticing process. You've seen us do that before, but in addition to that, we made sure to use your community relations officers' talents to get the word out on the city's social media pages. So we wanted there to be some intentionality about inviting the public to this conversation, and so we've heard you, Council, and we've made an attempt to do that for this meeting. And so moving on to the next slide, please, Alexis, and I'm going to turn it over to Tom Wiles, who's going to start with a conversation about the conditional use permit appeal. Additional staff are here also to provide support, and Courtney Grossman is somewhere here, as well as Lisa Brinton, and so, Tom, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Chris, Mayor, council members. The proposal is conditional use permit for the 2022-048 is to consider the appeal of the planning commission's denial of the conditional use permit. The proposal is to change the use of the, of the site from retail.
Mr. Wiles, if I, I apologize for the interruption. If you could pull your microphone a little closer, we just, thank you. I want to make sure people hear you.
Okay. The proposal is to change use from retail to a proposed two-tenant shopping center with an existing 20,162 square foot building located at 1228 South Main Street. And, uh, so, let's put it in this, uh, back on the, concerning the situation with the planning commission. On April the 3rd, 2024, the planning commission denied conditional use permit, 2022-048. The reason stated that they expressed concern that it should be expressed concurrently with the commercial cannabis permit, which is related to CCP 2023-07, and also that they deferred to the city council as a policy consideration. The issue why at that time that they were not considered was because it was still, that the commercial cannabis permit was kind of, was regarded as incomplete, and that the Permit Streamlining Act requirement deadlines were required for the conditional use permit. On April the 17th, 2024, the applicant appealed the planning commission denial of the conditional use permit, and then on May 21st, the applicant agreed to extend the appeal to allow for concurrent consideration of the CUP along with the commercial cannabis permit. Okay, the background is that the facility is stated, is located at 1228 South Main Street. Cana Cruz Incorporated is the applicant. Samuel and Margaret Kobrinsky are the property owners. The site is a former furniture store site. The proposal is to change the use for retail from, to a two-tenant shopping center, which would include a 1.02 acre site, and it would be from, there would be two facilities. It would be a unit A, which would be in the front part of the building, is be a, which is a former furniture store, would be a, was, the applicant is proposing it to be a furniture store, and, and the, the rear portion, which would be, and actually, the front portion is 9,413 square feet. The rear portion, which would be where the commercial cannabis business would be located, is, consists of 10,749 square feet. The project is located in the commercial retail, South Main Street Focus Growth Overlay District. Commercial and residential uses are surrounding the site. The conditional use permit is required for the related conditional cannabis permit, and that's because the proposal is requesting a 41 space, 51% parking reduction, which is required per the zoning code. And as per the zoning code, any, any parking reduction above 30% requires planning commission consideration, and also they are accepting, they are requesting exception from the use of the requirements of the zoning code to allow for internal storage within the existing structure, and also are requesting a alternative means of compliance for landscaping located along 1228 South Main Street. And next slide, please. And next slide. It said the project site, 1228 South Main Street, existing, it has the, this is the information here, 9,413 in the front portion, 10,749 in the rear. The parking reduction is being requested, and that they have provided a, right now, they are proposing 40 spaces on site, 38 regular spaces and two accessible. They are proposing also alternative means of compliance. They would be requiring that a one tree for every parking, one tree in the rear for every five parking spaces. They are requesting the, the alternative means of compliance for enhanced landscaping along the South Main Street frontage, and as I say before, they are also requesting the exception from the recycled trash. And going back to the parking reduction, they are providing survey and other data that would be to support their request for the parking reduction. And the next slide, please, on that one. This shows the project plans, and, uh, so this is the existing site building of the rear yard, this is South Main Street. This would be the parking area in the rear. This would be the area for the Cana Cruz, the operation. Retail would be in the front here, and then the operations in the back. This is currently a vacant retail space. This would be what they're, the parking demand study requested for a future furniture store use. Next slide, please. This goes more of the project plans. They would have, it shows more of the area. This is landscaping, the enhanced landscaping on front, uh, front yard, frontage. They would also, this is the landscaping along the parking lot area here. They are proposing fence, fencing along the northwest and south property lines, and also this would be the area of external stor, and internal storage, I'm sorry, for, for trash. And next slide, please. The, as stated, going back to the, the parking reduction, they are required by the zoning code for the shopping center use to have 81 spaces. They are providing 40, which would be a 51% parking reduction. Now, the, uh, the question with the parking reduction is that they are support, they're requesting support for a parking demand study in 19, that is dated on February the 9th, 2024, which states that, per the parking demand study, because of the less than, the demands, that would be less, using weighted average peak, that there would be only off-street parking demand of 37 off-street parking spaces for both the cannabis operation and for the furniture store use at peak hours, which would be within 40. And, and also that this, there is also a difference with the project plan, and the parking demand study is for, for common areas for, for parking, excuse me, for walkways internally, which would be for less square footage as per, in the parking demand study. Landscaping, alternative means of compliance, as I say, they were providing enhanced South Main Street frontage along, landscape along South Main Street frontage, and that the onsite, onsite landscaping exceeds the minimum required 10% and 5% as required by the zoning code. They are proposing that the recycling solid waste be located in the rear of the building. This would be, this would allow them to, to provide secure storage for solid waste, and that's also an existing condition. And the fence is stated, they would be providing a six-foot tall fence along the west and south, and also there is an existing fence on the north. There is a freestanding South Main Street sign, which would be, remain for the facility. Next slide, please. This shows the site and the area with sensitive uses. There are right now 15 uses within a thousand feet radius. This is the site here. There are many, most of these are alcohol-related uses. There are church use. There's a smoke shop here in this, the Lucky Shopping Center. Many of those, like the Round Table, Lucky's, CVS, Nob Hill, Star Market, are either on or off-sale alcohol licenses. Next slide, please. The alternatives for the city council is to either deny the Cana Cruz appeal and affirm the planning commission's denial of the CUP to grant the, the Cana Cruz increase, Cana Cruz Incorporated's appeal and reverse the planning commission's denial of the CUP, modify the planning commission's denial of the CUP, and remand the matter back to the planning commission, or provide other direction to city staff. Next slide, please. Also, the, as stated here, that the, in order for the approval, that the city council for the planning, for the CUP to allow for the 41 space, 51% parking reduction, a section to allow for the internal waste storage to be located within the existing structure, and alternative means of compliance for landscaping, it would have to make these three findings, which is that the proposed location of the use and structure is in accordance with the objectives of the Salinas General Plan, zoning code and purposes of the district which is located, which is the commercial retail Focus Growth Overlay, that the use and structure will comply with the provisions of the Salinas zoning code, including the specific conditions required for the proposed use and structure as per the draft CUP approval document, and that the proposed use of the conditional use and the proposed conditions under which it is operated or maintained are consistent with the Salinas General Plan and will not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare of persons residing or working in or adjacent to the neighborhood of such use, nor detrimental to properties or improvements in the vicinity or the general welfare of the, of the city of Salinas. Next slide, please.
So I'll take it from here. Thank you, Tom. And so, Council, there are two separate permits that are on appeal tonight. That was the discussion about the conditional use permit, and if I may, Alexis, I just want to go back to slide number 10, please, because I want to clarify. to clarify a couple of things relative to the conditional use permit. So cannabis is considered a retail use. This site is a retail use. This I can't a commercial cannabis business would otherwise be permitted to go into that location except for the parking reduction that's being requested and the alternative means of compliance. I think that's an important point because otherwise we wouldn't be having this conversation about the conditional use permit in the first place. The second point I want to make is something that Tom mentioned, but it's rather significant. This proposal from Cana Cruz through the conditional use permit is to divide the building into two halves. The front half would be a retail use that's not cannabis-related. The rear of the building would be where the cannabis retail use is proposed to be located. So as you're driving past or walking past, you would not see cannabis from the front of the building. You would only have to you would only see whatever retail use they're putting in front, which I think is currently proposed to be a furniture store. In order to see the cannabis use, you would have to walk around to the back of the building. So I think that's an important fact here that I didn't want this council to to miss as you're considering this this appeal on the conditional use permit. So thank you, Alexis. Now, if you can go forward to slide 14. We're going to talk about the commercial cannabis permit, which is also on appeal. And I just wanted to make sure that I pointed out to the council that we sent you the previous lately received pieces of correspondence. There were four of them. One is a letter from Walker and Reed Attorneys, it's dated June 14th. There was a June 17th letter that was sent via email from Ellie's. It's signed by George Sammet. There's a June 17th letter from Nolan Hammerly, Eddie, and in Haas, which is representing Ellie's, if I recall correctly. And there's also a an email from Charlie Sammet dated June 16th with respect to this proposed relocation. And you have on your dais tonight, which is something that was also submitted via email, but a letter from former Congressman Sam Farr. And so I just wanted to make sure that I pointed those out to the council to remind you of what we have provided you as you consider.
I'm going to take a quick moment. If everyone could silence their phones, please. Thank you.
So, thank you, Mayor. Moving on to the next slide, please, Alexis, just to provide some context for the process and the timeline by which we've come to this point. So there was an April 3rd, 2024 Planning Commission meeting that Tom alluded to and both the conditional use permit and the commercial cannabis permit were originally scheduled to be considered that night. The Community Development Director and I thought that the commercial cannabis permit application at that time was incomplete. We also had some concerns about how it was processed to get to that point. So we made the decision to pull it from that Planning Commission meeting. So at that meeting, the Planning Commission considered only the conditional use permit. Cana Cruz subsequently provided the additional information to complete their major amendment application to the commercial cannabis permit. And so they did that on April 29th. But I just want to again go back a couple of years. Cana Cruz started this process actually in 2021. That's when they started looking at relocating from Abbott Street to South Main Street. At that time, and one of the attachments to your report, and I've received some questions about this, is a zoning information letter. In that zoning information letter, only six sensitive uses are identified. We know that there are several other. I think there are in fact 15 sensitive uses within 1,000 feet of this location, but only six, for whatever reason, were identified in that letter. I don't have an explanation for that, counsel, but I wanted to make sure to own that and acknowledge that. And one of the important sensitive uses that was missing from that letter is the residential use that's immediately behind this proposed location. We'll talk about that in a second. So on May 14th, as is required by the code, the selection committee, which is comprised of five members of city staff, one from your library and community services department, one from your police department, two from your community development department, and one from your public works department, reviewed Cana Cruz's major amendment application. And they determined to deny their request to relocate to South Main Street. And we'll get into the reasons why on the next slide. Cana Cruz deny or excuse me, excuse me, appealed the selection committee's denial and the Planning Commission heard that on May, excuse me, on May 16th, they appealed and on June 5th, the Planning Commission considered that appeal. Planning Commission, as they did on April 3rd, considered this to be more of a policy discussion for the council to take up. And so they neither affirmed nor denied or reversed or modified the selection committee's determination, instead referred that to the city council. And that's the discussion we're having tonight. So next slide, please, Alexis. The selection committee cited the three reasons for denying the request to relocate. The proposed location is located within 1,000 feet of two sensitive uses. This is Ellie's Restaurant, which is immediately adjacent, and the Clout 9 Smoke Shop, which is a little under 1,000 feet away. The proposed location is adjacent to a residential use and to the selection committee, they required a determination by either the Community Development Director or the Police Chief to determine whether or not there would be any negative impacts to that residential use. And the commercial cannabis ordinance reflects the city's policy and intent that commercial cannabis businesses not be located in proximity to sensitive uses. Some council members have asked me a question about the other two cannabis locations in this city. There's East of Eden and Emerald Skyway and whether or not those are located within 1,000 feet of any sensitive uses, and they are not. If you look at a map, Emerald Skyway is within 1,000 feet of the airport parcel. And on the airport parcel is also the golf course. There's a clubhouse there that serves beer. That clubhouse is well outside 1,000 feet from the proposed location. So in my opinion, there are no proximity issues with respect to sensitive uses for your other two cannabis locations. Moving to the next slide, please, Alexis. We've had much discussion and we've received much commentary on the three police department memoranda. This is just an outline of those three memoranda. The police chief is here and he can answer any questions the council may have about these, but the first one on February 26th addressed only the proposed parking lot. This memorandum was provided in direct response to comments on the conditional use permit, not necessarily the commercial cannabis permit. On March 16th, a revised memorandum was sent out. This was a draft memorandum. It was apparently not intended for distribution, but it nonetheless made its way out. And so on March 19th, the acting police chief corrected that March 16th administrative error and issued a new memorandum, finding that there were no issues with respect to the parking reduction or relocation of the dispensary. However, there were concerns raised with traffic volumes and the flow of traffic as well as potential for criminal activity. And in his opinion, it would tend to cause a public nuisance or a situation which may result in repeated police department response or a negative impact on the adjacent residential units. Going on to the next slide, please. In your staff report, there is a little bit more detail to support the police chief's determination. The focus primarily is on Ellie's Restaurant, which includes a bar. It's immediately adjacent to the proposed location, as we know. It's also immediately adjacent to a residential apartment complex. And the police chief and the police department have provided some additional facts for the council to consider under the police department consideration section of your staff report. Of other concern to the police department is the traffic that may be generated by this use as well as the customer turnover. We understand that there is customer turnover every six minutes and there is some concern as to the extent of traffic that would be created by this use at that location. So moving on to the alternatives available to the council. As I said at the beginning, you have free rein to make whatever determination you feel is appropriate based on the information that you receive. You can deny Cana Cruz's appeal and affirm the selection committee's denial. You can grant Cana Cruz's appeal and reverse the selection committee's denial. You could modify the selection's committee committee's denial and provide some additional direction for staff or provide other direction to staff that we're not thinking of and is not listed on this slide. So as you're considering these alternatives, counsel, in your final determination, moving on to the next slide, please, we want to remind you of the findings that you must make in support of this decision. So whatever decision you make, we ask that you tell us why you're making that decision. Tell us the story that supports your decision. You must make these findings. It's really important so that we get these incorporated into the resolution that you'll see on June 25th. So there are two primary areas of concern. It's the proximity to sensitive uses, which is one, and the other is the adjacency to the residential use. So as you're considering this information and as you're considering the proximity to the sensitive uses, consider whether the intent of the ordinance that you have in place that a prior city council has adopted would otherwise be met. In other words, there would be no direct impact on the community should this commercial cannabis ordinance, excuse me, this business be relocated to that proposed location. With respect to the adjacency to the residential use, consider, in your opinion, whether there would be a nuisance condition that would be created or a situation which may result in repeated police department response or a negative impact on the adjacent residential use. So the findings are continued on the next slide, Alexis. So just to sort of put this in context, the commercial cannabis ordinance that you have was adopted several years ago when cannabis was first coming into the mainstream as a result of change in state law. At that time, folks were unsure how the industry would evolve. They were unsure how these businesses would impact the community. We have several years in between the time that ordinance was adopted and today. We have three businesses in the city that can provide us some direct data as to whether or not there have been direct impacts on the community. So the purpose and intent of that ordinance at that time was to promote the development of commercial cannabis industry in Salinas, accommodate the needs of medically ill persons, regulate the non-medical use of cannabis and regulate the cannabis activity in Salinas concurrently with state law. You will see that these things are framed, these findings, the purpose and intent are framed based on that original change in state law, right? And so operating restrictions on commercial cannabis businesses are designed to protect the neighboring properties and businesses from negative effects and to protect the health, safety and welfare of the general public. So these are the things that we're asking you to consider as you think about what decision you want to make and what story you want to tell as to why you're making those decisions. And so with that, counsel, I think we're done with our presentation and all of your staff are available for any questions.
Excellent. All right, we'll go to council members for questions and then after that, we'll open the public hearing. I'll start to my left, Councilmember Sandoval. Questions?
Yeah, my, I have a question for the chief. In the in the last memo that was issued, I noticed that one of the considerations for declaring it a nuisance was the proximity to schools. But after reviewing the map, I didn't see, I saw that that distance fell within the the or fell past the $1,000, $1,000, excuse me, $1,000 feet requirement. So could you speak to that?
That's correct. It's outside the $1,000 feet. That would be Salinas High School.
Yeah, and just my question was because that seemed to be one of the justifications on the letter, but it wasn't actually something in our ordinance. Is there, is this, it was just your opinion on the possible implications of it and not necessarily a disqualifying factor?
Just a reflection of the fact that there is foot traffic from Salinas High School and there are youth in that area. You are correct. It is out outside the $1,000 foot area.
And other than the, I recognize that, like the city attorney said, if it wasn't for the parking situation, this probably would have gone through. In your opinion, in other businesses, I know that this is, this is a concern, the traffic is a concern because it's a new permitted, I want to say that correctly, Chris, it's a newly permitted business in that area, but other, other businesses that come, you know, other fast food restaurants, are they under the same guidelines as far as how they're going to impact traffic or is it specific to this, this type of business?
Well, I would say this, the, I think it's important to note, first off, that for the present location for Cana Cruz, I was part of that decision process and because it was a suitable location, I did not interfere in any way. This is about the location. And it's funny you bring up that example. The representatives of Cana Cruz themselves spoke about the turnaround of their customers. I think they estimated, if my memory serves me, between seven and six minutes in and out. I've made the point that if this was In-N-Out Burger with a similar business model, this would not be an appropriate location for that business either because of the traffic and the impact there, which I'm happy to speak about.
So if I may, to further answer that question through the mayor, and Lisa and Tom can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is an existing retail use. And so because there's a retail, a proposed retail use going into an existing retail use, there's no need for a traffic impact analysis or any sort of evaluation of the traffic impacts. So I think that more directly answers your question in terms of what level of analysis would be required if it were, you know, some other use other than cannabis, if I understood your question correctly.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, chief. Those are all my questions for you. My other question, maybe it's for Lisa Britton. And you spoke to a little bit about it where you mentioned that you, the staff determined that the application was incomplete in April, but we all, that was April of this year, is that correct?
That's correct.
And, you know, just as we want to encourage more businesses to come to Salinas, where, what was the main cause of the process taking two years from start to where we're at at this moment?
So I have not been directly involved with the project from the very beginning, so I cannot answer every single step that was taken. What I can address is, one, you, you mentioned the identification of the incomplete cannabis permit. So when I reviewed the package that was going forward to the Planning Commission, I noticed that there was a lack of analysis as well as documentation regarding the cannabis permit. The analysis for the conditional use permit was complete, so I reached out to the city attorney and discussed next steps because at that point in time, we were under a Permit Streamlining Act deadline to process the conditional use permit. So we made a decision together to bifurcate the processes and went forward with this conditional use permit to the Planning Commission. And so I think to discuss the other aspects of, I'll say, delay or why it took a long time, is that there was, to my knowledge, there was back and forth conversation between planning staff and the applicant to ensure compliance with the zoning code as well as to process the parking study to justify the request for the parking reduction. And if I recall, the limited conversations I participated in, there was also conversation about landscaping, compliance to ensure that there was beautification of the frontage of the building and that that is my knowledge of the processing of the project.
Thank you. And the staff report addresses, you know, the request for a reduction in parking requirements. And is that specifically for for the Cana Cruz possible use? And does that take into consideration the possible retail frontage?
It does, specifically as a furniture store. So if a different use goes into the front, then there would need to be additional analysis of parking required.
Okay, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rocha, questions?
Thank you. My question's for the police chief with respect to your memorandum. Can you speak to how it is you came to the conclusion that this would be, I believe the memorandum said, a nuisance? Can you share more? I read your memorandum, but just so everyone hears what your reasoning is.
Sure. Took a look at the physical location, took a look at the existing crime data related to Cana Cruz, took a look at the traffic in the area and the proximity to the residential apartment complex next door and the proximity to the bar, which is within 15 yards, my estimation. That combination of information, the crime data for Cana Cruz, as I mentioned, other crimes that have taken place in the area and just looking at it in totality in terms of what our anticipated increase in response would be. Looking at the whole thing in total was the, the, the result was the, the input that I gave council through the memorandum.
Can you speak more specifically to that conclusion in relation to the proximity to the sense, to the sensitive uses? Like what role in your mind as a law enforcement officer does Ellie's being next to the proposed dispensary, what kind of concerns do you have related to that?
Sure. So again, we took a look at crimes that that occurred in the last several years at the existing location for Cana Cruz. When you look at this location, the proximity to a bar next door, the potential for foot traffic between the two causes some concern. People are drinking at the bar. Cana Cruz, they don't, they have a policy of not allowing use on site. That's a good policy. I believe that that's, that's their intent. How difficult is it for somebody to use some of their product in the parking lot? I'll leave that open to your interpretation. So the combination of cannabis sale, the potential for use there, the bar right next door, this isn't a liquor store down the street, it's a, it's a bar right next door. You can hear sounds from that, that bar from the parking lot. The potential of people traveling back and forth, the confluence of the busy street, the high-traffic area, the very narrow driveway, it's actually a bit challenging there if a vehicle's coming and going to get into that same narrow driveway with that southbound traffic on South Main Street. I'm just presenting the facts from my perspective and looking at all of that in totality, the crimes that existed at the existing location, the crimes that have existed, other cannabis businesses, just looking at that as a model in the surrounding area, some of which were serious, the proximity to the bar, the street, high-traffic area, all of that potentially leads us to believe that it's, it's going to require additional resources.
And when you say crimes that have existed, can you clarify what specific crimes you're referring to?
So since 2020, there's been approximately 18 to 20 crimes at the current Cana Cruz location that are associated with that location. That's not to say it's related to that business itself. Some of them are. Some of them are occurring in the parking lot, some of them Some of them are occurring with people coming and going from that location. Do you want me to go into further detail?
Yes, yeah.
At least one burglary, at least six alarm activations at that location. There have been some vehicle-related incidents there, traffic collisions, hit-and-run, some peace disturbances, what we would classify as an argument using common language. We've responded to some vandalisms at that location. We had a brandishing of a weapon out in the parking lot. So, those are all, again, that's not reflective of the business. Similar calls take place at other businesses. But you have the added element that it's proximity to a bar right next door, the product they sell, although I believe their intent is absolutely true that they don't allow use on-site. It's not difficult to pop a gummy in your mouth while you're sitting in the parking lot. All of that, in totality, led to our decision.
Thank you. And this goes to all the staff who'll be answering the questions, not just yourself, but also to you. If I am digging a little deeper, it's not because I questioned the legitimacy of your responses, but rather, I have to make findings to support whatever decision I'm making, and I want to make sure I can create that nexus between what is being mentioned and the suggested impacts. In Cana Cruz's security plan, have you had a chance to read that document?
So, I had a chance to read the security plan. And in reading that plan, about seven pages in, I realized that it was actually the security plan for their existing location, that it was, clearly, they had made an administrative error and had submitted their previous security plan. I have not seen the current security plan. I haven't seen an updated version of that.
Okay. There's one component of, I want to mention several components and get your feedback. Number one, it says that Cana Cruz has a zero-tolerance policy regarding loitering. So, not only can you not consume on-site, you, customers will not be allowed to have anyone waiting for them in the parking lot. All visitors must enter the building and wait in the lobby. They also mentioned that they are going to have at least four uniformed security personnel during business hours, and that bars will be added to the interior of all windows in addition to the bulletproof film that will be added to the windows. Considering the zero tolerance for loitering and the on-site security guards, do you think that that sufficiently mitigates the concerns related to the proximity to Elly's and the walking, potential walking of clients from Elly's over to Cana Cruz's location? Do you think that these measures mitigate that?
I think it certainly helps. I know their intent is good. It's a good-faith attempt. It will mitigate some of it. I don't think it's going to eliminate all the concerns.
Those are all my questions for you. Thank you. I appreciate that. My question is for Lisa. I don't recall if you were with us in your capacity as Director of Community Development at the time. So, if you can't answer this question, then I would direct it to our city attorney. But when we went through the process of revamping our, attempting to consider to revamp our cannabis ordinance, one of the things that we discussed was, or that was discussed at the committee and presented to the council, was reducing the setbacks from $1,000 to, I believe it was $600.
$600.
There were a lot of residents that came to the meeting and voiced their opposition to that. Do you know if it was specific to, I can't recall if it was specific to the daycares and school settings or if it was in relation to all sensitive uses?
No. So, the, there are two state mandated uses, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe there are churches and daycare centers that you cannot adjust below the $1,000 feet. So, it was the other sensitive use categories, such as alcohol use, smoke shop, et cetera, that were, where there's local flexibility to adjust below the state minimum of the $1,000 feet as for the daycare centers and school. And so, it was determined, we presented a recommendation to reduce it and to do some adjustments with the types of permits, consolidating dispensary and retail uses, delivery and dispensary uses, my apologies. And that was voted down at that meeting. So, there were no changes made to the ordinance. So, the distances remain $1,000.
Understood. And then, my question is to the city attorney. The ordinance states that the council has the ability to provide, I want to say it's an exception, to the $1,000-foot setback if we find findings that would, and I'm going to read from the appeal letter here, but it says basically, "Whatever findings we would come up with would have to reinforce, that this would not have a negative impact on the health, safety, and welfare of the general public, would not create negative effects on neighboring properties or businesses, and would otherwise be consistent with the purpose and intent of the city's commercial cannabis regulations." Would that be the scope of whatever findings are made to support that decision?
That's essentially correct, council member, yes.
Okay.
And I just want to go back to your previous question about the security plan, because that was a question that the Community Development Director and I had when they originally submitted their CUP and CCP applications, which is one of the reasons why we pulled it from the Planning Commission consideration. Cana Cruz subsequently updated that. So, we do have the current security plan. And that current security plan is the one that's attached to your council report tonight.
Understood. And I believe that the security plan has additional components of it that are specific to this particular location, correct?
Correct, council member.
Okay. There was a letter sent to us by, I want to say it was JRG attorneys, that said that when we make a determination on whether or not something constitutes a public nuisance, there has to be substantial evidence to support a solid evidentiary value. Do you believe that the police chief's, the police chief's memorandum meets that requirement of solid evidentiary value?
So, I agree with him, council member, with respect to the legal standard. Where I am going to diverge from that is, under your code, a nuisance finding is only one of the three findings that the police chief could make. The other two are whether or not there would be a repeated police department response or whether or not there would be a negative impact on the adjacent residential units. So, a finding that a nuisance condition exists is not required, right? So, the police chief could, in his opinion, have findings that either demonstrate that a repeated police department response would result or there would be some sort of negative impact on the adjacent residential units.
So, what part specifically are you diverging from? Can you repeat that part to me?
So, I think the premise of your question is that the police chief has concluded that a nuisance condition would arise would this commercial cannabis business be relocated. And I don't think that's the conclusion he made. He can certainly speak for himself on that.
Okay. What do you believe, in reading that, the conclusion was reached from that memorandum?
I don't think it's particularly clear because the memorandum speaks to all three of those options as being options. And so, that's why I'm suggesting that you refer that question to the police chief so he can perhaps answer whether or not it's a nuisance, would it result in a repeated police response or have some sort of negative impact on the community?
Mr. Police Chief, do you believe, or interim chief Murray, do you believe that this would be a nuisance?
One more time?
Do you believe that this would constitute a public nuisance, this location?
I think the word nuisance is very subjective. I'm listening to the back and forth, and there's clearly some legal definitions. What I've tried to present is the facts. And I'm presenting the view of, you know, myself in the role as police chief in consultation with our officers and supervisors, executive staff. And that view is that I believe this will result in more police service at that location for the reasons I've described. The proximity to the bar, the level of calls for service that we have at the bar now, taking a look at the calls that we have now at the current Cana Cruz existing location, looking at those together, the proximity to the apartment complex that is right there with 10 windows looking down into the parking lot, the narrow driveway and the confluence where that driveway goes out onto South Main Street is one direction, south on South Main, in a very busy street, where Plaza Circle comes that just north of it slightly. We've had seven vehicle collisions in that immediate area right there, one of which was a fatality of a person on a bicycle last year. From San Joaquin to Blanco, from the intersection north to the southern intersection, there's been 18 collisions in that area. It's a busy area. So, looking at that in totality, that's what I am presenting to you. As to whether or not it's a nuisance, again, that's a subjective term. I think it's going to result in a need for more police resources responding to that location.
Can you clarify what the basis for your concern is with the proximity to the residential area?
So, again, you have to look at it in totality. My concern is this. If you've been down there, that apartment complex borders right there, right along the driveway leading into the parking lot and the entire length of the parking lot. As I mentioned, there's about 10 windows on the second floor that look down into that parking lot. Vehicles coming and going, seven to six minutes turnaround. That's a lot of traffic noise, a lot of headlights. Add to that the challenges of navigating South Main Street. If you've been down there during busy times of the day, you know there's a tremendous amount of traffic. That's going to get backed up. I believe we'll get noise complaints. I believe we'll get additional calls from the apartment complex. I think to the people who live in that complex, it's going to be a challenge for them. And, as I mentioned, there are crimes that have taken place at these businesses as there are with every other business, some of which I think are unique to this particular industry. I think those are going to present challenges for the people who live around there. You add to that, the bar is in very close proximity for the reasons I already described to you, the use of alcohol, the potential use of cannabis products, the combination of both. Again, I'm presenting to you our view, looking at everything in total and presenting that to you.
To the first part of that answer, can you clarify what you meant with the headlights? Are you saying that there are just a lot of cars driving in that direction to go to the apartments, and it would create a traffic issue? Or what do you mean by that part of it?
Sure. For simple terms, light pollution for the people who live in those apartments.
Understood.
The noise increase, high-traffic area right next to the apartment complex. You know, the potential as well, if we're responding to that location, that's going to make noise. I know the plan is to have security at the location. That's great. We have other businesses that have security that are not cannabis businesses, and we respond to calls for service there as well.
Understood. Thank you. And then, just lastly to the city attorney, do you believe at the proximity of the apartments, increased calls for police service and the traffic concerns would meet that solid evidentiary value requirement?
In my opinion, no, council member.
Okay. Those are all of my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Valenzuela, questions?
Yes, just a couple. Just because I know that, you know, nuisance sensitivity areas, they can be pretty subjective. So, to the attorney, do we as a city have written down policies as to what constitutes a nuisance or what is a sensitive area?
So, council member, we do have definitions as to what constitutes sensitive uses, and those are in the commercial cannabis ordinance. And with respect to nuisance, it's, we rely upon that general nuisance standard under California law.
Perfect. And then, also another question to interim chief Murray. I know you mentioned that the increased amount of traffic because of the nature of the business is what will constitute maybe a traffic issue. Now, do we have policies? You know, you said six to seven minutes. Are there, you know, different considerations for businesses that take 10 to 15 minutes to get in and out of? Do we have that as a policy written down?
I think that's probably a better question for Lisa.
There are not specific policies. However, those thresholds are thresholds that could be considered as part of a traffic impact analysis to support the data in terms of traffic circulation flow and volume.
Thank you. No further questions.
Okay. We will go on to councilmember Gonzalez, questions?
Hi, the mayor. While I recognize that at the current location there are no sensitive use businesses, has there been any word from neighboring businesses at the current location as to whether Cana Cruz has been a reputable neighbor? If they have had issues with the business itself, we heard from them at all?
Not to my knowledge. We haven't received any correspondence one way or the other, council member.
Okay. And then, when we talk about the residence, the apartments that are directly, that would be directly behind the proposed location, I had heard that Cana Cruz said they would be more than amenable and open to putting up fencing to cut out some of that light pollution, noise reduction. And while we are well aware that there won't be usage on-site, I'd like to get your opinion on how that would mitigate and potentially even help solve some of the concerns around residential neighboring the apartments.
Yeah. So, thank you for the question, council member. So, in our discussions with Cana Cruz and their representatives, they have suggested they are amenable to including some mitigations on the project site in order to mitigate potential impacts to the adjacent residential use as well as the adjacent restaurant use Elly's, which had some concerns about parking. So, they have indicated to us they're amenable to doing that. They're going to give a presentation, and I believe that they will discuss those specific options in their presentation.
Okay. All right. Well, then, I look forward to the presentation with all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to councilmember Barrera on Zoom. Councilmember Barrera, do you have any questions? Councilmember Barrera, you'll need to unmute your phone. There we go. All right. I'm going to go on to councilmember Osorio. If we hear from councilmember Barrera, we'll come back to you. Councilmember Osorio, questions?
Thank you. City attorney, can you, in talking about the resolution that was passed City attorney, can you, in talking about the resolution that was passed for our cannabis ordinance, there is, it's my understanding that there's like a special clause in there that would make it so that when these things come back to us, we can be a little bit more flexible with decision-making on them? I know that in our briefing, there, we were speaking about how this body would be able to have a little bit more flexibility in being able to bring these items back. I forget, I forget what the item was, but I wanted to kind of see if you could speak to that a little bit.
So if I recall our discussion yesterday and understand your question tonight correctly, it relates to the two types of permits that are at issue this afternoon and whether or not they can be subject to review in the future, should they be granted? Is that correct?
So, so speaking about if, for some reason, this council were to approve this going forward, how can we make sure that Cana Cruz and them operating, if it's not a nuisance, do we have the ability to come back after, let's say, a year or after some time? Can you, can you speak to that process?
Yeah, sure. And thank you for that clarification. So conditional use permits get recorded against the property and they, what we refer to as run with the land, which means that they last so long as that use remains in effect on that property site. There is a standard provision in all of your conditional use permits that allows the city to review those conditional use permits for compliance with the conditions and the standards of those permits. We can do that at any time, especially if there is some sort of violation of the terms or conditions of that conditional use permit. If, for example, the use is being used in such a way as to create a nuisance condition or have a negative impact on the community, at that time, should those conditions arise, we can bring that conditional use permit back to the planning commission for review and potentially revocation, right? The commercial cannabis permits are renewed on an annual basis. So if you, if the city issues a commercial cannabis permit, it can be subject to review at any time, also for compliance, but they do have a 12-month clock. The applicant, the holder of those permits needs to apply every year for a renewal. So if there are some problems with a commercial cannabis use that has a permit, we can always evaluate to determine whether or not they're in compliance and address those if they are out of compliance. So we can do it really at any time, councilmember. Review those once they're issued.
Thank you for that answer. And I guess my question would be, it sounds like the cannabis company has been operating in Salinas for quite some time. I know that the chief brought up some concerns, but is there a reason why we haven't revoked their permit in the past?
To my knowledge, there hasn't been a reason to, councilmember.
Thank you. And then this may be a question for our, our community development director, but how much, do we know how many employees or how much revenue the company or the cannabis agency brings into the city? Do we have a more or less?
I do not have that data. Maybe the city attorney has it available. My understanding is approximately 30 employees at the site, up higher.
Well, we can allow Cana Cruz to address that when they give their presentation.
For the number of employees.
Yeah, and then if the applicant can just...
For the revenue, I don't have that data available.
Yeah, give me a few minutes. I do have it in my email.
Okay, thank you.
Try and find it.
So I'll just be looking. I have no other questions. Thank you.
Okay. I'll try Councilmember Barrera one more time. Councilmember Barrera, do you have any questions? If so, you sure?
Madam Mayor, can you hear me?
Hi there. Yes. Welcome to the party.
Oh, thank you. Well, thank you.
We're on questions right now for Cana Cruz. Or excuse me, for the topic. Thank you.
So Mr. Callahan, there were some great questions here, and it seems like a lot of information was answered. Would you say, I guess, I guess the concerns that I have, because we were hearing from the public, so this business is zone compliant right now as far as with the schools and the churches, they're fine with that? Is that, is that correct? Hello?
Yeah, I think I understand your question, councilmember Barrera, but the proposed location on South Main Street is within 1,000 feet of several, what we call sensitive uses, alcohol-related uses, a smoke shop, and one church.
Yeah, so what I'm saying, that the legal guidelines, they've been taken care of as far as that won't be a problem if this council was to approve this permit.
That's correct, councilmember. So you may approve the permit tonight regardless of the proposed location being within those buffers of sensitive uses, provided you articulate the findings and the reasons why you think there would be no impact on the community due to the proximity to sensitive uses. So yes, you have that authority, councilmember.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. We'll now go ahead and open our public hearing, and, hang on, not yet. I got a lot of enthusiastic people to speak in public comment. We're going to give the applicant, Cana Cruz, 20 minutes to give their presentation, and then we'll go to public comment after that. That's how we run the public hearings.
Hi. I just want to let you know, I'll do the first couple of minutes. I want to introduce ourselves.
I could just have everyone stay quiet. We're going to go ahead and start the public hearing. Apologies if you want to go ahead and reintroduce yourself, and we'll give you 20 minutes.
Sure. My name is Brad Palmer. I'm going to introduce ourselves, and then Peter will take over with more of the details in the slide presentation directly after. My name is Brad Palmer. My brother, Grant Palmer, and I own this business together. We've been at this for quite some time now, but I want to rewind a little bit to let you know how we got here today. My career started as a firefighter before we started Cana Cruz over 16 years ago now. This change of direction for me came about as my brother and I developed alternative medicines for our father to take as he became very ill. His health issues were severe, and he ended up being allergic to some of his prescription medicines and was having severe side effects to others, which led to a shift into cannabis for our family. As a result of harmful and damaging pharmaceuticals, our father has since passed, but our cannabis journey continues as we push to help our local communities. This has always been about providing solutions to achieve a better quality of life for people close to us. We currently operate locally here in Salinas as a retail dispensary for a good five years now. We are not new here, and us moving to a new location does not add a new dispensary to the city of Salinas. Cana Cruz currently provides employment to over 90 local people in our community, and we generated nearly $5 million in tax revenue for the state and our local city this past year. Over $700,000 of that tax revenue went directly to the city of Salinas. My brother and I wholeheartedly believe in what we're doing and will continue to be good operators within our community. We have worked closely with the planning department, members of the community throughout this moving process, to address, address location-related concerns. One of those concerns is being visible in this area of town. As a result, we moved our project from the South Main Street-facing side of the building to the rear unit of this building, not visible from the public right of way. If you're a student or any other member of the community or simply just visiting Salinas, we will not be visible from the sidewalk or South Main Street at all. We understand ellies have some concerns over parking, and we sympathize with them over their current parking lot situation. There are enough issues with the medical offices next door to them where the front entrance to the medical office opens up into their parking lot. It is very difficult for customers of the medical office to distinguish between parking from medical offices and ellies. In order to address this, we decided to fence the parking area in the rear of the building to help mitigate any issues with parking for our neighboring businesses. There will be no direct access to our business if people mistakenly park next door, and we will also have security in the parking lot to ensure customers don't break any of our parking rules. We have every intention of being the best possible neighbor we can be, and we want to remind you that we have a strong willingness to work with the city and others to come up with positive solutions to any and all issues. Some have brought up concerns over traffic, and we would be happy to install speed bumps and stop signs to help address these concerns with customers pulling in and out of our private driveway. Also, to address the headlight situation, people driving in the windows face what I believe is south, and our driveway is going east to west, so headlights might not be an issue there. We've been asked, why did we pursue this property? Why did we continue to proceed with this property after the city informed us of proximity to potential sensitive uses? We chose this property because it was our best option, still is our best option. We never gave up on looking for alternatives. We quickly realized we would need a discretionary hearing with you all on sensitive uses, no matter where we moved in the city. As you will see in our presentation, nearly the entire city is bubbled out with sensitive uses, but exemptions are allowed on these particular items. However, other uses, such as schools and daycares, are not. Schools and daycares have setbacks of 1,000 feet, and there's no room for discretion with these uses. In this location, we are over 3,500 feet away from the nearest school, well within the ordinance guidelines. At the end of the day, I'm here fighting for the survival of my business. I'm here to fight for the stability of my employees and their jobs. I'm here for the opportunity to continue to go to work every day and work towards something that benefits the community as a whole. All I want to do is be allowed to go to work and work hard for what I believe in. Thank you for your consideration. Peter will take over from here.
PowerPoint. Do you have a remote for it?
Go ahead and set up the PowerPoint. Pause the time, please. And while we're getting that set up, city attorney has come up with the tax information for Cana Cruz. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So to answer your question, Councilmember Osornio, Cana Cruz in 2021 paid over $296,000 in taxes. In 2022, almost $369,000 in taxes. And in '23, almost $463,000 in taxes directly to the city. You're welcome.
60. It's in the staff report, too. We good to go?
We are good to go.
All right. You can go ahead and start the timer again for the remaining 15-plus minutes.
Good morning, or good morning, good afternoon, Mayor Craig, councilmember and staff. My name is Peter Brazil, JRG Attorneys at Law, attorneys for the applicant appellants Cana Cruz and Grant Palmer and Brad Palmer. Cana Cruz is here before you because they have been seeking to move their existing authorized dispensary from one South Salinas location to another South Salinas location, specifically 1228 South Main Street. This move requires two entitlements, a CUP because of our request for a parking reduction, and an amendment to our existing commercial cannabis permit to change the location, which is within 1,000 feet of three sensitive uses. For the CUP, the parking reduction is necessary because the city's parking requirements are based on broad and general use categories, because there's a lot of variation in the actual parking needs of specific businesses. Cities, including Salinas, often allow modifications to these requirements in order to, or when they are supported by reliable data, commonly in the form of parking studies. The applicant conducted an extensive parking study that investigated numerous dispensaries, both the city of Salinas and other cities, including Cana Cruz, to assess the actual parking needs during peak hours of operation. This is where the numbers are going to get a little boring for you for a moment, but the project is designated as a shopping center use and requires four spaces per every thousand. The parking study determined that even at peak use, Cana Cruz required only 1.82 per thousand square feet. That's less than half of what's required under the code. It's important to note that this parking rate is also applied to the entire business, even though half of it is basically vacant right now. So even if it's filled, we will satisfy that. This should have been a simple analysis and approval for the planning commission, but instead they decided it was better for the city council to consider this CUP with the CCP in conjunction, and never attempted to make this analysis and our finding. At this point, we are asking you to do so. The amendment to the CCP is just to move the location. Now, it's required, discretionary nature is required because it's within 1,000 feet of three sensitive uses. A smoke shop, use, an establishment where alcohol is sold, and there's multiple ones, but we're spending more time talking about ellies, and the church. Now, on the church one, I want to mention right now, it's by my estimation, 970 feet away, and if you look at the overlay, this is not even touching the building, it's touching vacant land right behind it. If you're really going building to building, you're outside of 1,000 feet, just, I think it's worth noting. Note that these setbacks are not an absolute prohibition. By design, the city can grant an exception to the setback upon findings that the intent of your code would otherwise be met, okay? To be clear, the city council, you, both have the power and the discretion to make this exception and approve the amendment to the cannabis business permit if you make the appropriate findings. Per the city's zoning code, oh, sorry, South Main Street, this brings us to the proposed location. I'll try to shorten this. The client already mentioned this pretty well, but let's make one thing clear, we have to move. The prior location or the current location we're at has been sold, the owner just wants to utilize the property, so we must move. The proposed location was selected by Cana Cruz for three specific reasons. It was available for lease, it suits our applicant needs, and the location was zoned appropriately and had minimal setback problems, an issue that you're going to see demonstrated a little more clearly. Bottom line, the proposed location was the only suitable property that Cana Cruz has been able to find and represents their last and best hope to preserve their business. Let me also add that Cana Cruz has been looking for alternate sites. Most have been unable to locate another site because they don't meet these previously discussed considerations. Per the Salinas city code, retail uses should be in the commercial zone, retail zones. Cana Cruz's dispensary is clearly a retail operation, and the city has determined that cannabis dispensaries are retail in nature. Therefore, dispensaries should primarily be in the commercial zones. Cana Cruz's proposed location is commercial retail. If commercial retail is the appropriate zone for dispensaries, why is it that we don't have any dispensaries in those zones? Now, I believe this is just due to the city not availing itself more liberally, to the tools it has at its disposal, more specifically, the ability to grant exemptions for setbacks when they can make the appropriate findings, which we are asking for today. This map here depicts, kind of on the left, shows the commercial zone in red, so you get an idea of where they are appropriately. The right side is the sensitive uses setbacks, and as you can see, they're essentially umbrellas over each other one, and they cover the entire city. For the most part, there is almost no property that you can try to acquire that won't be subject to some sort of sensitive use. This is the main reason why Cana Cruz has only been able to identify the current subject property. The map also generates or demonstrates why the city's code provides for the ability to grant these exceptions, because if not, it'd be basically impossible to find a place for a cannabis dispensary in the city of Salinas. All right, this map is a closer look at the sensitive setbacks again. I'll make one point here and move on, since some of this has been touched on. There are technically seven different setbacks. Two of them are nondiscretionary, and we're not even addressing those, they aren't applicable here. The three that we are addressing are discretionary in nature, and you do have the power to make a decision if you make the appropriate findings. This map is a specific close-up of our site, again showing the setbacks for the proposed locations, and details the three kind of sensitive uses setbacks that we're dealing with, the alcohol-serving one, smoke shop uses, and the church. Alcohol uses are prevalent throughout the commercial cannabis zones and cannot be avoided as the map clearly demonstrates, and by the number of setbacks that we run into, the other ones only have one. The smoke shop setback is actually kind of odd and peculiar because no other jurisdictions that I'm aware of have this, this particular type of setback, and the state doesn't either. Cana Cruz's project features substantial design properties and security measures and operation facets that are designed to address and mitigate any health, safety, planning considerations related to these three setback issues. These policies and procedures that address, mitigate, or protect against these foreseeable issues due to the proximity of these sensitive uses are the basis that we are hoping you will rely on to make the findings necessary for the exception. As touched on previously, the city has discretion and the power to grant this exception for these sensitive uses upon findings that the purpose and intent of the cannabis ordinance would otherwise be met. I won't go through all of them, there are four of them. Three of them are generally congruence with state law. It's the main one, is the first one, that has to do with the health, safety, and welfare of the community, its business, and its residents. Cana Cruz's specific project design, which was developed in close collaboration with city planning, along with the security measures, quality control, and related policies and procedures, go above and beyond local and state regulations and promote the protection of the health, safety, and welfare of their community. This next slide will detail Cana Cruz's security measures, protections against youth access, management policies. Sorry. No, that's the security ones. This is the youth access, sorry. So I'll go back. All right, these next series of slides, oh, sorry, this slide details the policies and procedures directed at restricting youth access to the dispensary and their products. The implementation of these policies and procedures has resulted in no incidents involving youth with respect to Cana Cruz's dispensary operations. This particular slide is about management policies implemented by Cana Cruz, which are strictly enforced and are directed to ensure that there are no incidences or nuisances occurring on or about Cana Cruz's premises. They don't guarantee anything, but they are, they're designed to prevent this. They are good-faith efforts to do so, and they're over above what is required. That apparently isn't a slide. All right. This is the last of the slides addressing these things, but this is Cana Cruz's quality control procedures, which include tracking and tracing of all inventory and sales. The products are tested for safety, tracked and traced. This is to ensure that the products are safe and are going into the appropriate hands. While the preceding slides detail Cana Cruz's measures to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community, there is no need to actually speculate about this. Cana Cruz's actual track record speaks for itself. There we go. This includes their other location in Santa Cruz, which has been in operation for basically 10 years. It is within 150 feet of two alcohol establishments, without incident. Additionally, they are within approximately 1,700 feet of a school. When recently contacted by us, the school head of school basically quoted or was stated to me that, quote, "I honestly can't think of a single instance where we've been impacted by anything ever happening at Cana Cruz," end quote. I'm going to truncate my police department analysis only because I think you guys have gone over this pretty substantially. As part of the process, Cana Cruz was required to have the applicant, applications circulated amongst departments. This is commonplace in land use and planning. It's designed to create this collaborative process where we can address issues and mitigate them.[1800.53] process where we can address issues and mitigate them. There were five essentially memos. The first two addressed parking, which our subsequent parking study and amended parking study essentially addressed it to the point where a third memo was issued by the police that said, the, quote, "The Salinas Police Department does not oppose the reduction in available parking," end quote. That ended that issue. A fourth memo was issued on March 16th, just two weeks before our planning commission meeting, and that stated that the police depart, quote, "The police department sees no issues with the parking reduction or relocation of the dispensary," end quote. End quote, although the subject site is located adjacent to a residential area, it is the opinion of the chief of police that the operation of the commercial business in such a location would not tend to cause a public nuisance or a situation in which may result in repeated police department response or a negative impact to the adjacent residential units. As discussed, there was also a final memo, which was released three days later, which still said, quote, "The police department sees no issues with the police, the parking reduction, or the relocation," end quote, but this time made a 180 determination that there was a nuisance. And the findings were rather summary in nature, and some of them didn't correlate with the, with the actual summation. This is where we've sent a letter analyzing to the city exactly the legal standard that should be required for these types of findings. I'm not going to go into grand detail about it, the letter does a much better job of it, but in essence, this, the actions of the city with respect to these permits is quasi-judicial. It requires specific findings to be made, and certain facts, substantial facts to support those findings, and there should be some causal connection between them. The memo, in my opinion, is very summary in nature, doesn't give you details as to why you made that finding, and should be questioned for those reasons. If you find, the city council has the power and discretion to scrutinize the police memo with regards to these findings, to determine whether there is substantial evidence or facts, or a causal connection. If you don't find that to be the case, or have other reservations about either the accuracy, truth, or findings of it, you have the power and the discretion here to disregard that memo and approve Cana Cruz's, Cana Cruz's commercial cannabis permit. And this is where I'm going to add something, because someone was mentioning earlier. The memo was only triggered due to its proximity to the residential property. Now, I'll tell you right now, I've measured, it's about 120 feet of fence line in the northwest corner of our property. The only thing that faces us are the backs of two buildings, and I counted roughly about, I think it's four or five windows facing down there. I could be off on that. But the important note here is that, this has been going on for two years, we've had two public meetings that have been noticed to the public, we haven't heard a single thing in negative or positive from them with respect to either the tenants there or the landlord. And as stated previously, we are very amenable to any other additions or changes that need to be made to the project to ameliorate any issues with that. We can increase the size of the fence, we can put new plantation or plants, or other types of foliage to block the view, or whatever else will ameliate any concerns that they may voice to us. Lastly, it's important to understand that these, that the applicant, these applications have been prepared in accordance with existing regulations. At past planning commission meetings, there have been comments regarding cannabis, cannabis crime, noise, et cetera, without any facts to support their conclusion.
Mr. Brazil, you're at less than two minutes, so I want to give you.
I'll finish exactly in that time. Additionally, they were inconsistent with current city regulations and state law, or just ignore that Cana Cruz's business and applications are compliant with state law. Slides 19 through 12 address these issues, I'm not going to go over them there, but they're there for your edification. So I'm going to pounce through four of these and close this out. So in closing, Cana Cruz is a proven safe operator and provides numerous benefits to the community. Cana Cruz is also locally owned and operated, and has been in existence for over a decade. On behalf of Cana Cruz, its owners, its employees, we would like to thank you for your consideration regarding this appeal, and I ask that you find the wisdom and courage to grant Cana Cruz's appeal and provide them with the ability to continue operating.
Thank you.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and open a public comment on this item, so Cana Cruz only, please.
I'm thanking the Google Street View for driving behind the building, beside the building, and in and out of South Main Street. When you, you can see that the taqueria next door is built only about maybe five feet from the sidewalk. Between the sidewalk and that building is a four-foot shrubbery. Just past that is a tree. The people who use marijuana are supposed to be poor, bad sighted, you know, problems with their eyesight, elderly, people with PTSD, maybe they can't see that well over a shrub and past a tree. They are also going to have to park over the sidewalk and have a bike lane right in front of them to even be able to see up the street. I want to know if the city has done a survey of how this parking lot is affected by that building being only five feet back from the sidewalk. Now, the elevation behind the business is about four feet above the surface of the parking of the street, so to put up a fence, as they're saying, they're going to go up with a 10 or 15-foot fence. The same thing with that apartment building. They already have a five-foot fence, are they going to build another 15, 20 feet above it, so the second story doesn't see in it? So it's more like eight or 10 windows. Downstairs and upstairs, look into the cannabis.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Well, hello. Hi, my name is Dr. Pablo Romero, I'm a proud immigrant from Mexico, who came to work in the fields until it was time to go to the army and then go to medical school. For the last 45 years or so, I've been delivering thousands of children, who sadly, a few have gone on to become addicted to tobacco, to alcohol, to opioids, and now this new thing, which is weed, weed everywhere. It would really behoove you to remove most of this garbage from, from, from reach. I do not agree with any access to this stuff, even unless so in a neighborhood so, so beautiful as South Salinas, which is, you know, the place is very close to Clinica Salud, who takes care of a lot of farm workers, to Star Pharmacy, to Doctor Sanduri, please, let him go somewhere else where they don't cause as much harm to our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, my name's Elizabeth, I'm, I live in back of Ellie's and apartments, so my thing is, why should a dispenser be open five minutes away from elementary school, middle school, and high school? Yes, it's not 100 feet within location, however, many high school students, including my brother, walk around South Main Street. Also, as a mother and apartment resident, the last thing I want is a dispensary near my home, child's daycare, and school. That will not, that will also cause traffic, accidents, and conflicts between bars and dispensaries. Yes, Cana Cruz and Santa Cruz didn't have any conflicts within their community, but let's remember, this is Salinas, where there is a high crime rate, and there's a lot of violence within our community, and the last thing we need is more of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, hello. Okay, so there is not enough free search that has been made on the effects of the new forms of cannabis that are accessible through the dispensaries. Recently, there was information released to the public that confirmed that many brands contain harmful, harmful chemicals. We already have a dispensary here in town, I truly don't think that there is a need for more. I also serve the school district here in Salinas, and I have seen it be a problem for the younger generations. It is something that concerns me, because they're still developing, right? And although the school that was close by didn't say it directly, who knows, maybe there might be some incidents, so I just wouldn't want to normalize it any longer. That's, that's why I would have to vote for no. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Fatima Salenga Samora, I'm 19 years old, I've lived in Salinas my whole life. Growing up, I have firsthandly seen my peers start smoking from as own, as early as middle school, and from middle school to high school to graduation, I've seen them continue smoking. Unknowingly, what is being done is really wrong, it's also really dangerous. Drugs are too easily attainable for our youth, and we do not know what's the long-term effect for what is actually being consumed. Before we even consider building another dispensary in Salinas, I genuinely believe that we need more studies done on marijuana. One of the most recent studies on a very popular marijuana product is called Stizzy. The product was found to have pesticides which are linked to hormonal disruption and liver cancer. I really want to see those in my community flourish properly, and they should all have the right to flourish properly. I think that having Cana Cruz open isn't going to contribute to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name's Anthony, and I'm opposed to the relocation of Cana Cruz, because they mentioned that they can make exceptions for them, but let's say another dispensary wanted to open, and they didn't follow the guidelines, then they'd try to get an exception as well, and of course, you know, then everyone else is going to want to bend the rules and not follow them, and I think it's just, it doesn't send a good message to others. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, my name is Crystal, and I'm opposed to the dispensary being built, because it's still in a general area where families and children are going to be, for the lack of better words, wandering. And I just don't think it's a good spot in general for them to be at. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, my name is Cassandra, and I'm against the move of Cana Cruz, and I'm against the move from Cana Cruz, because I am a mom, I am an aunt, I am a big sister, and I just don't think that it should be that close to where my kids go to school, or my kids go play at a park, or my kids go to a restaurant, or something like that. So that is one of the reasons that I'm against it. This is my son, and he would like to talk.
My name is Zaini, I'm a student at Salinas High School, and I'm against the, well, I'm against it because I felt like it would be too close to the school, and it's more easy of, to access to like students and stuff, and yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Hello, my name is Anayeed, and I am currently a Salinas High student, and I would like to say that I don't agree with the location that they would like to put their business, because although it is not within the 1,000 feet with school students, from the school especially pass by there before and after, and especially during lunch, it is very popular in the area that students pass by there, and they also, those that are still on campus are in, are 18 and have a medical card, can easily access cannabis and take it to school and sell it to those that are still underage. Teenagers are very easily influenced, and on top of that, so what makes us think that the population of minors won't increase with being on cannabis? And on top of that, there is a bar like other people mentioned, and I feel like it can, it can cause collisions with them being on alcohol, and on top of that, being on cannabis, and I just don't think that's safe for that area specifically. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, my name is Zarin, I'm currently a high school student at Salinas High. I'm against this, this location, biggest reason being us as students who are going to have to pass by every day going and coming from school. Also, during our lunch hour, this area is heavily populated by our stu, by the students, and firsthand seeing how cannabis has a big influence on these teens, on us, and on the gen, on the younger generations like elementary students. I have seen from my brother that they have started smoking at such a young age, and this shop being put so close to us is going to be, it's going to make it a bigger problem than it already is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anna. Like last time, I'm a little nervous, but like I said, I am a parent of one of the girls that just spoke, Anayeed, and my concern here is that after school on Fridays, they like to go like to one of the restaurants, whether it's Wingstop, Starbucks, after that they like to go into the bowling alley. My concern is, right now that I've heard, they're saying something about a fence, the security guard, are you going to put a security guard in every block on the way to there? And that location, students pass by many locations just right there, and then just saying, is the fence going to block the sidewalk where the kids are not going to walk around? There's many other ways that kids could go around where that location's going to be at. My concern as a parent is like, you're going to have people driving around, forget the bar, that, I know, that everybody keeps bringing up the bar, forget the bar, forget them drinking and driving. You have people that are going to get high, there's not going to be a security guard two blocks away from that location? Is there? No, they're, they're so easy for a car to pull over into a corner, smoke, or take a gummy, or whatever it is. It doesn't take that long to smoke, get in, get high. And there's, at this point, you have a lot of population that smoke to a point, not just to feel okay, or, oh, I'm in pain, or whatever, you know, they get high to get super high, and they're driving like that. You know what I mean? My concern, my child will be walking that, that street, you know, that's my concern as a parent, I mean, there's so many places in Salinas that they could like go and move that location, why there? Why where the schools are, or church, whatever it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon, my name is Liliana, I'm a part of the Saint Teens Empowerment Project, a program with Sunsi Strenners. We do not support the relocation of the dispensary as a youth. We have seen firsthand our peers use cannabis on school, campus, parks, et cetera. We acknowledge that youth under 21 can't go into dispensary themselves to go buy these marijuana products. However, they get it from friends, family members, or even strangers. Although you cannot buy, you cannot buy them themselves, there is easy access to medical marijuana cards at the age of 18, where 18-year-olds in high school can walk from the nearby three nearby high schools, Palmer North of Dame and Salinas High School, to purchase marijuana, not for medical use, but for recreational use for themselves and their friends. According to the ordinance section 16B 3070, no commercial cannabis business may operate with 1,000 feet of a school, college, university, church, or even house or of worship. Smoke shops in location where alcohol is solely served. These examples are Compass Church located on South Main Street is an eight-minute walk and a three-minute drive. The Avalio, the Valley Bowl is located 0.3 miles away from, and a six-minute walk. Dispensary serves alcohol as well as having many youths there, although today, because of the ordinance that was voted on, this relocation should not be approved. Where we are in many, in no way applying that Cana Cruz sees thousands of minors, but we do not know that access will increase due to the location and the pro, the process move. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kenneth Golden, I'm currently the general manager at Ellie's Restaurant, located directly to the proposed cannabis dispensary relocation project. Our restaurant currently experiences serious and unresolved parking issues. It's crowded and already overburdened by the customers of other surrounding businesses who don't have enough parking of their own. The approval of this project will amplify this problem greatly and further harm our business. We do have customers tell us that the only reason they avoid our restaurant is because of our difficulty in parking. The nature of this in-and-out traffic created by a dispensary will also place our pedestrians' traffic at risk in our parking area, which includes families and children. Finally, all who work in our parking area to avoid the lack of parking, and all the proposed location will then be forced to walk from our parking lot in front of our entrance and across the very landscaping. We work very hard to represent Salinas and feel it should. We ask that you please continue to recognize and uphold the facts and reasons why this project should not be approved in this location. It will place our business and others as well in our community in harm's way. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon, my name is Jorge Rubio, I work for Sunsi Strenners. I've been working for Sunsi Strenners for over 10 years now, I started as a youth volunteer. I was actually part of the hearings that came about when Proposition 64B, before it was passed, we were having these discussions in the community, where community members, business owners who wanted to open a dispensary, a grow house, or even a manufacturing company were part of those conversations. We had city officials that were part of those conversations, and we had this agreement where we wanted, we, okay, we were going to have these dispensaries come in, but we wanted to put them in areas where they were not located near these safe zones, as they've been mentioning throughout the whole meeting, so I'm not going to go over that. Our concern is, we're not against a business at all, our concern is more where this business plans to move to. It is in a very high-traffic area, if I'm correct, there's three high schools, there's a middle school, I just found out today, there's three parks nearby within a half-mile radius. And when we talk about 1,000 feet, it does, I mean, it, you know, it's 1,000 feet, it seems like, like it's going to be a long distance, but 5,000, 500 feet is just from here to Subway, or from here to the, to the post office. It's not a large distance. A lot of the schools that, that were mentioned, Notre Dame, Palmer, Salinas High, even the parks, they're all within five mile, five minutes from driving, within 15 to 20 minutes of walking. An 18-year-old with a medical card can easily walk to the dispensary during lunch and go back to school. I understand that to get a, a medical card, you have to go to a medical doctor, but those things are easy. I was 18, I was 19 once, I had peers, friends who got it, so it's easy to get one, so I just wanted to end it with that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, so my name is
Hello, so my name is Misal. I am against the relocation, not so much the business, because we're here to discuss the relocation, not to discuss the benefits or, you know, the uses for marijuana. The reason why I'm against is because, well, everything we've heard, we've heard that even though it is 1,000 feet more from a school, it's far from reality. Kids are using it nowadays. 18-year-olds can walk in with a medical ID and purchase and take it to school. It's not that hard to get a medical ID. And, you know, we get two sides of an argument. One, that benefits from the business, such as customers' money, employees benefiting checks, and then we get the concerned residents, the citizens. And at the end of the day, if health, welfare, or safety is what's going to determine this, I think it's just best to not have it relocated there. It's just best to keep searching somewhere else. It's going to be a lot more constant pros if we have that store there. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon, my name is Pablo. I just had like, so you guys talked about, they talked about the fact that other cannabis companies had to like get away from that save, that 1,000 feet. So my question concern is, why does Cana Cruz want to imply that that doesn't benefit them? The Ellie's is across the street, right? There's a bar, there's the bowling alley that serves alcohol, Loblif, all these other restaurants that, all these other places that serve alcohol or sell alcohol, why are we not gonna, why are they trying to mimic that? They don't deserve that as putting it right next to Ellie's. Like, come on, concern, like, you know, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon, my name is Alex. I came here today because I don't agree with the new relocation for Cana Cruz, first off, because I have two sisters currently attending Salinas High School. And as you guys know, high schools have late starts and students are able to leave there in lunch and could be easily walking around the area. Nowadays, you guys know it's easy for a minor to ask an adult for, for example, homeless to buy their goods in order for exchange of money. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Barbara Palmer. My sons are Grant and Brad Palmer, and I would like to give you a little bit of background. Several years ago, their father, my husband Bob Palmer, an architect, became very ill. After 10 years, he was ill for 10 years, and then his doctor said, Barbara, you're losing him. He was 6'1", he got down to 110 pounds. I called Brad and I called Grant. They both immediately said the same thing. One was in Southern California, one was a firefighter up in Sonora. "We want to come home and see Dad." I said, "Come on home." They did. Grant pulled out this little vial and said, "Dad, three drops in your orange juice at night, you will sleep through the night, you will wake up hungry." Bob gained 10 pounds in two and a half months. At the end of three months, I got another call. They both called me and said, "We want to have another family meeting." So, okay, come on home. And they said, "We want to open up a dispensary, a cannabis dispensary." And I said, "Oh, no, are you really sure about this?" And Bob looked at me and said, "Look at me, it works." And I said, "Okay, then I'm going to give you rules. Here are the rules. You pay your rent two days before it's due, so the owner of a building gets the rent on time. You always pay your taxes on time, and in terms of your employees, they are never paid under the table. They follow the rules. Please, please, consider a yes vote on letting them have their dispensary moved." Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, Eleanor Elliott. And I, you know, the fastest-growing population of cannabis users in the United States today is senior citizens. And many, many of my fellow seniors rely on the medicinal benefits of cannabis. And, you know, I would rather see, and so many of us would rather see, take a gummy to sleep at night than a chemical, you know, prescribed by our doctors, or pain medication, opiates. And a lot of us also no longer drive. Getting around the city is difficult on public transportation. And Cana Cruz, where it was located, where it is located currently, is not, is very difficult to get to on the bus system. So making it more accessible to us is a benefit. I really do support seeing Cana Cruz move to South Main. And I just want to thank you all for listening.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Marika. And I think that, I'm not opposed to people using it as a medicine because they really need it, but I'm opposed to it because I see a lot of teenagers, and not only teenagers, adults, lost in the streets, consuming drugs, not only drugs, but because since cannabis started, if you see the city of Salinas, you go to the store, you smell marijuana. You go to another store, you smell marijuana. You go somewhere else, you smell stuff. And it's just so unhealthy. And I do get stressed out because yesterday I just went to AMPM by CBS at Also and the smell is so strong and it's just like, what can we do? Like, how is the air pollution, how, this is polluting the air? Like, how, the kids smell it? So I don't know what else people, like, how this could be solved. And I'm saying this and I'm stressed about this because my brother is in this, and it's just like, why, why people don't think about the kids? The kids, I don't have no kids, but I'm still speaking for my family because my brother has fallen and it's just a struggle. It's difficult to live with someone like that. And I want to say the community needs to get up and do something about it because you just opened, okay, cannabis, yes, yes, but what happens to the childrens? If you don't have children, think about your nieces, your nephews, your grandson, your kids, please think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, good evening or good afternoon. My name is Kobe Butler. I am a lifelong Monterey Bay resident. I've actually had the privilege of working at Cana Cruz for about three and a half years now. In that time, Grant and Grad have demonstrated themselves to be honest and reputable employers. I obviously am in strong support of the move. I've had the privilege of watching all of the hearings so far, and I've kind of reserved my personal opinion, but since other people are giving their subjective opinion, I'll give my own. This is not a hearing about the legalization of cannabis. This is not a hearing about the studies of traffic violations in general with cannabis. This is specifically a hearing about Cana Cruz moving about two miles, not a new dispensary. And I think that the discussion should remain on that. I hope you remain on that when you're making your decisions. Our customers are not nuisances. Our customers are our neighbors. And I think that we should remember that when we think about these kinds of things. So thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi. I actually agree with what the young man ahead of me said. My name is Daniel McCall. I'm a resident here in Salinas. I've been here about 40 years. The original applications to bring cannabis shops into California and Salinas, put them off into areas that weren't in our general mainstream. They weren't on our main streets, they weren't on areas that we were going to travel daily. Since, we've been revamping our ordinances to fulfill expanding motions, such as now can we bring it inside of our mainstream? If you move this one into South Main Street, you will put another one in, and another one. I have a child that just graduated Salinas High this year. Him and his partners, every day at lunchtime, are down around Ellie's, they are down around Smalley's, they are down around all those shops, McDonald's. There's dozens of homeless that live in that general area every single day. I've even called the police on some, I didn't know if they were dead or not. Those individuals are actually adults. They are eligible to buy marijuana at these distributors. They will cause problems with these people. You talked about the 1,000 feet, the students that walk down every day, it affects them greatly. And the revenue that's being received by Cana Cruz, no problem with these guys making money. They've already proven, 2,001, $100,000 was paid to the city, 22, $3,000. The next year, $4,000. 22, $25,000 is going to be more. They're going to make money.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Joey Espinosa. I'm a lifelong resident of Salinas and I currently reside in South Salinas. I think it's very important to note that part of why we're here today is this process is so challenging because the ordinance the city created nearly a decade ago is incredibly restrictive and virtually impossible to appease. This is evident with the fact that despite the city awarding five retail permits, only three stores have managed to open after nearly 10 years of the ordinance's existence. The ordinance not only includes many extra sensitive uses, but even goes as far as giving a 1,000-foot number that to some may be arbitrary. This has forced businesses to operate in areas not ideally suited for commercial use, further complicating their success. And now you're faced with one of the original operators, one who found a way to open, and is now your top-performing cannabis business, that's facing the possibility of their facility being shut down, which will mean jobs lost in a time where good jobs are hard to come by. They're also one of the only dispensaries currently open that have increased their tax revenue year over year while your others are decreasing. They've done their best to work through this extremely restrictive ordinance and are far away from all state mandated sensitive uses while meeting the extra 400-feet distance that Salinas has imposed. Please consider your purpose and intent of your ordinance to promote and develop the
Hi, welcome.
How's it going? My name is Giovanni Mendieta. I just want to start off by saying that I have anxiety, so I might stutter a little bit here and there, but I do want to start off by saying that about five years ago, so I went into a doctor's office because I was having anxiety attacks consistently. I mean, like, I couldn't get out of bed because I couldn't, I could barely move, I couldn't eat, I couldn't, I couldn't do anything. I went to a doctor's office. The first thing, the first thing that came out of her mouth was, "Have you tried prescription medicine?" I was scared, you know, it was during the timeframe where you saw all celebrities, all these mainstream rappers, everybody would be consuming Xanax. So that was the first thing they told me. They were like, "Hey, you know, you seem to be suffering from anxiety, so we're going to put you on Xanax. We're going to give you this medication first." And at first, I was a little skeptic, I didn't know how it would be. However, as time went on, I developed a need for it, to the point where I, even now, I feel like if I don't take my medicine within 24 hours, I start to break down as a human being and I can't, I can no longer even hold the conversation with mountains and get significant other without feeling some level of either anxiety or just withdrawal symptoms. However, down the line, I met another physician that did recommend cannabis use to me and that completely changed my life. Ever since then, I've used CBD, I've used THC, all to help me both sleep, eat, and live a better life. I love my family even more ever since then. And truly, I'm happy with my life. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for your time. Bear with me as this is very uncomfortable for me. My name is Jasmine Shaw and I'm the operations director for Cana Cruz. I have worked directly with the owners for six years now. Started a month after my 21st birthday, I had just submitted my enrollment fee for CSU MB for a bachelor's degree in business management. Within six months, I opened the Salinas location as the store manager. I cannot thank Brad and Grant enough for providing an open, creative, and scene-work environment to allow me to grow into where I'm at today with a career I love. The Salinas community will always be special to me as they have always made me feel at home, even when I had just moved away from mine. I have seen the location grow, change, and change since conception, and the one thing that remains the same is the welcome and homely environment this community creates and stands by. Now I'd like to advocate for our purpose. Without cannabis, my husband and I would not have a normal life. My husband was diagnosed with Tourette's as a child, seen specialists, the best doctors, ran tests after tests, labs after labs, medication after medication, and this was done multiple points in his life. THC has been the one and only thing that allows him to wake up every morning, not come full-sleep. He's able to work, play golf, and ultimately, we get to wake up as everybody else does. I have struggled my whole life with anxiety and OCD. My grandmother, before her passing, was in immense amount of pain, and my grandfather, after her passing, whose anxiety was unbearable. I could list many more examples, but the relief that cannabis naturally provides is why we do what we do. I could, this, thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, I'm Steve Hoyt. I would like to speak against what the chief said earlier about the increased traffic and dangers of South Salinas. It seems to be okay that someone can go into Ellie's and have three cocktails or beers or whatever they want with their dinner or lunch and get out, and then get in the car. They may or may not be DUI. Nobody's coming out of Cana Cruz high. It doesn't happen, and it won't happen. I don't work for them, I'm not related, I'm a customer. I use THC now and CBD, CBN to sleep. It helps me, it helps me reduce my, the amount of pain pills that I need. My doctor suggested marijuana to me years ago, long before I started taking it. I use it now. My opioid use is minuscule compared to what it used to be. I don't need it now. I had triple bypass, I broke my back last year. Helps alleviate my pain, keeps me going. This guy's been nice. I like him. Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name's Nicole and I'm here because I'm a mom. I've been working for Cana Cruz for almost, almost five years now, and I have two babies. I'm a single mom. And, sorry, I'm a strong, independent woman because of these guys, so I just want to say thank you so much and please pass this because we have so many employees that their livelihood depends on this. And my babies are beautiful, my baby does ballet, my son does baseball, all because of my job. So this is everything that they're saying about, oh, because you have kids, I mean, educate your kids, talk to them, talk to them about what's good, talk to them about what's bad. That's all you got to do. But I love Cana Cruz and Cana Cruz is different. Other dispensaries, you go and you get out, but Cana Cruz builds relationships with their patients, all of them. And it's just a different, a different, way different vibe, so thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, good evening, city council. My name's Suvee Zavala. I just wanted to pitch in my two cents here on my own accord, of course. I'm a parent, so I can definitely see both sides of the spectrum as I speak here. I still remember being a teenager and my mom's reaction when she found out that I was using cannabis in high school. That will never go away, just the letdown. That said, I'm also here as a cancer survivor at the age of 37, and having lived experience both on the recreational reckless teenage use side and also on the medicinal side, I can say that it brings big benefit to those who need it, have a prescribed need. I agree with the parents that have spoken here, but I feel like at the same time, it's just that old garden excuse of not in my backyard. You know, this wasn't the way when I was growing up. I can tell you, it brings a huge benefit to the people that really need it. I think as residents here, we'd be doing a disservice if we don't allow this business to move. Again, that's just my own opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
My name is Jeff Sherman. I'm a pharmacist and pharmacy owner of Sherman's Apothecary, which is literally about 50 yards from where the proposed site will be. My, I've been on record here at the city council as saying I have no problem with cannabis and its uses, as you, so many people have acknowledged. It makes a big difference in a lot of people's lives. My particular issue is the actual area and where it's going to be. My window, as I'm filling prescription, stands right there on South Main and I constantly am seeing the traffic issues, not only in front of our South Main, but then going into Star Market, the U-turns, the illegal U-turns. What my concern is, is that this is going to add a lot of congestion. There's one little driveway going in and out of this place, as they already mentioned, it's three, five-minute turnarounds. That's a lot of congestion, and I watch this on a daily basis. And I, and I watch this on a, on a daily basis. It's obviously worse during the afternoons when the kids are going out of school. You have a lot of the high schoolers walking. So again, I just really ask you to think about that, that particular area. And if you've ever driven down there, please go down there in the afternoons and see what I'm talking about because it's, it's a, it's a dangerous area to add that much traffic. And again, I wish these gentlemen well. It's just, this is not the spot for it in Salinas. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, my name is Charlie Sammet. I own the property next door to the proposed location. And I won't reiterate everything you've been bored stiff reading and what I've written and sent you. But there are two things I do want to reiterate, and one thing I'm a little confused about. I received the traffic parking, or the parking report, finally. And in the first page of the parking report, it clearly states that there's a maximum of seven employees estimated on-site at one time. Now, I don't know if any of you have visited the existing facility. I took the time to do so. And like I told them, it was a well-run machine, but it wasn't run with seven employees. Now, if you, then if you read their security paperwork that they're proposing, they're proposing four security guards on location at one time. We saw over 10 people working in that facility alone, much less an additional four. So I don't understand how this, this parking study was done correctly if that information was provided incorrectly. I'm still very concerned about the traffic. I'm very concerned about the parking. It's gonna hurt us. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Chris Bun. I think the issue here is, is the good use for cannabis and the abuse for cannabis. And I think we're talking about the next generation. And I think a lot of these young people, maybe a lot of them enjoy using that for recreational use. But I think most of them are not, not, not have a proposition for that. They don't want to get involved. They don't want to see their friends get involved. So that's the abuse of cannabis. And for the use, of course, for medical, it's wonderful for a lot of people. But it doesn't have to be right here. It could even be by mail. You can get cannabis by mail. You don't have to have a, have a, have a place downtown where it's easily accessible to young people getting the abuse of it. Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Hi. Hello, my name is Daniel, and I'm the store manager for Cana Cruz in Salinas. I'm also a born and raised native and a full-time father for Terrarista Middle School and High School graduate. I've been a security, I've been in the security field for over 10 years and maintain an active guard card. I started working with Cana Cruz three years ago in January 2021, 2021, as security during COVID, ensuring the DCC Department of Cannabis Control's policies were followed, such as checking IDs, UV black lights, and ensuring that security of patients and employees are good. Cana Cruz provided me with the opportunity to advance, and I was eventually promoted into management. In my two years as store manager, my apologies, we have not had any instances where we needed to contact police and all situations are handled professionally and respectfully between myself and a trained manager. The concern now is we are considered a nuisance, and if, excuse me, and if the concern is to, because we are a dispensary, the question asked to be asked as to how it plays a factor with consideration to Cana Cruz not having to call for a peace officer in years. At this new location, we'll be more well-secured with fencing all around the property, security patrolling the interior and exterior of the property, and ID verification checks with 24/7 cameras. There has been admin errors and missed handoffs that caused a delay in the process, and we hope that everything is considered neutrally and fairly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer, since you're the applicant, you're gonna have five minutes to respond with your team. So, thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, good evening. Can we get my paraphernalia here? I'm having three hats today. The first hat is as a mother and a grandmother. My granddaughter either rides her bike or walks right in front of this new dispensary, and I'm really concerned for her. Marijuana is addictive to all those kids in all those schools, even though it does a lot of good for a lot of people. I'm not against that. I just want them to move somewhere else. My second hat, my second hat is as a 53-year-old resident of Monterey Park. The neighborhood there has a lot of break-ins. What do you think it's gonna do now? Horribly more impacted. Now, people are walking across the street smoking marijuana. And they're not even there yet. So heaven forbid for that. And third, the hat that I have on is a Realtor. Yes, I'm a Realtor for 25 years. And, you know, Main Street is an arterial way. Is that what you guys want to be seeing? The security guards at the entrance of Main Street? Is that your city you want people to come to? I don't think so. It is the last but not least, you're all going into a reelection. Do you want to be remembered by these people? Or those people that are all your constituents? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers wish to comment on this item? If so, please stand up. I want to get an idea of who we've got left. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. So just listening to all of the discussions, I have no doubt that you're a fantastic employer and that you're responsible. I do have concerns about the location. I travel on South Main Street frequently. It gets very congested. There are homeless people who are struggling to walk across the street. There are a lot of pedestrians there as well. The cycle of six to seven minutes and the volume of business that you do is also concerning. While traveling on that street, it is not uncommon for people not to wait for the dotted line and to immediately pull into the, to the bike lane to make a right-hand turn. I'm a little concerned, Councilmember Osonio, that you asked about revenue. And I, I think we really need to consider public safety. And I think that should be at the forefront because it will definitely increase traffic and congestion. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else for public comment in chambers, I'm gonna go over to Zoom. Does any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on the Cana Cruz item for tonight? If so, please use the raise hand function. We have Bill Leif. Mr. Leif, you have a minute and a half. Welcome.
Thank you, Bill Leif, President of Monterey County. A lot of opinions out there tonight. Denying the conditional use permit for this business seems punitive and inconsistent. Consider Clay's Liquors, operating less than 500 feet from sensitive areas, including the high school, with limited parking and proximity to a 2019 murder. The store is still open. Kids can go into that store as long as they don't buy alcohol, but they see a lot of alcohol and tobacco. The 7-Eleven near Salinas High School less than 200 feet sells alcohol and tobacco, has limited parking, is an extremely high-traffic area, and was also near that same murder on the 100 block of Clay Street. It remains operational. Everybody knows at Ellie's, you can go on the back patio and smoke tobacco or cannabis. You don't have to go to the cannabis store to do that. No actions have been taken against these establishments. It's hypocritical to target this business while others with similar issues continue to operate. Denying this CUP without fair consideration is unjust and could lead to legal repercussions for punitive damages. Accommodate this business request. Don't deny it. Or I'll consider supporting them in a lawsuit against the city for this punitive treatment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have one more. And it's a phone number calling in, 4436. Hi, welcome. You have a minute and a half. Go ahead and unmute yourself. We have a raised hand on the phone for 4436, last four digits. Go ahead and unmute yourself. Hi, welcome.
Hello.
Hi, welcome. You have a minute and a half.
Okay, so my name's Eloiseum, and I think that this appeal should be denied. The reason being is that I want to use as a source the recent Monterey County grand jury of 24, 25, no, 23, 24. It just came out with their findings. And they, out of about six topics, cannabis was one of them. And cannabis has unpaid taxes, $20 million, lack of, lack of funding for drug abuse programs. There is illicit activities that contribute to the lack of funds for the community needs. It's an ineffective deterrent system placed in the cannabis. And also, they also studied fentanyl. So the, the name of the topic was fentanyl, are used in crisis? And schools have not implemented programs for opioid abuse and other kinds of drug abuse.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll now give the applicant five minutes to respond. Mr. Palmer, Mr. Brazil?
Thank you for hearing us out. I'm Grant Palmer, co-CEO of Cana Cruz. One thing I had not considered is bicycle drivers, and I think that's actually a very good point. And we would be willing to paint a line on the parking lot, you know, to remind people to stop before the bicycle lane and on after. I think that's a wonderful idea. Fortunately, there is some bad information going around. We are not a new dispensary. We're an existing and operating dispensary in Salinas for five years. We have a proven track record. We have not had 18 police interventions at our, at our store. That did not happen. No one at any Cana Cruz location has ever branded a weapon anywhere. That is simply not true. Having an employee press the wrong button on the alarm code and have the alarm go off is not a police intervention. It does not bring the police out there. I feel like that was very misleading, and it's not fair to our business. We behave very well. We follow all the rules. The police have live access monitoring to our video cameras. We keep a record of every sale. Something happens wrong, we hear about it. You know, we don't need to let our imaginations get the best of us. We have a proven track record. We've been operating here for five years, and other 10 in Santa Cruz. There's a bar and restaurant next to us in Santa Cruz. There's actually two of them. Never had a problem. There's a school 1,700 feet away. Not a single problem in a decade. And this, this location is 3,700 feet away from a school. So we are not near a school. We do not sell drugs to schoolkids, nor do we, you know, endorse that. If there was ever a situation, and there never has been, but if there ever was, we keep 90-day video record of every transaction, as well as a multi-year transaction list of every product that's sold in our store, when it was sold, who it was sold to, and a copy of their ID. If there ever was an issue of a high school kid ending up with cannabis from our store, we're happy to cooperate with law enforcement and make sure whoever did that is brought to justice. But we do not do that. Nor have we ever. And the, and the, and we have proof. There has never been an incident, is the proof. We don't need to use our imaginations for that. As far as parking and traffic, we have a traffic study. We've done a traffic study to address the concerns, and the city reviewed it, and they seem to be accepting of it. Same with our parking study. We did three parking studies, I believe, and a couple traffic studies. We definitely want to be good neighbors. We, we are happy to accept input from the neighborhood and, you know, be accommodating to people. We do want to put up a fence between our parking lot and Ellie's, so we have a good relationship with Ellie's. We like Ellie's. Ellie's is a wonderful establishment. We don't, you know, we don't want to have bad feelings between us. We don't want our customers parking in their parking lot. And we have ample parking. I've never been to a dispensary with more than 40 parking spots before. That is a huge amount of parking. And as far as kids getting drugs, you know, they're not getting them from dispensaries. They're getting them from black-market drug dealers who offer them things like fentanyl and amphetamines and stuff. They, they don't come into our store. We don't allow that. You know, 74% of voters in Salinas approved of this, this use, this dispensary use. The reason this is going in a commercial zone is because we are a commercial buil, business. We are a retail operation. The other dispensaries are mixed-use. They have cultivations at their facilities. They have manufacturing centers. We don't have any of that. We are a retail establishment, and we belong in a retail zone. You know, I just like to, you know, we've been looking for a place to move since 2020. It's incredibly difficult. You saw the setback maps for yourself. You understand, I'm sure. The reason there are so many setbacks The reason there are so many setbacks is so you can use your discretion. You know, you can say, maybe this is appropriate, maybe this is not appropriate. That is up to you. I, I would say, look at our track record. Look at, look at our Santa Cruz store that is next to an establishment that says alcohol. There's never been a single incident. We have a homeless encampment that's two blocks from us. Haven't had an incident with them either. We are good neighbors wherever we go, and we intend to stay good neighbors. Yeah, and if you have any other questions about my business, I, I would love to give you facts and not operate off these very scary hypotheticals. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council members, I'll come back for final comment and action. And I will start to my left, Councilmember Sandoval.
Thank you very much.
Oh, and point of clarification, we're closing the hearing. Thank you, sorry. Got to do that official work. Councilmember Sandoval, go ahead.
Thank you. I, you know, I, I read all the emails, several letters. I met with the owners of Cana Cruz. I visited a dispensary for the first time in my life. I brought somebody with me who had a same type of stigma, who did not bother to bring his driver's license, so he could not enter, despite him not looking very young. And so I was really impressed with the security protocols. I think there's, everyone's entitled to their opinions. And trust me, as a father of four, I have a lot of opinions about my kids. I have, now I have to say, I have the three in high school coming up, but I have one in middle school. And although I will not encourage them to use cannabis, I recognize the benefits. And although this is not about that, I just want to share my own opinion on those topics. You know, I had a very good discussion with the staff there. I spent some time there. I sat in the parking lot. I observed the professional nature of the staff. I, you know, I had a different perspective after I left. You know, I also read all the emails and concerns. Some, you know, I get it, everyone's entitled to their opinion. Some of the traffic concerns, I'll just share with, of course, there are traffic concerns for everything. But as we look to develop more economic development, if we ever have a business that is highly successful, and we have recently approved one, and I recognize that there's a difference between the types of businesses, are we going to say, no, we don't want your successful business because you have too many customers? I'm sorry, that's not something that's in my frame of thought. Pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, I get those things. The reality is, and we've said it before, we don't have that much common courtesy for our neighbors, and we don't have respect for pedestrians or fellow drivers. I think that's something we all need to look at within ourselves. And, you know, I appreciate the openness to address any other concerns. This issue came, first, I, I, there's something I want to stress is that I, I believe we need to support all businesses that the city council in the past has made a decision, or the voters have, to allow to, to operate here in the city of Salinas. I am disappointed that this process took two years. I'm not going to assign blame or be able to justify what missteps anybody took, but no business coming to the city of Salinas would have to wait two years. And whether it's staff or whether it's a business owner, I think a lot of it is about communication. So, you know, my request for our city manager, and I'm sure our staff is already taking steps to be more, I don't see Lisa, sorry. Yes, Lisa is taking a lot of steps to make our permit process and our building. And we want to welcome business to the city of Salinas. You know, with that being said, there, a couple of months, there was a discussion brought to the city council where we were to reduce the proximity to some of these sensitive uses from 1,000 to 600 to come into, well, I would say, not in compliance with the state, but to come, to match the state requirements. And at that time, the city council, initially, we had a subcommittee. One of my former colleagues was on that subcommittee. He brought a recommendation to the council to reduce those proximity. But the city council at that time, and was that 2023? I'm 2024 recently, voted not to reduce those limits. And so despite my own personal opinions and the, the amazing work and the staff, and this is a very difficult decision. I see the employees here, and, you know, my comments will, will reflect some direction I'd like to ask the city manager to take. But just because of the, the proximity to sensitive usage that we unanimously approved a couple of months ago, it's not something I can support to make a variation for this. So just for the, the proximity to sensitive usage, for that reason, I cannot support it. But I'd like to request city staff to see how we could support, facilitate, mitigate any of the expenses that are within, without obviously giving any preferential treatment to anybody, support their business, because we do want business to come to the city of Salinas, including theirs. But just for this, the proximity issue, I cannot support approving this.
Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you. I appreciate everyone coming to our city council meeting, sharing your opinions and your perspectives on this matter. This is a really difficult decision. And I have looked at the information that's been presented and to the best of my abilities, because I am a human being at the end of the day, I have tried to take myself out of my personal opinions, my personal views, and anything out of anything related to this decision, and just look at the ordinance we have in place, the policies we have in place, the intent of what it is that we're trying to uphold with the policies we pass. And I have a little bit of a different take on the 1,000-foot setback. My view is a city council approved that, that ordinance, and within that ordinance, it did allow for exceptions to be made. When I look at the discussion to reduce the setbacks from 1,000 to 600, the way I believe that decision, I can speak for myself, is the reason why I did not support that reduction between 1,000 to 600 is because it would apply indiscriminately to all projects. And I do think that that would create more problems than it would solutions for the city. And so the original ordinance did provide for exceptions to be made. The reduction would have eliminated that exception clause and would essentially apply to all businesses to operate within 600 feet. So looking at the exception provisions, I really wanted to take into consideration what is allowed to be factored in as a consideration when you're determining whether to give an exception or not. And as I look at the ordinance, it does state essentially that the findings made to support that exception would have to be within the scope of, "This would not have a negative impact on the health, safety, and welfare of the general public, would not create negative effects on neighboring properties or businesses, and would otherwise be consistent with the purpose and intent of the city's commercial cannabis regulations." When I look at that, what that means in terms of the city's commercial cannabis regulations, there are four sections to that. The first is to promote the development of business in the commercial cannabis industry in a responsible manner while imposing regulations to protect the health, safety, and welfare of residents, neighborhoods, and businesses of Salinas. The second is to accommodate the needs of medically ill persons that require treatment with medicinal cannabis and medicinal cannabis products. The third being to regulate the personal non-medicinal use and consumption of cannabis and cannabis products in any manner consistent with state law. And the fourth being to regulate cannabis activity in the city of Salinas concurrently with the state of California. As I look at the appeal before me at this point in time, I do believe that it is consistent with the purpose and the intent of the city's commercial cannabis regulations. Furthermore, when the selection committee made the decision to deny the appeal, one of the things that were taken into consideration was the memorandum from the police chief that stated this would be a public nuisance. There has to be a substantial evidentiary value to that analysis. And in asking the city attorney for his recommendation, his opinion, he did state that he did not believe that the memorandum met that evidentiary standard as it related to the public nuisance element. So taking the city attorney's comments into consideration, looking at the intent of the commercial cannabis regulations, at this point for me, I would say that, in addition not only to that, I, I also want to point out that when looking at the security policy of Cana Cruz, there are things that stand out to me, which one being that they will employ at least for ununiformed security personnel during business hours, that the store will have bars added to the interior of all windows. In addition, there will be bulletproof security film that will be added, and that Cana Cruz has a zero tolerance policy for loitering. So looking at their security plan, looking at our policies that we have in place, at this point, I do believe that this appeal is consistent with the intent of the ordinance. And at this point in time, taking the city attorney's opinion into consideration, I will support the appeal. And those are all of my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela, final comments?
Thank you. First of all, most, thank you everybody for coming here. This is, this is a big issue. And for me, it's always great to see a lot of folks in, in city council, you know? So for me, I want to start off just by talking about the regulation of cannabis in general. I mean, it is one of those things that pass at the state level, and like anything that passes at the state level, it's up to local municipalities to figure out. That being said, I'm not really that interested in the morality, the ethics, whether cannabis is right or wrong. We are here to talk about, you know, how it applies to the city ordinances. And for me, it's, it's clear, right? That even though the current ordinance does allow for some exceptions, our role today, as mentioned by our city attorney, is to look at this more as a judge. And so that being said, the current ordinances, I feel, just, you know, speak for themselves. I do not want to make an exception at this time. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez, comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, though we heard quite a lot from residents, constituents, business owners, and community members alike tonight, I know I can say with confidence that we've all been receiving correspondence around this for months and months. I've read emails both in support and against, taken many calls, met with residents who had heard about this in my district, met with the owners of Cana Cruz, went to their dispensary, also looked around, monitored the parking lot to see what kind of issues I saw that could arise or would arise. And I don't take this decision in light. I, I think that, you know, when it comes to polarizing discussions like this, there is an assumption that a vote no means this person is staunchly against marijuana and doesn't want it in their neighborhood, and that a vote yes means that we want marijuana all over town, available to every single person who would want it with complete ease of access. And that's just not the case. So I'm really grateful to have heard in even more detail from the business owners today, given their presentation, about their safety plans, how long this two- to three-year process has taken. And I'm appreciative of everyone's time. You know, when I think about this, I too really do my best to remove any personal opinions and/or biases. Speaking at large about the history of cannabis use in the United States, it is very well-known that much of its criminalization has had to do with xenophobic and even racist policies. I bet, here's a historical fun fact for you all that many of you might not know, that in 1619, the colony of Virginia mandated that every single farm would have to have present on their crops hemp, and that it was even used as a currency in Virginia, Maryland, and in Pennsylvania. Now, it's not 1619 anymore. But I simply want to illuminate that when we talk about the usage of marijuana, there's so much socialization and biases that go into what forms our opinion about the substance itself. That being said, we're not here to talk about the morality of the usage. We're here to talk about the location. And so with specifics as to the location, I'm comforted in knowing that Cana Cruz has a very well-crafted and comprehensive safety plan. There will be four security guards on site. As it relates to the issue of both the restaurant Ellie's and the apartment complex, they have said that they will be putting in fencing so that there is mitigation of light pollution and other issues. They have been cooperative throughout this entire year, three-year process. There will be no allowed usage of consumption of cannabis on site. And there will, there's also no allowance of loitering. This is 3,500 feet from its nearest school. And as it relates to traffic concerns, they have stated that they are more than amenable to putting in extra delineations for bicycle lanes, as well as putting in safety bumps and separate lanes to help ease traffic. I also will say that while I am very empathetic to parents and to folks who speak about the youth, I find it a little, to be a little bit of a stretch to put the onus on educating our kids on these business owners and not on the parents and the families themselves. I do believe that Cana Cruz has been a reputable business, not only here, but in other neighboring localities in Watsonville and in Santa Cruz. And in their 10 years of operations next to a sensitive use facility, there hasn't been any issues. And it's for those reasons that I will be supporting their appeal tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Barrera on Zoom. Councilmember Barrera, do you have final comments?
Madam Mayor, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, first of all, I'd like to thank all the high school students that are here present, speaking on behalf of not only the city of Salinas, but their, their friends. You know, we have some serious issues on drug abuse and things that we need to work on. I think as parents, we have a responsibility to sit down with our children and talk to them about the dangers of drugs and how they impact our lives. And listening to these two gentlemen, the Palmers, regarding their story about their father looking for a remedy to give him a quality of life, that to me be commendable. As a retail business, they have been successful here for 10 years. And I don't want to focus on the money. I don't want to focus on the tax revenue. I want to focus on the integrity of their business model. Not only have they been successful, they're willing to work with every resident, with every business that has issues with this business. But for 10 years in business here in Salinas, they haven't had any serious legal issues regarding safety. To respect you, our good police chief, I think we have a great police chief with his due diligence, with him and his department. I am sure that they will be working closely. If the city council approves this business, they will be working closely to make it a safer neighborhood. But on the other hand, they've been successful in having 90 employees, just like we heard from the young mother that has two children, that she's grateful for this business for giving her an opportunity so she could sustain money to be able to help her children and her family. One of the things I appreciate about the Palmers, and I, I've only met with them once, that they are willing to do everything possible, not only to make it a successful business, but be a good friend to the community. For the person that mentioned about how would you like to see security guards as you're driving by, we heard numerous times that the business is in the back of another business, and the security guards will be not even, they will not be in the front of that building as well. So I'm, I'm interested in hearing from the rest of my colleagues, and then I will be making my decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Osorio?
Yeah, thank, again, thank you everybody for, for coming in today and just voicing whether they support or don't support. I think it's really important for us to be able to take those things in consideration and make our votes. For, for me, the thing that, that was so important to me was that while most of our businesses, and, and obviously, it's, it's not a secret, I, I am very supportive of small, local businesses, and, and even using our, our local workforce, right? But, but I will talk about the positive tax revenue that we get in from this business. And being a business that has, been a business that's willing to work with the, the people in the area, the community, the other business owners, I think that that's very commendable, because there's a lot of businesses that aren't, aren't the best neighbors. And, and nonetheless, we don't have any right to tell them what to do in their businesses. But one of the things that I, I really enjoy hearing is it, it almost seems like, well, what can we do to be a better partner? What can we do to be a better neighbor? And that's all I've been hearing from these two business owners. And, and I have no doubt that one of the, one of the requirements for being able to get your permit renewed every single year is making sure that your business is in good standings. And, and I think that that's what makes it easier for me to be able to, to look at what we're looking at, is the parking and the relocation. And for me, if this business is not, is not abide, abiding by the, the rules or the breaking rules, or things start happening there, then we have the decision that in a year, this body will either give them a permit or deny them a permit. So we ultimately have that decision. And that's why my decision will be to support moving forward in the, then the relocation and being, and being able to come back. I would hope that the, the business owners, and I'm, I'm pretty sure I already know what the answer is. But hopefully, maybe if it's not too much to ask, maybe a quarterly, maybe a bi-weekly check-in of just to see how the new location is going? Because ultimately, in a year from now, we are going to be making a decision whether to reissue that permit or not. So I, I have total faith that, that that will be an easy one. And we have a cannabis subcommittee that could be activated for a meeting. So that, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of brief comments on my end. In 2016, I think I'm the only council member on the dial. I know Tony was around. But we had to make policy around cannabis pretty quickly. It was coming down the pipeline as a state initiative, and we had a very short timeline to determine whether or not we wanted to take on additional sales tax. It was a uncertain time at that point. In fact, I specifically remember some of the cannabis permit. People who wanted cannabis permits were like, please tax us, please tax us. Obviously cannabis, like many company, like many industries, has gone through its peaks and valleys. We've had, we've heard from cannabis companies that have struggled with their finances and struggled to pay taxes. I was concerned in November of 2023 when we voted unanimously to keep the cannabis ordinance with the higher restrictions. That was a, that was a sign to me that we may be facing some difficulties with our businesses in the cannabis industry. Councilmember Rocha is absolutely correct, though. It was a sweeping motion to lower those standards. In the context of what we have currently, we're able to make those exceptions, as he noted. noted. I think, you know, as I went through some of the issues, I certainly understand in 2021, when you came to us with this, you knew there were going to be some hiccups, right? You knew you were coming to us with an appeal for the conditional use permit. You knew that you were coming to us with concerns about sensitive uses. That was made very clear to you from day one, and you decided to roll the dice and come forward anyway with those. This is not news to you. I'll just take a moment also to be conscientious of the chief and understanding that you come forward. This kind of reminds me about the fireworks dialogue we had about 10 years ago, where we had the police chief and the fire chief, both of whom were saying, please ban fireworks because we don't have the personnel to be able to respond to the additional calls on the Fourth of July. I recognize that you are representing a department that has to answer to those calls, and I appreciate your position and your opinion on those things. I am encouraged in the context of allowing this business to continue to thrive in our city. I want to just take a moment to also understand and recognize, we've had an incredible amount of dialogue and public comment and letters split down the middle. And these are the decisions on council that sometimes half the population leaves unhappy and half the population leaves happy. There's a yes and a no, and there is no middle. So I just want to take the moment to acknowledge everybody that came to speak, speak their mind. I hope you feel empowered to do that. Reach out to your council members on it. And certainly understand that whatever decision is made today was taken into great consideration with your public comment. Counsel, those are my final comments. Counsel, I'll seek a motion to put on the floor.
I'll be making a motion, Madam Mayor. I'd like to direct staff to prepare a resolution to grant cannabis's appeal so that CUP 2022-048 and CCP 2023-007 to be brought back on June 25th of this year for the following reasons. First and foremost, cannabis has been a reputable business owner in Salinas for the past five years, in the county and in local regions at large for 10 years. They have demonstrated tonight and in the past three years their willingness to cooperate. As Councilmember Osornio mentioned earlier, they will be subject to a yearly renewal for their permits, at which point we will be able to reevaluate and reassess if necessary. They have presented tonight a comprehensive security plan with proactive action plans when it comes to loitering. They will not be allowing for usage on-site. They have stated that they are more than amenable to work with the neighboring businesses and with the residential complex. And in doing so, have said that they will be, they are willing to put up, willing to put up fencing to help mitigate some of these issues. And have also stated that they are more than happy to work to mitigate potential traffic congestion issues by having security also help direct in the parking lot. Will be putting up speed bumps and help to delineate further lanes for pedestrian safety and for bicycle cyclist safety. And I'm looking for a second.
Second.
That was one heck of a motion. Okay. Understanding that she has to establish the findings for her motion.
Mayor?
Motion made, hang on one moment. Motion made by Councilmember Gonzalez, seconded by Councilmember Osornio. Are you looking for clarifying? Go ahead.
I just wanted to also express my appreciation to the police chief for the role you played in this. And just to clarify, I just wanted to get clarification from the city attorney on whether or not that memorandum reached that evidentiary standard, but I didn't mean to offend in any way, and I apologize if it was in any way construed that way, not that that's what was said, but I just wanted to make sure to convey to you that I appreciate the work you did.
Thank you. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
No.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
No.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
You won't regret this. Thank you very much.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, we are going to call this meeting back to order off of our five-minute break. We'll go on to 24-363 wastewater collection public hearing, and we have a report from Chris Callahan, our city attorney, and our city clerk.
So, thank you, Mayor, and council, and members of the public. Thank you for your patience as we worked through the other item to get to the item that some of you have been waiting for. And so I will start this off and then refer it to our city clerk. So recall at your last meeting, you took the first preliminary action on this item, and that was to approve a memorandum of understanding with Monterey One Water and an agreement with the County of Monterey in anticipation of tonight's action. So tonight's action, if you will recall, is for the city council to consider whether or not to put the wastewater collection fees and charges that are charged by Monterey One Water onto the property tax rolls for all of M1W's customers that reside within the city of Salinas. Just to reiterate, this is not a city of Salinas change. This is a change that was initiated by M1W, and now the cities within that jurisdiction have to respond. This is not a new city fee. This is not a new city tax. This is not a new city charge. This is an existing Monterey One Water charge that is just simply being changed from one sort of billing strategy to another. And M1W staff is here to answer any specific questions you may have about that change, counsel, but that's generally what's occurring here. Now, tonight's action is for the council to keep.
The existing Monterey One Water charge?
Delay.
There's two of me.
Wouldn't that be delightful? Okay, we got that handled. Thank you.
So tonight, counsel, you are going to receive protest votes, if there are any, to determine whether or not this can actually move forward. And the criteria under California law is whether or not there is 50% plus one of the customers who are protesting this vote. And if that's the case, then this billing change can't occur. If we are at less than 50% plus one, the billing change can occur. And city clerk, I know that you have received some written protests, and I just want to remind the council before we get to that, it requires a two-thirds vote of this body in order to move this forward. So it's not a simple majority, it's a two-thirds vote, and that's required under California law. And so now I will turn it over to the city clerk, who will conduct the Prop 218 process.
Thank you, city attorney. And in a few moments, we will proceed with opening our public hearing and receive public comment regarding the proposed collection of wastewater collection fees and charges on the property tax rolls by Monterey County. As city attorney Callahan noted, effective July 1st, 2024, Monterey One Water will no longer directly bill its customers for wastewater collection services. Protests have been filed with the city clerk, and if it's below the 50% number total of total property owners or customers within the city of Salinas. As of when we came back from the recess, the total assessed properties, mailers, the mail notices were sent to and customers within the city of Salinas, total 28,383 parcels. Total protests required to not move forward with the collection is 14,192. Protest received is less than the 50% threshold with a total of 329 protests. At this point, council can now consider the approval of a resolution approving the city's 2024-25 annual rate report for wastewater collection and directing collection of the charges detailed in the report on the Monterey County tax rolls. City staff and Monterey One Water staff are available for questions, and following questions from the council, we will open it up for public comment.
All right, I will start to my left for council member questions. Councilmember Sandoval.
Yes, I have received a lot of phone calls and emails from a lot of residents regarding this issue and how it's going to affect their finances and how the change from, you know, biannual to monthly is going to impact them. So my question to Monterey One Water is, what steps are being taken or what resources do they have accessible in order to mitigate some of their concerns?
And we have Monterey One Water staff here to answer your questions.
Are we going to be able to ask them?
I'll go to public comment. You can address the council. So, okay.
Good evening. Rachel Goodoin, Monterey One Water Communication Services Administrator. As was noted, wastewater is a joint responsibility with Salinas doing collection and Monterey One Water doing conveyance and treatment. Happy to answer questions tonight in general or related to the Monterey One Water move, even though tonight is focused, or your public hearing tonight is focused on the city of Salinas's wastewater collection fee and not the Monterey One Water fee for conveyance and treatment. But to the question, so our board conducted about a 10-month process prior to making the decision to shift billing away from our current third-party billing vendor to the Monterey County tax roll. Part of that process, we did hear from the community that there was concern related to spreading payments out right now, over six payments versus the two payments. And before our board made the decision to move forward and discontinue direct billing, we waited for the county to finalize an agreement with this service called Easy Smart Pay. Easy Smart Pay is not affiliated with Monterey One Water. It is a property tax payment service, and the County of Monterey has offered this third-party private vendor to offer monthly payment options for the payment of property taxes. So it will actually create greater flexibility in payment now for our customers who had been requesting a monthly payment option. It does require to pay the entire property tax bill monthly, but it does kind of create new options, payment options.
So are residents able to reach out to Monterey One Water to help them set up, or is that something they have to reach out to the county?
Yeah, so I think the county would be the best person to reach out to, and then I think they'll direct to Easy Smart Pay, their vendor.
Okay, and will this change lead to any increases in their bill?
So this is simply a billing change. So any rate changes must be approved via voter vote, resident and business vote, via the Prop 218 process. Currently, Monterey One Water does have a five-year rate schedule already approved, so our rate for conveyance and treatment will go up this July 1st, but that is not part of this billing change. That was pre-approved in 2021 with a five-year rate plan. The city is not changing their fee this fiscal year, so it is just a billing vendor change.
Great, you used to speak to this, the billing was a five-year period. So is that correct?
Monterey One Water's rate schedule is a five-year rate schedule that went into effect in 2021, 2022 fiscal year, and that is for the conveyance and treatment fee. So for Monterey One Water to move, to take the city of Salinas's wastewater, to move it to our treatment plant, where we treat it and safely reintroduce it into the environment, your fee is for the collection. So taking wastewater, used water from homes and businesses and moving it into the regional conveyance system. Once it's in the system, that's when our rate starts and your rate stops.
Correct. And when will the next potential rate increase be brought to the voters or to the city council?
For the Monterey One Water rate. The Monterey One Water rate, the end of that five-year cycle, is at the end of, is 26. So the 26, 27 fiscal year is when our current rate schedule is set to expire. The board can decide at any point to reopen the Prop 218 process and relook at rates, but the current schedule is in place through 2026.
And one of the emails I received spoke to, now that this is going to be on the tax bill, that how will increases, how will residents be notified of potential increases? Or is that something that, you know, they're just not going to have a say or be able to participate in?
Absolutely not. So it does not change how we set rates or how, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the city, but how we set rates. We are governed through Proposition 218 and how we all as public entities set our rates, and that does include a voting and protest process with our customer base. Moving forward, we do require to put your fee on the tax roll a two-thirds vote, similar to tonight's resolution process. And I can look to the city attorney if he wants to add anything on your process, but it doesn't change the process. We still have to notice and communicate and justify that change publicly and give an option for protest.
And council member, our process would be the same with respect to the city's fee. We have to go through that Prop 218 process. There's no way around it. It requires public notification well in advance of any hearing, and it allows for a majority protest if, before the city increases those rates. So there will be public notice. It's required.
Yeah, and I just want to say, while I recognize that the issue at hand is a very specific one, some of the questions are questions that I've received from my constituents or, you know, residents of Salinas, even in the county, we're receiving questions. And my last one is, there has been some concerns about this change and people's ability to pay, not just because of the billing change, but, you know, with the potential increases. So what does, what services or what benefits for people who may be having a difficult time paying their water recycling fee, is there any programs to help offset some of the costs for disadvantaged communities or people with low or fixed incomes?
Yes, and so, and just to clarify, wastewater is the topic tonight. We do do water recycling, but revenues for water recycling are collected through the sale of water, not through wastewater rates. And so Monterey One Water, for its portion of the sewer service fee, so again, sewer service, joint responsibility, city has a collection fee, Monterey One Water has a conveyance and treatment fee. For our piece of sewer service, we do offer a low-income residential assistance program. The enrollment period for property owners actually just concluded, and we're getting ready to share next week with our board. But we, it really exceeded expectations, and we were able to, our board was able to vote to actually increase the budget. So we were able to help more property owners than we anticipated. So our total budget is $300,000, and we've allocated about $180,000. So that program is currently closed, but I encourage any property owner who is interested in applying for it to apply again next year. The enrollment period is essentially February through April, May of each year. It's a first-come, first-served program because it does have limited funding. There are income requirements and verification requirements to that program, but I encourage anybody to visit our website or call our customer service line for more information for future programs.
Thank you. My last question is for our city manager. If the city council was to decide not to move forward with this billing change, what kind of impacts or resources would we need in order to be able to take that on?
To the mayor, thank you, council member. We would have to stand up our own utility function and our own billing function. Currently, we don't have that set up. We don't have personnel. We have to work with our finance director and the systems, hiring, work with our HR department to hire. Probably in the short term, we would look to some sort of contract or some sort of third party to maybe help us out while we stood something up. So that was the direction we were given, if you chose not to move forward with this. I would need a little time to bring it back to you to see what the next steps would be. But suffice to say, right now, we're not set up to bill, we're not set up to collect into that process. Not that cities don't do it, you can stand it up, but we just need a little time to stand it up.
Thank you. That concludes my questions.
Councilmember Rocha, questions?
Thank you. This has been something that was initiated for some time, I believe started last year. So for those that are just for the first time participating in this process, can you state here for everyone, what initiated this process? Why did Monterey One Water choose to move forward with no longer billing?
Yeah, so let's see here, we're in 24, 23, 22. Back in 22, we started this process. Our billing system is very outdated. We were hearing from customers that they wanted on-demand online account access. wanted on-demand, online account access, paperless billing, things our current vendor does not offer. That feedback was coming in while at the same time, we started having issues with our third-party billing vendor, printing errors, receipt errors. So we started looking for a new system. In the process of looking for a new system, we reached out to fellow wastewater agencies throughout California. We participate in a number of industry associations and have a number of contacts. In that process, we learned that many public wastewater utilities choose to bill via the property tax because it is a mandated service. And typically, the rate structure is based on the type of activity happening at the parcel, not the amount of usage at the parcel. So it is a rate that can be projected out annually. In addition, it is a mandated service that cannot be turned off for any reason due to health and safety reasons. Because of that, even non-payment, we cannot turn off service. So it's different than perhaps power or water in the community. In addition, we're a public entity with a public process, including this protest process and public hearing tonight. For those reasons, Monterey One Water looked into it more and decided that as we scoped out new billing avenues, that the cost savings and the efficiencies and the greater billing accuracy that could be achieved by moving to the property tax role were beneficial to the agency and to customers as they requested more options that were only going to increase costs if we pursued a more robust billing system. In this community, people are used to billing systems of other utilities, and the other utilities in our area are oftentimes private and have greater buying capacity than we do as a local public entity. And so their resources and their ability to have really robust on-demand utility billing systems is greater.
To the point of non-payment, there was a concern raised to me by a constituent of mine, a constituent of mine that shared with me that in the current billing system, if you do not pay, you know, you're issued a fine, I believe, and if you're still not paying because they can't shut off this service, a lien is put on your home. When it moves over to the property tax role, it's my understanding that your balance that you owe is going to continue to increase depending on how long it takes you to pay, and you have to pay that balance in full or in at least the amount that is allowed to be broken down through the easy pay process. Is that correct?
So if I'm following, the concern is that you're, if you don't pay your property tax bill on time, they too have penalties? Is that the question?
And it's my assumption you can't get on a payment plan. It's your, that penalty is on top of your payment, and you have to pay that balance in full.
You know, I really can't speak to the county's process for property taxes and how they structure their penalties for non-payment, but I can speak to the lien process at Monterey One Water. So yes, you are correct in that currently, if your bill is delinquent at the end of a calendar year, Monterey One Water will start the noticing process on any delinquent account. And so we work from basically February through June through the required noticing. So similar, it has actually additional requirements, but similar to the requirements we had to do for this public hearing tonight and the public hearing at Monterey One Water next Monday for our, moving our fee to the property tax bill. So similar process, it takes multiple notices, a notice in the paper, and then we'll host a public hearing next Monday to place those liens on the property tax roll. So it gives customers about, actually, seven months because we don't upload our file to the county until July to resolve their delinquent bills. So that process will go away for any parcel that goes on to the property tax roll. They'll still be, in full disclosure, they'll still be potentially some liens in that once a, once we upload the list to the county as of August 1st, no other parcels for that fiscal year can be billed on the property tax roll because property taxes are being, bills are being printed and sent out. So a new bill, for example, we will need to direct bill in that first year, and then they will get on the property tax roll. They will automatically be placed on the property tax roll in their second year. But so if that new bill were not to pay, and we followed the appropriate noticing, potentially, we'd have to lien that property. But it would be only for the small amount of parcels getting a direct bill from us.
Thank you. That was my only question from Monterey One Water. My question is to the city manager. So if this council were to not approve what is before us today, that means we would have to take on the billing ourselves. But as I understand, if we were to vote no, that doesn't stop this change from happening.
That, to the mayor, I think that is correct. I think the city attorney can help me out there, but if we vote no, this change will happen. We would just need to set up our own process to, I mean, other cities do it. It's not that it can't be done. We're just not equipped at this point to do it. We don't know the cost. We don't know what the impact would be on the rate and all of that, so.
Because this would be, this was a decision by the Monterey One Water board.
That's correct. That is.
And our decision today is whether or not to move forward with the other cities and have the county be our billing agency.
That's correct.
Okay. Those are all of my questions. I'll have more for comments.
Councilmember Valenzuela, questions?
Yes, just a few questions for the city manager. So I think we already stated that the overall impact to the consumer is not going to increase because they're just going to move the amount to a different pay system. However, given that we do not have the systems in place for the city of Salinas to take on this project, do you feel that that will be a significant cost to our city?
Again, to the mayor, it would be a cost significant. We have to look at sort of what the cost would be in the recovery and the offset to that. So I'm not, we're not prepared to, I'm not ducking the question. I'm not prepared to address it today. I would need a little time to work with finance, to reach out to others, actually talk to Monterey One Water because they have a system already in place to bring some more information to you. It's doable. It will be a cost.
Gotcha. And the cost, whether it's, you know, large cost or small cost, is that a cost that we have already budgeted?
No.
Gotcha. Okay. No questions?
Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez, questions?
I just had questions about easy pay and the low-income relief program that have both been answered. Thank you.
Okay. We'll go to councilmember Barrera. Councilmember Barrera, do you have any questions on this item?
Yes, to the city manager, please. Mr. Mendez, whether we have a process in place or not, you know, we are a service provider for the people that we serve in the city of Salinas. What would be the benefits, if any, or implications? You know, this sounds kind of scary because I can see where a lot of people have emailed us, you know, where their property taxes may go up, they will get penalized. There's a lot of things that they're nervous about. So how, how can we disseminate information to be able to let them know how this process will really assist them or even hurt them if they're late on their payments?
So again, to the mayor, I think I would work with Monterey One Water to partner bringing out, sending out the information, maybe setting up some meetings to answer more specific questions. I actually did reach out to Monterey One Water about a potential more larger meeting to, whether it's a town hall, community meeting. So we would set, we would do our best to get the information out. We would also work through the city's, our own public process to get information out through our own teams and sort of partner with Monterey One Water. So I think that's the best answer at this point, is we would partner with Monterey One Water to get as much information out there to the community as possible and answer the questions. I don't know, Rachel would like to add to that.
Yeah, thank you. So Mr. Mendez, would it be, as respectful as I want to be, can we start looking, even though we're going to have to do this, are you, are you going to be looking at how, what the benefits will be, the cost, if we were to do the billing? I mean, and again, if it's possible to be able to do that. Again, I'm always, I think my colleagues and I were, and yourself, we're looking at how to best save our residents' money because, you know, a lot of people are hurting, not only in Salinas but throughout. And rates are going up. Everything's going up, but if we can provide the best possible service for them, I think that's what we're looking for. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Sornio, questions?
Yes. And I just want to apologize now because even, even for me, there seems to be a little bit of confusion. Some of the emails that I've gotten have been around, well, the city of Salinas is making my mortgage payment go up. So when I obviously hear comments like that, it's very concerning because I know that this fee will be collected by the Monterey County, the Monterey County, it will be on that property, that property tax bill. But my confusion lies in the fact that you're saying that there's something called an easy pay system and that that would be able to give folks the ability to pay this bill monthly.
It's a system for property taxes. So it is a service, third-party, private, authorized service by the county for monthly payments of property tax bill, the property tax bill in its entirety. The property tax bill at the top has a tax, and on the bottom, it has property-related fees, and that's where the itemized wastewater sewer fees would occur. So a line item for the city of Salinas is sewer service charge for collection, and a line item for Monterey One Water sewer service charge for wastewater collect, conveyance and treatment. And so Easy Smart Pay is a service for the property tax bill in its entirety in terms of people making the comment about mortgages. So for those who pay their mortgage through an impound account, that typically means that in addition to your payment related to your mortgage or the purchase of your home, you might also have pay to your mortgage provider for your insurance and for your property taxes. So for those customers, there is no delta in what you're paying, right? The rates are already set for next year. This process doesn't change that. But instead of it being a bimonthly bill, it will become a monthly bill because it's going to be like roped into their property-related costs related to the mortgage. So the mortgage, the insurance, the property taxes. So for those people, that, that is true. It will become part of their mortgage, but their other bills, they will no longer receive a wastewater bill, and it will become monthly as part of that payment, no longer bimonthly. For service provided on or after July 1st of this year 2024, no more direct bills will be sent from Monterey One Water.
So what you're saying is typically the Monterey County collects your taxes every six months, or there's a bill, you get two bills, the first bill in six months, and then you get the other one. So are you saying that there would be an option to pay it monthly if you were to basically pay that? So you would initiate, like, and if I'm understanding this correctly, you would have to stop your, your monthly mortgage payment from collecting the taxes so that you can pay them monthly through this easy pay option?
You're not sure that everybody has that option. If you have an impound account, oftentimes, it's because it's required. To get your loan, you had to have, set up an impound account where both your mortgage comes out, your insurance gets paid through this, and your property taxes get paid through that. So they, they wouldn't need to pivot to a monthly payment because they're already paying their full property tax bill on a monthly basis through their mortgage impound account. Easy Smart Pay is actually, they call it a non-mortgage impound account. So it would be for somebody who does not have an impound account and is looking to pay their property, not currently paying property taxes monthly because they don't have an impound account, but wanting to. That's what that program would be suited for.
So let me. If I, if I may interject, just to keep a simple statement, because I think we're getting really down, and I want to be careful, you know, to allow you to ask all of your questions. But right now, you pay your property taxes twice a year, and certainly, I'm not talking about impound accounts. But the county has just said, if you want to switch from paying your property taxes twice a year, you can now pay them monthly through this easy pay system. It's like an online easy pay opportunity. Obviously, if you have an impound account through your bank, that would change the dynamics. You're still going to be paying, but your mortgage will go up because that fee will be included in your property taxes, which is paid.
Yeah. And that's what I was getting at, is that it feels like currently, and I'll give the example of the way mine is set up, is that I do have an impound account. So every single month, it's collected, and then it goes out to taxes and insurance. I would initially, if I wanted to pay this monthly, I would have to stop that impound account.
No, it's automatically going to get set up. So if you have an impound account, these fees are now on the property tax bill, and so you will continue to pay your property tax bill monthly through your impound account, and this is just part of it now.
Okay.
Yeah, so nothing you have to do related to the impound account. Some people are choosing to alert their lenders early about the change because they want to increase how much they're paying now. So people are processing it a little bit differently, but no, there's, it's an automatic change. Once it's on the property tax roll, it's part of your impound account. There's nothing you need to do.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, no, that was perfect. I just really wanted to make sure that I got it right. So with, with the, with the change, it, I mean, it's, it sounds like, obviously, we don't have the majority of people that needed to show up to protest this. And it seems like even if this body voted no today, this is something that will still be happening. I guess what I'm, now what I'm trying to think about is how can we, and I'm thankful that the city manager is willing to collaborate with, with you guys so that we can make sure that we get this information out to the residents of Salinas. So I appreciate that. My question is, is there anything as far as like a grace period of when this will happen? Can you talk to me a little bit about when it would go into effect and then when that first payment would come out from the residents?
Yeah, so we, effective July, for service provided, July 1st and after, Monterey One Water will cease direct billing. So for residents in Salinas, through June 30th is this month, that means they'll receive their last bill. It's typically going to come out about the first week of July. If they're on automatic payment, it comes out, I believe, July 15th. Once that payment is made, they will no longer receive a bill from Monterey One Water. The Monterey One Water bill currently itemizes both your fee and our fee. We collect it, then remit it to the city. So that will stop effective July 1st. The property tax bill typically gets mailed out in about September or October. So in some ways, there's a natural grace period built into that schedule where people have time to save and prepare for that first bill. During that time, we will be doing an extensive outreach campaign. We have an ad hoc committee, and your board representative, councilmember Rocha, is on that ad hoc committee. So we are doing, it's a multimedia, multi-language outreach campaign where we will be direct mailing all property owners. We're also open to working with members if additional resources, outlets to sharing information are needed, like the town hall, et cetera. So we're open, and we will be communicating. We're not going to stop communicating if this passes next week for Monterey One Water. Because this is, sorry, also just to clarify, this is an annual process. So we are now billing on the tax roll. Our board, we are no longer doing direct billing. But every year, we have to hold this public hearing, and every year, the public gets an opportunity to vote and protest us placing their fee on the property tax roll. That's the requirements through the Health and Safety Code that govern how we as public agencies can place fees on the property tax roll. So we'll be, we'll be doing this annually, this protest process.
So my, my last question will be, how many other cities and the counties are current, have currently already or will be switching?
So Monterey One Water services the northern part of the county. It's essentially Moss Landing to Pacific Grove and inland here to Salinas. Monterey One Water's board will host its public hearing on Monday to move its fee for 24, 25, or to place its fee for 24, 25 on the tax roll. The city of Salinas, the city of Pacific Grove, the city of Monterey, and then the cities of Seaside, Sand City, and Delray Oaks, they actually are a district for wastewater collection. They're the Seaside County Sanitation District, and they service those three municipalities. All of those entities, in addition to Moss Landing, are considering placing their fee on the tax roll. Moss Landing took their item tonight as well, and it, it passed. So so far, they're the first ones to be officially moving to the tax roll with the required resolutions in place.
Thank you. No other questions? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So, right now, the $400,000 reduction in costs by moving it over, savings, I should say, by moving it over to the county tax rolls, so that frees up $400,000 in your budget. Is there a direct savings to residents from that?
Yes, because that $400,000 is going to go straight into capital improvement that would be paid for out of rates, as is. The 10-year capital-
Hang on, if I may, if I may, I'm going to ask for a respectful meeting. I'm trying to allow everyone to have their ability to be heard, and no clapping, no jeering, no laughing, please, let's continue. Thank you.
So it will be an indirect pass-through, yes?
Okay, thank you. And so the $400,000 in billing savings, my question for you is, city of Salinas is about 56%, I think, of the customer base of Monterey One Water? Is that right? Out of the, okay. So would it be accurate to identify that 56% of that $400,000 savings is coming from the city of Salinas, approximately $225,000?
No, because those aren't fees you're incurring. Their fees were incurring through our cost of service for billing.
Okay, so explain that to me.
So the savings come from two items. Number one, from the fee we pay our third-party billing vendor, and then the printing and postage costs related to billing almost 60,000 parcels, which would include, you know, the city of Salinas on odd months and the peninsula on even months.
But your revenue is generated from ratepayers?
For wastewater treatment and conveyance and treatment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, just to be clear then, and so that I understand, the billing of M1W every other month that gets mailed to the home now gets put on the tax roll. So if you get your annual tax bill, it'll have two payments, and it'll be approximately $450 to $500 more per year because I'm no longer getting the M1W bill, and it's being put on the tax bill. Okay. And then for impound accounts, what that means is your mortgage goes up every month because it's spread out over the payments of 12 months for what you pay the bank.
And your wastewater bill stops.
Just needed clarification on that, all right. Okay, I have no further questions. I'll reserve the rest for comment. We'll go out and open the public hearing. So if you have questions, or, excuse me, if you have comments, I ask that you direct it directly to the council. We won't do Q and A with the public, but hopefully, we can get your questions answered through final council comments. Oh, and I have also been aware that translation devices can be found in the back. City Clerk, if you could please let people know that as well, there's a lapse in translation. Excellent, thank you. All right, so we will go ahead and open public comment on this item. I'm giving everyone a minute and a half tonight, so welcome.
Hello.
Thank you.
My name's Rosalyn. And I'd like to know, when they counted the letters, did you also count the emails? Because the emails are written protests in this. Also, I want to make sure that, see, Monterey One now is making you guys collect the fees, making you guys pay the collection fees. And I have to tell you that there are a lot of collection agencies, they're saying the one they're using isn't very good, but there are others that do a lot better job. And most people have automatic payment. So they're now putting their collection fee on you. So they're saving $400,000, but now our city is having to pay to collect those fees because when, they're going to have to collect them through the tax roll. I protest, I protest it being on my tax payment. My taxes are already high enough, and it puts a huge chunk of more money on my tax payment that I pay every two, twice a year. So I protest.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, Mayor Craig, council members and staff. My name is Sabrina Fierro, and I'm part of District 5. I know that our council member did attend our picnic last year, and it was unanimous vote against putting this on our property taxes because they are so high, as the lady said before me. I am upset, along with a lot of other people, for Monterey Water One taking this approach and putting this on our property taxes. They're high. What is to stop other utilities from taking the same approach and passing this? Where is our voice? Was there a ballot, special ballot measure put out for us to voice our opinion? No. Councilmember Orson, Orson, sorry for the mispronunciation, stated in the previous session that we had on the agenda, it's important, I'm not quoting you directly, sir, it's important to hear opinions from both sides to have council members make decisions. Where was our voice heard on the Monterey One Water property tax? I feel cheated, and I did not know that this had passed and had been approved. We're very upset here in Salinas. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Yeah, I'd like to start off by talking just a minute about the impound accounts. So we don't have a problem paying our Monterey One bill, but when it goes into our impound account, that we don't have a choice because we're on a VA loan, they want a cushion in there. So this extra $50, $75, $100 a month from Monterey One is going to require a cushion that's going to make our bill go up almost $200 a month into our mortgage. And we can barely afford to pay what we're paying now. You know, we're on fixed incomes, we work hard, we've worked hard all our lives, and to lose our house because Monterey One doesn't want to pay to have their own billing department? That's just not right. It's just not right, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi. I don't live in the city of Salinas, but I do pay the city of Salinas for sewer services. I live in the Baranda, so I pay the Baranda for sewer services, the city of Salinas for sewer services, and Monterey One. If they do this, and I live on a fixed income, and I did, I worked my life, I'm living on a fixed income, and I pay my taxes on time, if they do this, my taxes are going to go up $871.44 every year. It's going to get added on. So when I get the tax bill, my tax bill, instead of being $3,000-something for the year, is going to be over $4,000. It's going to be a hardship on me. If I don't pay it, I'll get a lien on my house. I can't afford to get a lien on my house. If they put a lien on my house, I'm going to have interest to pay. And the same is true for every other elder here that's worked hard all their life to finally buy a house, to finally be able to afford to live in a house that they own or that they're paying on, and then to be threatened because somebody doesn't want to pay postage is ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Again, my name is Daniel McCall, and I understand a lot of this, and I've sent in my protest, but my protest was not sent to Salinas. Water One sent out additional flyers to the residents of Salinas, and they said, if you had a protest, go to wwwwaterone, or montereyonewater.org to put your protest online. So I did that. So you don't have me in your accounting here. Their ability, Monterey's holding their meeting on the 25th. Anyway, each of the cities seems to be having their own meetings. To go on from that, when it comes up to the Proposition 218, Marina just got done having a vote last night, only 0.07% of the signatures needed to deny the increase in Water One even protested. We've had 22 days to put a protest in for this. That's inadequate, that's not reasonable for your population. I understand that we're not going to get this because we had until tonight to put ours in, and if you didn't get the votes, Water One was going to enact it July 1st, that's it, bottom line. Water One billing does not include city charges for conveyance, and she said this numerous times. Water One will charge their part, not the city's part. How do we get billed for that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Part of my frustration was receiving this flyer saying if I protest this change, that I would write in, and which I did, but I didn't know really what I was protesting because there's nothing here for me to understand. And so part of what I did is I just speculated. The Herald had a page and a half of the liens that are outstanding, some going as high as $11,000, you know, which puts quite a burden on Monterey One, but that's not my problem. Being a landlord, I don't want to have to chase this change of prices that I'm going to have to put on my tenants, you know, and to keep up with that. So that's also very frustrating because it's all going to be put on the property tax persons. And if you don't own a home, you aren't going to get property taxes, right? So there's all those individuals that are going to have to be dealt with. And then I was just asked, this all needs to be, we need to vote on this so that we can all make a decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Buenas noches a todos.
Por favor, espera un momento para traducir. Gracias.
Buenas noches a todos. Ustedes que nos representan a nosotros, los que vivimos en este condado de Monterrey o de Salinas, porque ahora la situación que está ocurriendo con el drenaje o las aguas negras nos presenta un problema porque pagarnos, yo pagaba $69, lo subieron a $130. Y es al ponerlo en los impuestos para nosotros es un problema más grande porque la compañía que nos cobra el cobro de la casa y los impuestos, ellos aplican el impuesto que ellos cobran en el dinero que prestan. Y así nos causan más problemas porque en realidad nos están quitando el derecho de cómo pagar nuestras utilidades. Creo que los dueños de esa compañía no tienen el valor de dar la cara y presentar el porqué o la razón. Si no quieren pagar, que se quiten del lugar y le dejen a otro trabajar para que pueda dar el servicio a la comunidad como debe de ser. Y si ustedes que nos representan y tienen el conocimiento de la ley, no toman a contabilidad a sus ciudadanos que tienen aquí, no sé quién más va a poner las manos por nosotros porque nos están quitando el derecho de todo. Les agradezco que ustedes pongan un poco de su tiempo para poder ayudarnos y nosotros poder entender en qué forma vamos a poder sobrevivir. Muchas gracias.
Gracias, thank you.
Good afternoon to everyone, to all of you that represent us here in the county of Monterey. What is happening with our sewer water, it is a big problem. Before, I used to pay $69, now I pay $130. And putting this cost into our taxes makes it worse because then the people that we have to pay, they increase this, and they increase the interest of people that we have to pay the loan to. So that is something that really should not happen. It is really hard, and if they want to do their job, they should do it. And if they don't want to do it, then move aside and let other people do the job that they want to do. We're here to help, to ask you to please help us, and thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, the translation devices ran out of battery. That's why nobody is hearing interpretation through the headsets.
Good evening, everybody. City Council, Mayor Craig, I'm Mary Ann Warden. Now, mine comes off automatically in my checking account. What's going to happen there? Am I going to have to go back to the bank, go back to those people? And so it's not putting on my taxpayers. Before, when this happened, when I was charged for my son's, which we had the same name, in my account, it took me forever, like months, to get my money back and get his in his right account. So it's depending, you know where. Anyway, there also, how many of you realize, this water does not come back to our city to water our lawn. They keep it. So we're paying for something, actually selling them or giving them the water and being charged for it. Think about it. That happened a few years back.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. This is very confusing. Even some of you were confused, I was watching the body language. And it's not, we're supposed to live in a democracy. Right now, I don't feel like I live in a democracy. And it's not sound, logical practice to mix paying for wastewater conveyance, even though it's, the city has to do that, and also the treatment fees, with paying for property taxes. Those are two very different matters. As a senior citizen on a fixed income, it is already a fiscal challenge for me to pay property taxes twice a year. This could and will most likely cause some property owners to lose their property in foreclosure proceedings because they cannot pay such high increments. My fear is that this could happen to me. I believe that also the time to protest, we were not given enough time. I feel not only cheated, but I feel that my rights are being denied. I would ask you to give the community more time and to give yourself more time to look into this matter. Makes you the bad guys to be collecting these monies. Come on, get with it.
Hi, welcome.
Hi. My name is John Colato, and I'm both a business owner and a property owner, a residential. First of all, I don't know when Monterey One got the authority to do the billing separately. Was that voted on? In other words, she's saying it's going to be effective July 1st? We didn't vote on it. I didn't vote on it, I know that, and I pay attention to those things. Secondly, the amount of money, okay, currently, we pay, let's just say $100, it's more. Every two months, pay $100, that's $600 a year. So every, if you pay your property taxes twice a year, that's $300 increase every six months. Okay, that's what it's costing, okay? In addition to that, I believe that they've approved a 46% increase, so that's going to go up even more. So you can raise that another 150 bucks or more, well, $300 more a year if you mount it up to 50%. Now, the other thing is, why don't we vote on this? You know, you said you have to have a two-thirds majority? Well, you represent us, the people, and we don't want it. We definitely don't want it, and it's not a good thing. We definitely don't want it, and it's not a good thing.
Thank you.
And it's detrimental to people losing their homes.
Thank you, I appreciate your comment. Thank you. Hi, welcome.
I just want to ask Monterey Water One, why in property taxes? Why? I mean, normally, we pay every three months, two months. And it's doable. We can afford that. But like people are saying, $100 or more at the end of, you know, when you pay your property taxes? There's other places or other companies that can bill. What, why the property taxes? I really want to know. Is it because, like you were saying, some people don't pay? And this way, they're going to have to pay with property taxes? That's not right. So I hope that's not the reason. Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Good welcome. City Council members, Mayor, thank you for giving me a few minutes to talk to you. My name's Gary Gibbene. I've been retired now for two years, but for 25 years prior to that, I was the chief deputy auditor controller for the county of Monterey. And I actually did the property taxes, including 218 votes and stuff, for the last 25 years. I can tell you, they're very complicated. Property taxes in Monterey County are done by three elected officials. Your treasurer actually collects the money and decides, like easy pay? That's a question for them. The assessor determines the value on your tax bill, but it's the auditor controller that actually does your tax bill. I just got to tell you, utilities are not tax bills. We can do a good job with tax bills. We cannot do a good job with utility bills. Every time we've tried 218 and done utilities, it's been a mess. That's what I'll tell you. We're not good at it. We can't collect it. We do it on a very, we do, most of our property taxes done nine months to a year ahead of time. We're not doing it at the end. If you guys want to hear about it, I would love to talk to you guys as individuals or have somebody from the county and the auditor controller come talk to you about doing it. I would highly recommend keeping it as utility billing for the utilities and property tax for the property tax. You shouldn't mix them up. People can lose their house. They can have all kinds of problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment? Hi, welcome.
Mi nombre es María Manzano.
Uno momento. Okay. Gracias.
Mire, mi nombre es María Manzano y yo protesto por este cambio que quieren hacer sobre el drenaje. Porque pues está muy difícil lo que estamos viviendo y también para que ya nos junten, nos bilis así como lo quieren hacer, pues yo pienso que no está bien. Porque nos vieran de hacer favor, darnos la oportunidad, que sigamos pagando como pagamos y pues que hagamos las cosas también bien nosotros. Porque todo el mundo estamos pasando mal tiempo. Y ojalá que algo que ustedes puedan hacer por nosotros lo hagan y nosotros también podamos pagarles a tiempo. Y gracias porque nos representan a todos. Es normal los que les quiere decir. Muchas gracias.
Good afternoon. My name is María Manzano. And I want to protest about the change, about the drainage. It's hard. It's hard when you join the bills the way you want to do it right now. It is something that is going to affect us. It's not good for us. I hope that we can keep things as they did because we're all going through difficult times. And we hope that you can help us with this. Thank you for representing us. And thank you for helping us with this because this allows us to pay our bills on time. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, welcome.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Verónica Vargas. Soy residente de aquí, de Salinas. Solo quiero decirles que igual como ustedes cuando andan con su campaña esperanzados, con la esperanza de que los ciudadanos y los residentes voten por ustedes y les hagan ganar, igual con la misma esperanza estamos nosotros esta noche aquí con la esperanza de que nos puedan ustedes ayudar a nosotros. Es la misma esperanza que tenemos, como ustedes la tienen cuando andan en su campaña. Igual, por favor, ayúdenos, o sea, que no junten este bill con el de taxes. Yo no estoy de acuerdo. Estoy aquí para protestar. Gracias.
Good afternoon. My name is Verónica Vargas. And I'm a resident of Salinas. And I'm here to express that, for example, when you're doing your campaigns and you have the hope that the citizens and the residents vote for you and that you can win, this is our way of saying, we also have hope. We're here tonight to ask you to please help us. We want, as you guys had the hope, now we have the hope that things will not change. And if you can please help us so these bills and taxes would not be joined. Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, I'm David Masonev. Thank you for your comments. I mean, that's from the horse's mouth, essentially, somebody who really knows what's going on. Have you ever tried to do, have you ever had somebody say, hey, you need to buy this, it'll work really good for you? And you buy it, and it doesn't do what it's supposed to do? I have, usually with software. I kind of think that's where we're at here. I understand the purpose of wanting to cut costs. I understand that. But it does, everybody's been saying, property tax, utilities, they're two different things. So it's hard for me to sit here and say, yeah, it's okay. I get it. I can afford it. I can pay it. But some people can't. Just like the city, people live on a budget. If we start throwing monkey wrenches into the, into things, we're not going to be able to have a city that can follow a budget. Not this, not the city, but the city, the people. They have costs. They get used to paying it. They pay it a certain way. They expect it. And now we're going to put it on a property tax bill that is essentially invisible until it's due. That makes it very hard. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Craig and City Council.
I was going to ask you to do that. So thank you. Chivalry is not dead. Go ahead.
Obviously, I'm opposed to this, or I probably wouldn't be here. I'm a little confused on a couple of the numbers. I did some quick math in my head. And I beg your pardon if I wasn't correct. But what I heard was they're going to save $400,000. I know this is a little bit off topic, but they're going to save $400,000 and not necessarily pass it on to us. You asked that great question. But did I also hear that it's planning to go up 46%? If that is what we actually heard, that's $1 million revenue for them. That's 800 and some thousand dollars extra if you take the 28, the parcel numbers times the approximate 46%. They're gaining almost $1 million plus the $400,000. Maybe we need to look at a different company. Or maybe the city needs to take over the billing. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome. Uno momento. Espera un momento. Gracias.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Rufina García. Y yo estoy aquí presente en esta reunión hoy porque no estoy de acuerdo con lo que quieren hacer con nosotros, que ya todos casi somos de la tercera edad. Porque todo el tiempo, siempre, siempre, a los de la tercera edad se le ha de reducir algo como una ayuda para esa edad. Porque ya nosotros ya trabajamos o estamos todavía trabajando para la ciudad, para pagar taxis, para aportar. Y siempre somos los, cuando ya nos servimos para seguir trabajando, que ya vamos a vivir de una pensión, somos los más afectados. Los que ya nos hacen como para atrás, como que ya no nos miran. Pero a un joven, si pide casa gratis, ahí está. Si pide stampilla, ahí está. Pide drogas, que no lo sabemos y de veras lo necesitan, ahí está. Les hacen las cosas fáciles. Y nosotros de la tercera edad cada vez nos llevan para abajo, para abajo. ¿Qué vamos a hacer? ¿Les pagamos al gobierno los taxis o comemos? Ustedes como hispanos, nos da gusto que estén allí. Pero también ayúdenos. Gracias.
Good afternoon. My name is Rufina García. And I'm here today because I don't agree with the changes. We mostly, most of us are senior citizens. And it's always, always the senior citizens that are affected the most. We work. We work for the city. We pay our taxes. And now that we're ready to retire and we can't work, then we're living with our pensions, then is when we're most affected. And we feel like you're not seeing us, like you're not really paying attention to us. If we were young, yes, then we would get more attention. If you want a free house, free housing, when you're young, they give it to you. If you want stamps, food stamps, when you're young, you get it. You even get drugs. And I don't even know if you need it or not. So it's hard for us that we're senior citizens. We're always the one that are getting, you know, we're not getting what we need. And they're increasing our taxes. So we have to get to a point where we have to decide, are we going to eat or are we going to pay our taxes? And I'm glad that there's a lot of Hispanic here. I'm happy to see you here, but we also need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to comment? Hi, welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Council. I am here to protest this, all this plan. And I'd just like to ask you to reconsider what the information that's been going on because it will affect a lot of, like one of the ladies said, seniors. And not only that, but our children. Our children are married, they have kids. So it's going to affect them also. And not only that, but I wanted to just kind of reemphasize. When we went, we attended a meeting at El Gavilan Library. And there was like 10 persons. I think one of the ladies that was here attended. And they also, at that time, they did say that if you stay behind in your bills, you will have a lien put on your home. And a lot of the persons that were there, they emphasized and emphasized that information that went out to invite us to that meeting was not good. It was a little postcard that a lot of people saw it and put in the recycling. Okay, the second one was a little better, was an 8 by 10. But like one of the other ladies said, there was not that much clarification on it. So I am just asking, pay attention because you could be opening up Pandora's box and you would be regretting it. Thank you.
All right, last call for public comment inside of the chambers. Seeing Nat will come over to Zoom to determine whether or not there's any public comment. Oh, hi.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, nope, that's okay.
A little slow.
That's okay.
I was kind of debating whether it'd come up because my mind, sometimes the words I want to say don't come out, but I will try. I prayed last night for this meeting that you all would give us favor. Because as you have heard, a lot of us are senior citizens who are in a fixed income. I mean, I struggle to pay PG&E. I said, tell my husband, this is how much we have. So he knows that he might not be able to go out. We have to stretch our dollars. And I want you to think about us. We put you there because we thought you care for us and represent us and care about how we feel and whether you're doing a good job. I want to say, hey, Salinas City Council is doing a great job. But lately, I have not heard that. I've heard it's, well, I will not repeat it because I don't want to hurt your feelings. But it's not good. And I see my nation struggling. And I see my state struggling. And I see the city struggling. I wish it was different. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment in the chambers and go over to public comment on Zoom. We do have some people who have raised hand on Zoom. We'll go with Dwight. Dwight, if you wouldn't mind unmuting yourself, you have a minute and 30 seconds. Welcome.
Hello, City Council.
Hi, Vanessa. Thank you.
I had questions on this like a month or two ago. And then I was told by Monterey Water to look at the city council meeting back last year in October, which I did. And it's been misingenuous by Monterey Water from the get-go. What I did is I did some Googling and I found out that this, I could be wrong, but I believe the state authorized local counties to change their, they could change their waste management to go to billing of the other property taxes, and everyone's following suit. I'm okay with it. I'm not sure, you know, I'm okay with it myself. I just take the every other month payment that I normally make, I put that in a savings account. Then when I go to pay my property taxes, I just take that money out of the savings account and pay my waste Monterey Water. The issue I have is when Monterey Water, when you said, Mayor, that what are you going to do with that $400,000 in savings? They give you one sentence, oh, we're going to put that in the capital improvement program. I don't think that's right. If you're, if they're having a savings, they should be passing that on to the customer. If they have a capital improvement program, sure, show us what the capital improvement is. Show us what you're going to do with that money. If you're not going to show us what you're going to do with that money and you're just saying it's going into a capital improvement program, I don't buy it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go to Moms 12. I don't know if that means there's 12 moms on the phone, but we'll give you.
Hello.
Hi, welcome. You have a minute and 30.
Hi, this is Lorene Perez. I wanted to speak out in protest of the changes that are being made. I think tax and utility need to be separate. I feel like this, we were misled. We were not, we were not informed. We have you, our council members, to represent us. I think there should have been a better job to make this more known and explain exactly what was going on. I feel like Monterey One is being looked out more than the residents, the people that vote to put you guys in these positions. And I don't agree with it. And the notices that we got were very inadequate. They didn't give us deadlines. They didn't give us timeframes. All they said was, there's a public hearing. You can send your protest to this email. But there was no dates, nothing, or what we were protesting. So I just, you know, this was, this is a sham. And I just don't agree with it, you know? And this will not be forgotten, you know? I will make sure to let everybody that I know know what happened during this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have Nat Leyva. Yeah, Leyva on, and you have a minute and 30.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, council members. I thank you guys for your time. And I did want to, you know, protest this, I mean, just like the next, you know, the last citizen spoke. Sounds very suspect. The due diligence that was done on whether the city's part or informing, you know, all of Salinas is just very shady. You know, the small sizing postcards. You know, the small sizing postcards, you people throw that away, they don't give it a time. I think it's, you know, part of the job duty description of fulfilling your guys' end of hearing everybody that's there. Yeah, most people are on fixed incomes, you know, let's be honest. Our wages aren't rising as well, you know, with everything that goes up. Unfortunately, not for everybody. So I definitely think we should reconsider this. And I'm, I'd like to oppose this and hopefully you guys hear that out from everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and close public comment. I, you've had one bite at the apple already, so I'm not going to allow a second, a second comment if you don't mind. We're going to go ahead and come back to council for final comment at this point and action.
Only one thing, because the Monterey Water, they didn't send me the bill.
I, okay. I have to be fair to everyone, and so you get one bite at the apple, but thank you. I appreciate that. All right, Councilmember Sandoval, final comments, and we're seeking action on this item.
Well, first, thank you, everybody, for speaking. All the emails I received were very helpful. Like I said, I received a lot of phone calls and emails over the last couple of months from a lot of concerned residents. I didn't catch your name, yes. But what I want to say is, I commend you. I also struggle to speak all the time. As you probably witnessed a little earlier, I jump on my words, but I do the best I can. And I try to have my thoughts come out or the intention of my heart come out. And we won't get offended if you insult us. And let me just share with you that what comes out in the media is not always correct. And all of us here would be glad to have conversations with anybody in the public with concerns because we do strive to do the best that we can. Unfortunately, messaging in the media, you know, is not always accurate. But I will give out my phone number, wait for all of you at the end. It's no doubt that during this entire process, the majority, if not all, I want to say the majority at this moment, has been our senior citizens who have expressed concerns, and they're valid concerns. I have concerns too. You know, I came in earlier with the, and I still have that with, okay, so we could vote no, and then we could take on a new, a new expense which we can't afford. And, you know, I listened to the public comments. And, but like I said, there's no doubt that this is disproportionately affecting our seniors. It's just a reality. And I don't think that's fair either. Instead of taking the approach, which, and I'm going to ask the city attorney for clarification on this item, instead of taking the approach where if the city council votes no, then our city manager or our staff is tasked with, okay, well, now we have to present the expenses and how we're going to tackle it. I'd ask the council and our city attorney if it would be appropriate is if we instead, through our representative, and I will also state that the mayor voted in opposition to this change when she represented us on Monterey One Water. And Councilmember Rocha, when he saw the direction that this was going, did his best to fight for making sure that the assistance for affordable, for low-income and people on fixed income was expanded, okay? So I think that they both did the best that they could to help. But the approach, I'd like to ask the city attorney if it would be appropriate, instead of us just straight up saying no and saying, city manager, come back and give us a proposal, can we just not engage them and say, one, I have a question, how many vendors are we, is there guarantees that there was no other option for low-cost vendors? That would be one of my questions. But engage them and say, look, these are the concerns of the residents of Salinas. And I recognize that you are by far not a majority. But let me just tell you, you took the time and a lot of people either threw the card away or cannot make the time to be here almost at nine o'clock at night and wait through hours. So despite you not being the majority in a protest vote, trust me, I have been sometimes a lone voice, doesn't mean that those concerns are not valid. So is that something that the city council could say, Monterey One Water, these are our concerns, we think that, and this is, I'll say we, I'll say myself because the council has not had full input, these are our concerns from our residents. And despite the savings of $400,000, which I recognize that, you should all know that, I believe that some of the reasons, and the mayor and Councilmember Rocha can correct me, that we don't receive a lot of the waters back that we give to Monterey One is because there hasn't been a big investment, either from Monterey One Water or from the city of Salinas, to put that infrastructure in place. So I think that there's been a lot of things that could, we could improve on in the future. But is that something that could happen, city attorney, or are we?
So the city manager may have some thoughts, but given the timing of Monterey One Waters getting out of the billing business, for lack of a better term, you have very little time to react and to do that sort of analysis. Monterey One Water has already acted. Now the individual entities within its jurisdiction are required to act. So if you don't, the city is going to be in a position of having to start standing up a billing practice here at the city in order to make sure that the customers are billed and the money is collected.
Now, although that has occurred, is, would it be possible for a member of that board, not the city representative, because the city representative voted against it, but someone who voted in the affirmative to that proposal, that they bring that back, that item back for reconsideration?
I think it's too late to bring an item back for consideration. Certainly, Councilmember, the conversations with M1W can continue, right? And as the representative said, this is something that we're going to do on a yearly basis. So we'll be having this conversation again, hopefully not at the end of June, but certainly next year we'll be having this conversation again. And during that time, we can continue our conversations with M1W. We can do some additional research into whether there are other billing opportunities out there such that if we chose not to go forward with this in subsequent years, the city takes on that billing, but there's some other mechanism to do the billing other than city resources. So there is some opportunity over the next 12 months, should you choose to go this direction, for us to do exactly what you're asking.
And the current, did you want to clarify something for me before I continue?
I believe one of the reasons we're up against a deadline is because if we do not, so M1W doesn't stop the billing in June. And we have, I believe until July 15th, because the county needs our MOUs and all this to be approved before July 15th in order for them to take on our billing part of it. If we do not approve this before July 15th, we have to start on our own.
Okay, and I know that this may be a heavy lift for our city manager, but at the same time, the current company that did the billing for M1 Water, it's somebody we could revisit, I mean, they're currently doing it. So would that be a possibility or what, how do you foresee this if this does not get approved?
Well, if it doesn't get approved, I will be working with Rachel and Monterey and Salina and our team to how to best handle it up. I mean, they have a, they have an infrastructure in place today. And certainly, we could probably patch something together. And I would probably bring it back to you next Tuesday when we have another council meeting. I mean, we'd have to move in it pretty quickly because we would need to be prepared to take on the responsibility. You know, like our city attorney represented, we can continue to talk to Monterey. They're not going to not work with us to do what's best for our residents and our, and our, and the consumers here because they do provide the service. We're not equipped to take on this water. But we certainly can work with them on how to figure out how to best to bill it. And so if we don't have a choice, we'll do it. We'll have to figure something out. And I'm sure M1 Water would partner with us and help us do the best we can.
Yeah, and for me, you know, the portion of the billing cost for us, as my understanding, with the quick math the mayor did was something in the neighborhood of $200,000. And although I recognize we just passed a balanced budget, I'll mention without cutting any services to our residents, although we could always use more, does not seem like, although it is a significant amount, I'm not going to say it. I don't think we have the money to just add $200,000 to our budget. I think that the possible long-term detrimental effects to our residents will outweigh that, at least for this upcoming year. And then we could revisit, you know, any other potential changes. So I would like to thank everybody because you all have a very diverse opinion and brought a very, a lot of different aspects, you know? And we heard a lot of different ideas in our emails and different things like that. You know, as a city, taking this on with new staffing is not likely because it's difficult to hire folks. But I have faith that our city manager will, will find a solution. A lot of pressure, he's been on the job for three weeks. But that's where my heart is and that's where my decision is. And so with that, I'd make a motion to, what would be the proper motion to deny this?
So it would be, and if I'm just, before I answer this question, Patty, for clarification, you have determined the official number of written protests, correct?
Correct. The number that we provided earlier of 329 does include all email protests that were received as well. So that is below the 50% threshold of protests that need to be received.
Okay, then it would be, it would be a motion rejecting the city's 2024-2025 annual rate report for wastewater collection and directing, well, based on your comments, directing the city manager to have a discussion with Monterey One Water regarding the collection of fees and charges towards, for the report on the Monterey County tax rule.
Yeah, to the mayor and the council member, maybe after you finish the whole sort of council discussion, maybe I can make a suggestion, but I kind of want to kind of hear that before. But certainly, we will follow whatever direction you give us. But I think we may have a little bit of time and I would feel more comfortable, I was given a few days to sort of bring, so you can make your decisions with the best possible information in front of you, so.
So would your recommendation be to, instead of flat out deny it?
Hear the comments and then directly bring this back next Tuesday.
Okay, so instead of adopting, but more tabling?
We'll just defer to next Tuesday.
Tabel, yeah.
Be to continue the item to June 25th.
Okay, yeah, I think it would be best to have a better, more informed decision. So my, my motion would be to continue the discussion to the June 25th meeting.
Second motion made by Councilmember Sandoval, seconded by Councilmember Valenzuela. We'll go on for final comments. Councilmember Rocha.
Thank you, everyone who took the time out of your busy schedules to be here today. And I also want to thank the mayor, who advocated strongly against this change, also organized several town halls in the city of Salinas to educate constituents about this and to share our perspective to Monterey One Water. I think Monterey One Water's representative has had an opportunity to hear from our constituents as well. For me, I'm very concerned about this change, especially on the impact it's going to have on our seniors. I have a fear that this is going to increase the likelihood of people being unable to pay their Monterey One Water bills because the amount that you'll be required to pay at one time will be larger, even though the bill altogether is the same. It's just that it's being levied at one time as opposed to in separate installments. And even if it is paid on a monthly basis, you're paying your entire property tax on a monthly basis, not just a Monterey One Water bill. So for me, the direction that I would give to the city manager would be to look at three possibilities. The first one is to look at what it would cost for the city to stand up this program ourselves. Because the county is going to be charging us, I want to say 0.25% per, I believe, customer to do the billing on our behalf, what would it cost for us to absorb that cost ourselves? And then look at our internal billing procedures and align existing billing programs with this potential new billing program and see if it's feasible to stand that program up ourselves. And I say that because if we do the billing ourselves, and that provides us the opportunity to bill for the utility on a monthly basis or on whatever basis this council decides, and also it provides us the opportunity to create payment plans with our constituents. Certainly, we would have the responsibility then to deal with the non-payment. But I think that that cost to the city is nowhere near the impact that it's going to have on the constituents who are going to be unable to pay this significantly larger bill. So that'd be the first request that I'd make, to look at what that would cost for us to stand up the program ourselves. The second thing that I would just, that I would say for direction, if the council does proceed with the change in its current format, for us to collect data over that one-year course on how this change has impacted our constituents. And then a year from now, we can present that to Monterey One Water and say, our constituents have faced these adverse impacts and use that as a basis to call for reconsideration on the decision to change. And then the third one would be to consider setting aside more money from our own money to Monterey One Water's customer assistance payment program. The current amount is $300,000, that's not nearly enough to serve everyone. So in the last, you know, effort, if the other two aren't viable, for us to set aside money for that customer assistance payment program, so more people are able to be served. As it relates to the current motion on the floor to continue this item, I support it. But I would just stress to my colleagues, let's make sure that whatever decision we make in that moment is one that is going to not result in more costs to our constituents in the upfront. Because one concern that I have about rushing to stand up this program now is we might end up buying a software system or coming into some agreement that's going to cost us more money now than if we did our due diligence to do our homework and see what really the best provider out there is to do this program. And concerned from what we've heard today, this is very, very serious, it's going to impact a lot of people, and we want to make sure we get it right. So those are my comments. And I would ask those three considerations to be included into that motion as direction to staff, as a friendly amendment.
Accepted.
Okay, just making sure it's accepted. All right, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Just keep it brief. You know, I think that a lot of times when we are up here, we are in a very toast spot. On one end, you know, we do want to support what the residents are saying. At the other end, we do have responsibility to the bottom line of our budget as a city, it's your dollars as well. That being said, you know, I also have trouble that even though at the end of the year, the average consumer is not going to be paying more, it is going to be, you know, in larger installments. So I would also just, you know, like to say for M1 Water, I feel that that is a public entity. Those are your tax dollars as well. And so we would really urge you to also consider how you went about the protest vote. Because a lot of those folks here are seniors, they do not have access to internet. And so that being the way to submit a protest vote is very troubling. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, Councilmember Gonzalez, final comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I've received a lot of correspondence about this issue leading up to today's vote and even to last week's vote. And when we talk about issues that disproportionately affect one segment of the population, there's always extra concern when it comes to our senior population who are, in many cases, on a fixed income, are already very much stretching their finances to what they are max capable of. So when we continue to ask more and more of them, though it not be a city of Salinas decision, we need to be aware that the votes and the decisions that we make as a board here on this dais, as a legislative body, will affect the lives of many. Very much in support of the current motion on the floor to ask for more information as to billing alternatives, given that right now we are simply not in a place to operate any kind of billing system. I would very much like to echo the comments of Councilmember Rocha, to not rush to come to a conclusion. The last thing that we want to happen is for more costs to be incurred upfront and for it to essentially backfire. I also am in agreement in collecting data from the first year so that we do have the ability to present this information to Monterey One Water. You know, I understand budget constraints and I understand the need to cut costs. But when you're talking about folks that are saying, you know, I could lose my home, I could potentially not be able to pay my mortgage, I think it's important for Monterey One Water to see that the changes that they make do have very, very much ripple effects. So happy to support the current motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrera, final comments?
Yes, thank you. I just want to share with my colleagues, you know, we have a big responsibility here and with other things as well, and that responsibility is right in front of us. It's the people that we serve. They're counting on us to do the right thing, and we have a big job, we have a big responsibility. But to my colleagues, you know, a lot of times in these critical issues, I'm always hearing timing, deadlines, we have to hurry up. But now I'm hearing that my two colleagues from Monterey One Water, they were discussing this issue a year ago, which I'm sure they're doing good representation. My ask is, I My ask has always been, once we start talking about something that we know it's critical and it's going to impact the residents, we need to start having community engagement way back then as well. I've learned, a lot of times, we start doing community engagement once we've made a decision on what direction we want to take, and we find ourselves having people in front of us in desperation. You know, I just met a young couple that was evicted along with eight other families on Laurel because they were going to remodel the apartment. Well, one of the mothers, young mother says, you know what, I'm tired of being treated like this. And somehow or another, she was able to get family members. She raised enough money to, for a down payment, and they bought a house. Three different family members bought a house. And I recently spoke to them, and they said 80% of their wages combined is towards their mortgage. But they live in a home now. They have a place for their kids. But imagine the struggles that they're going to have now with this new impact. And I think, to Mr. Mendez, I really appreciate your willingness to really sincerely look at this, because we have to practice empathy. You know, we have to have empathy for the people that we serve, not only seniors, but also those young people that are, are struggling themselves trying to afford a house for themselves. And to, Madam Mayor, to your question on 329 written protests, imagine how many people got that mailing. I got, I certainly got it, but a lot of people just put it aside because it's, we have to do a better way of how to communicate, not just sending a card, not just putting it on the Herald or the Weekly, but really informing our constituents, but with way enough notice. That way, they will know how impacted they will be. I think we need to practice that, because for a long time, we don't, we're not the greatest communicators at the city level, and I'm going to put myself in front of that, because I'm one of the ones that are responsible for that. So I think in these critical events, because look at the people in front of us, they're desperate. And, and that's not, we call ourselves leaders, let's be public servants. Let's serve these people and show them that we're really listening, and we are going to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Osorio, final comments?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I'm, I really want to just say, first off, thank you to our, our city manager. I think it's three weeks or four weeks, but, you know, I just, again, just being open to listening and doing the work. I, I also do want to just let, let folks know that this is, it's not going to be an easy task to try to come up with a solution in seven days. And, and I know that some preparation has gone into this, and kind of what it would take, and, and I believe that that's probably a reason why the option of the Monterey County being able to put on the tax roll, they thought that would be pretty, pretty easy fix for it. But, but obviously, it's not. This will affect a lot of folks. So while, while I will be hopeful, just like everybody here, because this obviously will affect me as well, but, but I also want to make it very clear that we cannot increase, to be able to take this bill on, we cannot increase what we charge our residents. There's, I, I just can't see that as, as, okay, we'll, we'll say that we'll take on this bill, but we're going to charge you guys more in turn. I, I don't think that I could support something like that. Also, to be able to, to know what it actually cost us to be able to put this program together, you're right, you guys elected us to be able to make financial decisions that will benefit the residents of Salinas. And if this is going to come at a greater cost, again, I can't, I can't support that. What I am hopeful, though, is that maybe there might be a way that our city manager can work with the department heads, our finance department. And, and I'll let you know that they are some really talented staff members here at the city. So I have no doubt that they will look at every single option for us. But to be able to make a decision today without really knowing the totality, I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure you guys would agree that there's no way that we can agree to something and say, okay, we'll take this on, without even knowing how much it'll truly cost us. So just know that me, now, more than ever, I'm committed to making sure that this is something that is going to be a good fit for our residents, and I have been. And, and that's the reason why I will be supporting the motion, to give us a little bit more time. But I want to be clear with residents, I, I just hope that, that it's very clear that what, what I will be doing is I will be making sure that this is something that will benefit and not just burden us even more, more confusion, just to simply be able to say that we're taking on this task. So again, thank you to our city manager. I, I wish we weren't putting this task on your hands so quickly. It's a, we have lots of vacancies throughout our city. It's something that I'm really concerned about, about all the vacancies that we have. And now being able to bring on more employees to be able to do something like this, I just really want to make sure that there's no interruptions in services, and I want to make sure that you guys are okay with what we're doing up here. So thank you. No, no further questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'll just acknowledge, so I sat on Monterey One Water all through 2023. When staff brought it forward, I was very uncomfortable with that option for the exact reason the gentleman stated. You start tacking utilities onto your property taxes. It then allows other utilities to do the same, 3CE. I know, I know that there are, there are a lot of interested parties in what happens with this tax roll initiative. You know, there's a couple of things I do want to acknowledge. One is, I reported out on this every single meeting after M1W meeting. We talked about it ad nauseam. I always reported out, as the representative, that we were talking about tax roll, that I was getting a lot of feedback, that this was not a good thing from the residents. And I would also just acknowledge that the other item that we had talked about was a weighted vote. And if we actually had a significant weighted vote at M1W, we could have actually nipped this in the bud before it even came forward. I think the vote was eight, eight weighted votes to 13 weighted votes. It wasn't an official weighted vote, but based on who voted on what. So that's, that's a separate item, but I do want to just take a, a second to acknowledge that one of the big things that we talked about, and one of the things that Monterey One Water addressed with the Monterey One Water Board, was an opt-out option, meaning you put the tax roll forward, but there's an opt-out option. And M1W did all of the staff report and, and costs associated with 1% or 2% of the overall M1W customer base. So perhaps we could ask what an opt-out option would look like for the 56%, you know, a fraction of the 56%. We have 300-plus, you know, protested votes. I would assume that's a fraction of the cost, whereas staff was really prepared to have an opt-out option of 2,000 to 3,000 of their customers. So I'm hoping, maybe with the maker of the motion, that we could bring that back as an additional option to review, just in terms of costs associated with it. I don't know what that looks like. I don't know if M1W would take it on and do the billing and have an opt-out option for the seniors and for the folks that want to continue paying their bill for a period of time. But I think it might be a good idea if we're going to be exploring different opportunities. I, I agree with the city manager, Mendez, that M1W wants to be a partner with us. We are also overwhelmingly the majority of their customer base. And so I would tell you, I think they would certainly be open to multiple options in order to resolve the issue. I will acknowledge, I was wholly in favor of an opt-out option. It did not pass, and was not in favor of putting it on the tax roll, but that's the beauty of democracy, is you get outvoted sometimes. So with that, those are my, oh, my request would be, would the maker of the motion be okay with that added option to the friendly amendment?
Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment. I would accept the possibility of a discussion. My only concern with an opt-out feature is, is we've heard that even by the amount of protests and the amount of people here, that if we were to move in that direction, that there will still be a lot of people affected who may not know that opportunity is out there. So I think it should be part of the discussion, but I think that, because we cannot guarantee the specific outreach, even though we may try, things get lost in the mail anyways. So I just, I will accept that as a part of our discussion.
And since it's a new motion, just to provide comment to it, I would, I would accept that as well. The only thing is, in terms of the, like, when we're exploring alternatives, I would say that would be the last alternative, because from, I could tell you, that board meeting, that board meeting, when it was discussed, there was not a single other board member that was interested in, in pursuing the opt-out option. And so if we're up against a close timeline, I just want to make sure we could have the greatest impact for the most residents as possible. But I do think that's a good option to consider.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And just as a point of clarification, I'd like to know if that has to go back to the M1W board for approval, or if we can have it as a, as a condition of approval for the City of Salinas only, which would then require us to work out a deal with M1W. That's all.
Good point.
All right. That's all for now. Clear as mud?
Mayor, just a point, does the second also have to agree, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I just want to make sure.
Oh, yes. Thank you. All right. Thank you. I appreciate it. All right. We will go ahead and call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
Councilmember Barrera, we're taking a vote. If you can unmute yourself, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osorio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, great. Thank you. And just a thank you to all the residents who have been here through Parks and Rec and Rodeo and cannabis and whatnot. I recognize that your time is valuable. We appreciate you spending it with us tonight. Thank you.
Mayor, can I call for, can I request a five-minute recess?
I'll need a second.
Thanks.
All right. We'll go ahead. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, five-minute adjournment. All right. This is the second five-minute break that we are coming back from. Council's a little goofy, because it's 9:15. So with that, there's only 21 more items on the agenda, guys. So we'll go on to the consent agenda. There are 21 items on consent. Would any council member like to pull an item for separate voter discussion? I will skip Councilmember Sandoval and go to Councilmember Rocha.
Yes, the Baronda Road Congestion Relief Project Phase 1.
Okay. Councilmember Valenzuela?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Sandoval? Okay.
Baronda project, and that's it.
Okay. To my right, Councilmember Gonzalez. All right. Councilmember Barrera, do you wish to pull any items on consent?
Yes, I want to hear about 233 and 335, please.
Okay. Councilmember Osorio?
I will pull items 233 and 23, 335, please. Those will be the only two.
Okay. We'll go out to the public. Does any member of the public wish to pull an item? Yes, sir.
Exactly. Can I say now?
Yep.
Okay, well, the Baronda one, which orders in 340 and 356.
And 356, you said?
Yeah.
Okay, just to make sure. All right. Any other members of the public wish to pull any items? If not, I'll seek a motion to approve the remaining items.
Approve second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Sandoval, seconded by Councilmember Gonzalez on items 364, 361, 282, 302, 311, 312, 315, 321, 336, 339, 341, 342, 345, 350, 355, and 366. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osorio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. ID 155, the Baronda Road Congestion Relief Project. Councilmember Sandoval, you pulled this item?
Yes, I would just want to make some comments. And I want to say, I'm very excited for Baronda Road. Thank you to our staff. I know this has been a long time coming. I know this is only Phase 1. And I know we recently approved a great pavement management plan, but my only comment, or maybe request from the city manager, is that we do something, even if it's temporary on the rest of Baronda, to help address some of the concerns. So that is just my initial thoughts. But it's, it's, it's a great project, and I know a lot of residents will be excited to see that coming.
Councilmember Rocha?
First, congratulations on all of your hard work. This has been a longstanding project, and I remember back in 2021, when we were having conversations about finally going up to bid, and they're like, oh, wait, there's a salamander. And oh, wait, there's, you know, all these other issues we had to work through, and costs kept going up. And finally, we're here at the part where we approved the bid. My question is, it came in, the estimated bids came in $5 million over, and we are going to set aside as part of, if this is approved, $5 million to go towards that. Just to be clear, is that going to be taken away from any other project, or were those funds already there allocated for the potential of this, or where are those monies coming from?
So let me first answer your question, and then I'll make a clarification. To answer your question, we're asking for a transfer out of the traffic impact fees. A Baronda is a project within the traffic impact fees.
Okay, thank you.
And then a clarification is that the bid was not over by $5 million. The $5 million is to make sure that we have adequate funds. That's contingency, that's internal fees, that's for everything.
Understood. And if this is approved, when would be the estimated start on construction?
Well, it really depends as how quickly we can process the, the contract. Typically, that's two months, three months, depending on how quickly it happens.
Okay. With that being said, I'll move the item for approval.
Second.
I do have one member of the public that has pulled this item, Mr. Masonou.
Ooh, good.
Okay, good.
Okay.
It's French.
Yeah. So I'm just going to read this. It's real short. Read recommendation motion for the amounts to be in the minutes. This motion item is $15 million, 15 million, 637,0796.93. And you also have the approval of transferring $5 million, $300. And I just wanted that to be in the record, because that's a lot of money. So, and I just hope that the salamander and the frog really appreciate it.
All right. Call for the vote on ID 155, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osorio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, ID 233, Councilmember Barrera, you pulled this item?
Well, this is exciting. I would just like the public to know how, in a positive way, this is going to impact the Alisal vibrancy plant.
I couldn't quite hear. It was a lot fuzzy.
He wants a recap on how it will impact the Alisal vibrancy plan.
Thank you. Yes, this is, and thank you for your question, Councilmember Barrera. This is directly involved with the goals of beautification and installing public art and creating a cultural identity in the Alisal. We received a grant from the state, and we have the Alisal Corridor Beautification and Greening Program. And as part of that program, there is public art installations. And as you'll recall, there was some conversation when we were going forward with the other Caltrans project with the murals, some concerns about supporting local artists to be competitive with these public art processes. So this is the intent of this program, in supporting local art and local artists.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Councilmember Osorio, you also pulled this item?
And so just, I just have two questions, or actually, one question and, two questions and then one comment. So for, it's So for, it's my understanding that the projects have already been kind of put together as far as where the money will be spent. Is this going to be, is this going to go to the sidewalk art that will be?
This is separate. So the sidewalk art is part of the Safe Routes to School component that is being led by Tamsley and Ecology Action. This, in the staff report, it indicates there are really four primary focus areas for art, local art opportunities. One will be a gateway monument or art sculpture that will be at the Alisal Street Skyway Roundabout. Also, in front of the breadbox, there will be a mural, an art sculpture in front of the breadbox, mural at Cluster Park, as well as art along the corridor displayed on trash recycling receptacles. So there will be a request for proposal that will go out, identifying artists that are interested in participating in these different art opportunities. And then the finalists would then have the opportunity to receive grants to then further develop their design concept.
Okay, and thank you for that explanation. Will this have to wait until the district identity plan comes back, and then, after that gets passed, then we start?
Correct. We are queuing this up so that we can have your direction to move forward. We'll work out all the details in terms of starting to prepare the request for proposal and the project guidelines. We will come back to you in August with the district identity master plan, and then we can immediately roll into implementation.
Awesome. And then my only request would be, there are dozens of youth that train at the Salinas Boxing Gym. I know that the engagement part of it will be robust. I would ask if we can make sure that they know that there's a mural that's going to go out there. And I'm assuming it's going to go on the boxing club building?
Correct. It's going on the community center that is utilized by the boxing clubs. So I'll definitely coordinate with Library and Community Services to make that connection.
Great. And then, and so my last comment would just be, just a reminder that the graffiti is still on the mural on Market Street.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm seeking, thank you. Motion made by Councilmember Osornio, seconded by Councilmember Gonzalez. Call for the vote on 233.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, ID 335. Councilmember Barrera, you pulled this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I don't know who to ask this, whatever person. You know, I'm very concerned. This is an awesome project, but Cluster Park is one of the most utilized parks throughout the city. The irrigation program that's going to take place, I just don't want to, the same thing that what's happening with the Cesar Chavez Park, that's taking three years or even longer. I want to, I just want to find out when we do start this project, and I hope we're going to notify the residents as well. How long do we see, once we start this project, how long do we see it completion?
Thank you, Councilmember Barrera. This is Kristin Lundquist, Library and Community Services Director. We anticipate and are on schedule to move forward with construction in October, and it will likely be about 18 months for completion.
So within these 18 months, because as you know, whether you put up a fence or something, young kids are active, they want to play soccer. I just want to make sure that, I don't know, I'm very concerned. For 18 months, I hope that we do have some kind of communication with, like, especially with the Salinas Boxing Club, the Little League, and now we have a softball league out there as well that use the park on a regular basis. Any idea what we're going to do as far as talking to our residents in that area about this project?
Sure. We certainly will do a robust outreach as we get closer to construction, and we know when that date's going to occur. We'll work to mitigate any issues with the boxing club. It will be an active construction zone. The Little League has been part of this process from the get-go and are very well aware of this, and we're working with our other Little League organizations to make sure that we can find field space so that their program will continue.
Great, thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Osornio, you also pulled this item.
I pulled it out just for a separate vote.
Okay.
Approve.
Great. Okay, motion made by Councilmember Osornio, seconded by Councilmember Gonzalez. Call for the vote on ID 335, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we have, a member of the public has pulled two more items. ID 340, the subrecipient funding agreements for homeless service projects for fiscal year 2425. Mr. Masonouv, you have pulled this item.
Thank you. I just have a question as to, what's the gauge for how well this is working? Is there, you know, we're giving money, I've noticed, and this is an important issue, okay? Homelessness is an important issue, needs to be taken care of. But I see these little pieces of things in the agendas, and I'm going, oh, we're putting more money into that. Okay, where's the benefit? What's happening? Is it money that's being well-spent? So I went on the website and looked up Coastal, or Central Coast Center for Independent Living. And in 2023, they impacted or they benefited 4,247 people. Okay, that's good. That's just the kind of thing that maybe needs to be put out in the public a little bit more, you know? I keep hearing city councils not transparent or not communicating well. Maybe you need to, and I know this is just more money, right? But hire one person to be able to put together a newsletter for the city. And I know every, once in a while, something comes in the mail. I see it, I read it. But there are these expensive issues that need to be a little more brought to the public. So that's just my thinking. Thank you.
All right. Council, seek approval on this item, or a motion?
Will you approve?
I'll second. ID 340, subrecipient funding agreements. Motion made by Councilmember Sandoval, seconded by Mayor Craig. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera? Councilmember Barrera?
Who's that?
Did we lose him? Oh, he's, he's there. Councilmember Barrera, we're voting. All right.
Councilmember? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Okay, there we go.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, great, thank you. And Mr. Masonouv, you also pulled ID 356.
Okay, amendment number five to agreement for service with, I don't even know how to say that name, security services. And I thought this was interesting, because overall, we're ending up paying them $1,285,237 since the beginning of the contract. That's a lot of money. And that only takes us to roughly October, the end of October. So then are we going to have another amendment and add more money to it? It's, again, it's another one of those things, is this helping? And it's for the encampment resolution, so I'm kind of looking into this and learning all this stuff. But I'm just wondering, again, are we throwing good money after bad, or is this a really viable thing to do? Thank you.
Council, seek action on this item.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilmember Barrera, seconded by Councilmember Gonzalez. Call for the vote on 356.
Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, last item on the agenda. Councilmembers' reports, appointments, and future agenda items. I would just ask that we keep it succinct. We do have a council meeting next week, so if we could do maybe one minute, just as an update, we had a meeting last week, we have a meeting next week. So I know all of you are very busy, but I want to make sure that we manage time. Councilmember Sandoval?
Start the timer. Point of order. I just, I want to make one announcement and an invitation to the community. This Saturday is the Juneteenth event, and they are offering, thanks to the sponsorship of the City of Salinas, free food to the first, I want to say 200, just so I don't mistake it. But it's this Saturday. I encourage everybody to participate, and I hope our staff can make it as well.
Great, thank you.
Oh, sorry, this Saturday at Hartnell College. Yes, it starts at 1:00 p.m. and ends at 5:30, and the program starts at 2:00 p.m. And my apologies for forgetting the info. Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you. I'll keep it short. I'm going to be attending a community human services meeting this Thursday, followed by Salinas Valley Solid Waste Authority meeting the same day, and I have a Monterey One Water meeting next Monday. That's all I have to report.
Right. Councilmember Valenzuela?
I just want to report, you know, I had a very successful meeting on Central Park. Forty residents showed up, heard their concerns, mostly around housing, but I hope to continue to having those types of meetings with District Three.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Just a quick reminder for folks, so please fill out the survey, looking for community input on the police chief recruitment process. I wanted to give a big shout out and thank you to the participants of the Amor Salinas Camp for the great work that they did at Nativada Creek Park and at Sherwood Park. And wanted to remind folks that there is free summer lunch and snacks, Monday through Friday, from this month, well, from now until the 25th of July, for those 18 years and under, at Cesar Chavez, the Firehouse Rec Center, Central Park, El Dorado, and Cluster Park. Check out our social media pages for specific times. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrera, do you have anything to report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. You know what? Exciting things are happening throughout the City of Salinas. I was going down Tout Street. Tout Street is a brand-new street right now. They're doing some great work. I want to thank Mr. Jacobs and his crew. We're doing a great work. I just, I met two residents the other day. They're painting their houses. Think about it. When the city goes out and does their job, fixes sidewalks, fixes streets, there's pride in the neighborhoods. People are, some of them never watered their grass. Now, guess what? The grass is turning green. Why? Because they pride themselves in a beautiful street. That happened at Eucalyptus. When Mr. Jacobs and his crew did Eucalyptus, there was three residents, homeowners, that painted their houses and beautifying their properties. And you know what, Mr. Mendez? I think we're blessed to have you here with us, and you have a great council. You know, this is a great team. For many years, our neighborhoods were not taken seriously. And now, if you go through any neighborhood throughout the city, great things are happening. So keep it up, keep it up, council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Osornio?
Yes, I did, I just wanted to give a invitation to the Ink at the Bay that will be starting June 28th, and it'll run through the 30th. It's going to be over at the Rodeo Grounds. And huge shout out to Frank Calderon with Oldies Car Club. They'll be doing the car show on Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. over at the Rodeo, so folks have an opportunity to go out there. It's a really great time. They've been doing it for years. Glad to see it in Salinas. It was in Monterey prior years. Tout Street as well. Me and Councilmember Barrera share one side of Tout Street each, and the residents are ecstatic. So, great job. But also glad to see Sierra, Sierra Madre, between Palma and Ambrose, is also getting some roadwork done as well. It looks phenomenal. So again, and then also just wanted to give a quick shout out to the Artichoke Festival in naming Debbie Martin the California Artichoke Festival Queen. So, great job with those folks doing that. So, thank you.
Final comment on my end. I attended on behalf of Councilmember Gonzalez to the Hitchcock Road Animal JPA, Joint Powers Authority, meeting. Hitchcock Road did a free adoption day and had an incredible amount of people come out and adopt out all of the dogs and cats. It was a really great event. Also, just want to acknowledge to this council that we, as a JPA, approved the 2425 budget for Hitchcock Road. It will come to council, I think, as, sorry, it is in the budget for $2.6 million. And the motion that was made was that we approved the budget, but that the City of Salinas's contribution did not exceed $2.6 million. So just understand that we're working things out with the JPA and whatnot, but that there was the caveat to approve the JPA budget with that cap on it. So with that, that's all for now, and we will adjourn this meeting. See you June 25th. Thank you for attending.